I am calling to order the meeting of the Stevens Point Area School District's School Board for June 23rd, 2014. Roll call and verification of a quorum, please.
Ms. Baker?
Here.
Mr. Ebel?
Here.
Ms. Faxon?
Here.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Here.
Mr. Pressley?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Ms. Sherrick?
Here.
Ms. Totten?
Here.
We do have a quorum. There are eight members present.
Excellent. Approval of the agenda is next. This is an action item, and so far, we have asked to have eight "be" like "boy" polled. Do we have any other agenda adjustments or requests?
Is eight "be" being polled altogether or polled to discuss separately?
Pulled to be voted on separately.
Okay.
Okay, then I need a motion, please.
It's moved. It's moved to...
Moved to approve the agenda as amended. Fantastic.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a question? Because I didn't want anything to be polled. You've got approval of future agenda items in three different spots. Just a little confusing, and maybe when we get to them, you can kind of clarify why we have them in three different spots.
Yep. That was intentional, but yes.
Okay. If you can explain why when we get there.
Sure.
She will.
Ms. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Mr. Pressley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay. Next, we have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I was just saying, you guys could spread out a little bit, but... Jeff? Ebel? Will you go grab the comments for me, please?
What do you want?
Public comments.
You're going to do the recognitions?
Yep.
So, we have three recognitions this evening. Is, I believe, Alexis Keane here? Alexis? Come on up. I understand that you've got your whole family with you, Alexis. Is that right? All right. How are you?
Good.
Good. Good to meet you, Alexis. This is Mrs. Faxon, our board president. And is Josie Otto or Sarah Zimmerman here? Is this Josie or Sarah?
Josie.
Hi, Josie. How are you?
Good.
Come on up. Did you bring your family with you?
Yeah.
Okay, good. This is Mrs. Faxon. I'm going to turn around. Is Sue Colras here? Teacher from Kennedy? No, she's not here. Okay, thank you. What we'd like to do is recognize Alexis and Josie for being the Portage County Farm Bureau's essay winners. And we do have the certificate here that Mrs. Faxon is going to present to each of the students. But first, we'd just like to read this. The county winner has been chosen along with runners-up. The winner was asked to read her essay at the annual meeting in the fall, which will occur, and then the runners-up will receive prizes via mail. And the essays were done regarding agriculture education. And so, what we'd like to do is recognize Alexis, who was the county winner. Congratulations. And then, the runner-up, actually, two runners-up, both Josie, who is with us tonight, and Sarah, were also all from our district. So, the winner and the two runners-up all came from Stevens Point Area Public School District, thanks to Mrs. Colras and her advising and teaching. So, congratulations to the two of you. We're going to take a photograph here, all right, first? All right. Okay. So, we'd like to start with you, Alexis. Introduce your entire family.
Okay. So, my dad's right there, and his name is Jonathan.
Okay.
And then, there's my mom, Christine.
Welcome.
And my baby sister, Charlie.
Charlie.
Real name Charlisse. And then Bailey, my younger sister.
My Bailey. Welcome. Are your grandparents here?
Yes. And that's my grandpa, Elvin, and that's my grandma, Diane.
Welcome, grandparents. And anybody else?
Oh, and my other grandma.
All right. Any other, like, cousins? No? Long lost or otherwise? No, huh? Okay. All right. Go ahead.
My mom in the corner, Jody.
Hey, Jody?
Jody.
That's just it? Okay, great. That's it, great. Well, that's good. Thank you very much for your support. We did get a phone call today from Alexis's family asking if the grandparents could come. So, you can come anytime. So, thank you. So, what we'd like to have you do is meet the board members. Okay? Congratulations.
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 Congratulations, Josie.
Thank you for coming.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
You take care of it. Good summer.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Congratulations. Almost be a way it's turned. We are on camera.
We do have a few donations that we'd like to recognize. Boston School Forest received $100 from the Portage County Tavern League, and members of the Newman Center in St. Stanislaus provided 1,745 nutritious snacks for students in the Homework Center at Ben Franklin this past school year. This was part of the Feeding Hungry Kids program. District is very appreciative for these generositys. Thank you.
Okay. We are on to the public comments section. Okay. Here's the situation, and I just got it in hand, so we're going to discuss it together while I streamline it. We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21. 22 people signed up for sections. That's a lot of time. I don't want people to feel like they can't speak. We choose as a board. If it's three minutes or five minutes, I just spoke with Jeff, we think splitting it down the middle and doing four minutes sounds fair with 22 people. We are a group that meets in the public, and we would like to hear from the public. Our attorney this week has told me, and Amy's... Did you look it up? What did you find?
There's yielding the floor, but there's not giving somebody else your time.
Okay. So, I have been informed by attorney that you cannot give someone else your time. I spoke to Sam about it quickly before the meeting to see if he knew where that came from, like, that we started giving people time, and he said that he wasn't sure. He thought it was Robert's rules. Amy's looked it up. There's yielding the floor, but not giving time. So, you're going to have four minutes to speak. That's what we're going to have to do for tonight. As a board, we can decide where to go from here, but for tonight, that's what we're going to do. A significant amount of people are signed up to speak just at public comments. So, let's start there. And Albert, you are first. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Kim?
Basically, if someone is thinking that they can yield their time, can we suggest they have to come to the podium with their speaker then, since they're not aware that they can't yield their time to someone else for tonight? So, basically, they're at the podium, but they're having a speaker with them because since this is a new thing that we're throwing on them, can we say for not one, or you have to come to the podium with your speaker? And I understand the time, but I believe we need to hear these, our community members also.
I feel like that's a board decision, not a me decision. Yes?
Well, and I understand that the chair can discuss that, but this is a little different. 22 people times four minutes is 88 minutes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? If they're speaking to the same subject or item, three minutes is 66 minutes. And I understand you've had a conversation with the people who are out there.
Well, they're not all that. I mean...
So, I don't know that they're all the same subject.
Yes, Lisa?
Like you just said, this is a board decision. Per our policy, the board decides how much time the community gets to speak. So, you know, you've been doing the five minutes, and if you and Jeff think four minutes is acceptable, I think we should vote on it.
Any other thoughts?
And my only comment is, you know, I'm happy to hear from people, and I know they have some things that they want to bring to the board, and I don't know if they've done anything else, if they've emailed, or if they've called, or anything else like that. But this is, this agenda has quite a few items on it.
This is a very long agenda.
And we're talking about trying to really keep, you know, the workload before 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning. I'm not trying to cut them off from speaking, but if there are 10 people from a department who have concerns, you know, I'm just bringing out that information.
I agree. I am curious what the will of the board is. We are all going to be here until 2:00 a.m. together. It's not like one of us gets to go home. So, yes.
I think we, as an elected board, represent the people. I want to hear what they have to say. I want to hear if there's 100 people here. I want to hear what every one of them has to say. I believe they should have five minutes. That is what we have been doing. If we have to stay here till 1:00 o'clock, so be it. But I was elected to represent them, and I want to hear what they have to say. So, I would like to make a motion that we allow our guests this evening to speak for five minutes.
And I'll second that. Because I also think that, oh, if I can raise my hand.
It's okay.
That if we have one person come up and speak, we don't listen to them. We need, unfortunately, 10 to 50 to 100 people to come and voice their opinion, or we're not listening to them.
Okay, I'm being clear. What you're voting on is five minutes for each person. There are 22 people. That is 110 minutes. That is almost two hours of public comments. I'm just being clear before we vote.
That's saying if they take it all, yes.
If they take it all. I can tell you, based on the agenda we have, people can start saying at 10:30, "I'm tired. I don't want to make this decision," and I'm going to say, "That's tough. We have a lot of work to do, and we need to do it." So, it is what it is. If it goes forward, it goes forward. That's okay. But we have to do our agenda as well. So, would you please do a roll call vote, Amy?
Ms. Faxon?
No.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Mr. Pressley?
No.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
No.
Mr. Ebel?
No.
Motion fails. Three to five.
Do we have a new motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we allow the speakers to speak up to three Is there a second?
Second. Yes.
Yes.
If we're going to continue to go back and forth with deciding on time, we need to establish tonight, or in the very near future, how much time we're going to allow the public to speak, an hour, two hours ahead of time as a maximum, and we need to decide what timeframe. They need to know if they have five minutes, three minutes, so they can prepare accordingly. We're going to be cutting off so many people tonight if we let them all speak. That's not appropriate. That's not right.
I can tell you what the attorney said. He said, "Decide an amount of time you're willing to have public comments. Take the number of people and split it up." Exactly.
I think our board policy says three to five minutes.
It does, but...
We have a lot of people. Three minutes is fair. That's what our policy says. We've given them...
Then, every speaker should be three minutes, just so consistently we can plan ahead and not have our agendas go as long as they would.
I'm just saying, that's what our policy says.
And that's fine.
Everybody here has been...
But if I was a person coming up here and wanting to speak to the board, and I had a lot of information, and I knew, thinking I'm going to have five minutes, but now I almost have it cut in half to three, how am I going to get my point across?
That policy was changed to three to five minutes. It used to be three. If there are only a couple speakers, and we have time for a couple speakers, there's not a problem if they have that information to do five. If you have 22, 30... This isn't a community speaking engagement. It's a board meeting where the community is invited to give their input. But there's a difference in five people and 100 people, because we have work to do. Their input is very important. But the reason we made three to five was exactly that. The number of speakers who come to a meeting may allow us not... We may keep moving the work away because they have other opportunities to address us.
Okay. We've got a motion in a second. Let's vote, please.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
No.
Mr. Pressley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
No.
Ms. Totten?
No.
Motion carries five to three.
Okay. Sorry for the delay, everyone. Albert, you are first. You have three minutes.
Albert, my apologies on behalf of the board if you needed five minutes tonight.
Thank you.
Please don't apologize.
I'm Albert Rocko.
If you want to apologize for yourself...
Okay. Everyone's out of order. Go ahead, Albert.
I'm Albert Rocko, immediate past president of the Stevens Point Area Retired Teachers Association, 1824 Gilcase Street, Stevens Point, Wisconsin. I, and I assume other members of the community, have been concerned about the long meetings our school board has had. Long meetings make it hard for the people to make, for the public to make itself heard at board meetings. Many of us, including board members, have daytime jobs. Your minutes show that the May 12th, 2014, meeting adjourned at 12:14 a.m. Even then, a number of items were moved to the next meeting. The meeting of May 19th, 2014, adjourned at 10:30 p.m. The meeting of June 9th, 2014, was adjourned at 12:31 a.m. after six items were moved to the next meeting. It might be well for you to strive to end your meetings at a time that is convenient and welcoming to the public while conducting your business effectively. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board.
Thank you. Jaclyn Thompson.
Hello, I'm Jaclyn Thompson. I work for the Transportation Department, and I am a school bus driver. I live at 2008 Strange Street, Stevens Point, Wisconsin. I'm very concerned about the policies of the district and how supervisors do not have to follow these policies. They seem to be able to come up with their own policies at will, and we have no idea what to follow anymore. We have no idea what to expect at the workplace, and we want accountability. We want to be able to come to work, and we want to be able to know where we stand, what the rules are, what the... You know, we want to follow the rules, but we don't know what they are. They're changing rapidly, and we just, we're all confused, we're all concerned, and we're worried about our jobs. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Jennifer Buckmaster?
I live at 1502 Skyline Drive in Stevens Point. I am a former bus driver for the school district. A couple of weeks ago, I stood before you and told my story of why I left. Even though I am no longer there, I consider most of my former coworkers as my family, so therefore, I am still involved. I want to thank you because you have given me all the reasons to keep standing before you, to keep talking, to help be a voice to all the other drivers afraid to speak. I'm addressing you this evening because, in reality, this could have been so easy, and that's my opinion. According to the packet of information we sent, we asked for the issue of favoritism to be addressed, for the confidentiality of our personal situations not be broadcasted in front of other employees in the break room. Speaking of the break room, at one point, we had to beg and grovel to get that back, just so we were able to not have to sit on the floor to do our pre- and post-driving paperwork. The most important thing we asked for is to have our seniority, our years already worked, to count for something. From what I understand, this was quote "sort of" unquote addressed for summer school. A note on the very last day of school was sent stating that summer school would be done by seniority, but yet, in reality, employees had to sign for their top three choices, which were simply a map with a highlighted route, and there were no transfer routes included when they had to make their choices. After the routes were assigned, the transfers were added on to routes held by the newer drivers, and the decision was still made of who got what. Clearly, it's an instance, in my opinion, of the favoritism that has continued to happen time and again, and that, my friend, is not how seniority works. I personally wonder why this was allowed to continue until the point now, which we have to go through all of this, to the point that we have information going viral across the web. There are articles in the newspaper, numerous individuals, students, and families of the district receiving letters, and the district had to do damage control. Does this seem any easier or less hurtful than putting your foot down and controlling the situation? Let's not forget the employees that have left under unnecessary duress due to the stress and hostility that we feel have been caused against us, those employees whom have chosen to retire before they really planned on, and those possibly wrongfully let go. Enough cannot be said about the years of dedication, safety, and relationships with students and parents of this district, which these people had. Now, you're going to have a bunch of new people learning who will not have that same depth of relationship, who do not have years of safety on record. And let's not forget all of the money that the district now has to pay out for all the time and training this is going to take. Am I done?
Yep. Okay. Thank you. Jody Disher. Oh, I'm sorry. TJ, you're first. I apologize, Jody.
Just for sake, sake of this, please don't start the timer until I say my name and stuff, because that takes away my time. And I've planned for four. So, and I've been coming to these all along, and I have emailed you, and I have addressed you before. So, I feel very shorted right now. So, TJ Farrow-Kozak, I live at 3288 Felt Avenue, Stevens Point, Wisconsin. I'm speaking as an individual. I'm concerned, again, and fearful of the repercussions of my addressing you this evening. I'm kind of sick of this. By speaking up here before on policies and handbook discrepancies, I've been directly and indirectly affected. But here goes. I'm here before you this evening to follow up with the board about my continuing concerns with the district employment process. At the April 28th board meeting, I asked you, or I addressed you on the lack... Oh, now I'm all flustered. At the April 28th board meeting, I addressed you on the lack of clearly posting the schools and positions open, and the lack of a process to apply for an opening. After following up with HR, I did receive the posting three days later as requested. I believe that is the follow-up that Attila was referencing on June 9th, when Mrs. Totten asked him about my concerns and the board meeting regarding them. As for addressing any of my other concerns regarding the process, the lack of transparency, and the respect to current district employees, I would have to say that those have never been addressed by anyone. In all of those other aspects that Mrs. Totten addressed, I would have to say that the superintendent's answer led you to believe it was all worked out, when in fact, none of it was. So, I'm here this evening to tell you the rest of the story, as Paul Harvey would say. As you recall, I came before you on May 12th regarding the unwritten procedure for internal applications that was created because of my addressing you, I believe. The process for currently employed teachers was that they needed to go through the interview process for a transfer, just like outside candidates. In one email I received from HR, they stated that I was being granted a pass on the initial interviews that outside candidates had to do because of my status as a current employee. Wow! I was rather insulted that it was stated in those terms. I would have thought that by being a current teacher in good standing with excellent reviews, this district would have respected my 16 years of service to it and welcomed my willingness to take on a new challenge, and respected my want to make a job change to furtherly challenge myself. Instead, it treated me as though I was lucky to even be given a chance to interview. Keep in mind, a chance to interview for a job in a district that I've worked for for 16 years. So, to answer Mrs. Totten's questions as to whether the situation's been resolved and remedied, my answer is no. I had to come before you two times just to get a chance to interview as an outside candidate within the district that employed me. Not only that, I had to update my information, bring references, et cetera, just to get a job that I already had, but just in a different location. It may come as a surprise to most of you, but it was extremely stressful, and it was very unnerving to go through the entire interview process. Even though I have just completed my 20th year teaching, it was an enormous pressure, and it was quite intimidating. At the same time, I feel it was also a huge waste of time for those people conducting the interviews. Just one example, some of the questions I was asked. What I did for RTI interventions. And another asked about my math program. Well, seeing as I'm a district employee, I told them the programs and processes I have to use, the very same ones that all district employees use. I feel it was just another way of treating staff, less than professionally, by making them reiterate their job descriptions in a room with a minimum of at least five administrators and five of my peers. While I'm very thankful that those 10 individuals were willing to interview me and give me a fair opportunity within the parameters given... I'm going to finish. I still believe the entire process was inappropriate from the start. As I mentioned, in April, May, private sector employees in most of districts around us do not treat their employees as outsiders when looking to change from within. The new made-up process for internal employees who are denied a transfer needs to be looked at objectively. It needs to be revised to treat your current employees with the respect they deserve and done in collaboration with your teaching staff. I felt very deceived by the way Mrs. Totten's questions were answered on June 9th. She was led to believe that all was well, and that I felt the situation was rectified. I assure you that isn't, nor was it ever my interpretation. I am quite disappointed and embarrassed at how the process treats its trained, experienced teachers. How long do you think current employers are going to feel pride in this district when they're treated so poorly from within? I feel that this board needs to address these issues and work collaboratively... I can't even... I'm flustered. Collaboratively with its current teachers to make this process proactive and positive, not one of demoralizing. As I stated before you, I welcome the opportunity to challenge myself. I don't understand why this district doesn't welcome the opportunity for its employees to challenge themselves. Even more concerning is the fact that this board is only getting part of the story a lot of the time, and that individuals such as myself have to keep putting themselves on a professional limb in order to attempt to convince you that change is necessary. Thank you, and thank you for the extra minute.
Yes, Lisa?
As you can probably imagine, I'm a little upset. So, are we going to hear the whole story? Are we going to have this result?
Should have stopped her at three minutes. You're... We voted on it, I thought. So, now that you let one individual speak everything she had to speak, it should be everyone, including let Jen back up there and let her finish.
Jen should be allowed to finish, as should every other speaker that has five minutes or less.
Taking this job, elected official.
Okay, nobody's talking but me right now. You guys want me to get all black and white on you, I will. I have tried to be very fair, hear what the will of the board is, and do it that way. Three minutes is it, three minutes is it. TJ?
Sorry, maybe you should have announced that before you posted the agenda.
Okay. Twenty-two people are signed up to talk. You guys, I have tried so hard to be a decent diplomatic human being, but it's all done now, so you have three minutes. I have a gavel, I'll hit the gavel at three minutes. I am not trying to cut anybody off, and I'm not trying to insult anybody. We have a four-page agenda to get through. So, Jody, it is your turn.
I believe Lisa was mid-comment.
Yes, I was.
Were you addressing me, or were you addressing the superintendent?
You, because you had directed our superintendent to deal with the situation, and the board was going to be discussing it, of which it didn't happen, and then the superintendent reported that everything was handled.
That's not what I said.
Okay, nope.
I can respond.
No, I don't want you to respond.
Nope, I'm going to, I'm going to handle this from this point. Jeff and I'll discuss it, and we'll figure out how to get it on the next agenda.
Thank you.
It was not intended to not be on, we thought that the situation was resolved. Jody?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jody Dishar, and I live at 6345 First Street. I have been with the district for 22-plus years as a school bus driver. I have loved my job and look forward to driving the students to and from school every day. I have a good rapport with the children, parents, staff, and community members. As you know, this past year has been especially challenging for the school bus drivers, especially for those of us that are veterans. We have been humiliated, disrespected, and morale is at an all-time low. You have already heard numerous complaints from many staff members. I am here to show support for my fellow coworkers, as well as the concerns that they have voiced. Up until this point, I have chosen to let the district handle the situation. However, after a recent situation I had regarding personal time off, I felt like I need to speak up. For those of you that don't know about me, in addition to being a school bus driver, I am a volunteer bloodhound handler who assists law enforcement in locating missing persons. I have been doing this for 20-plus years. I have helped look for people that are mentally challenged, have Alzheimer's, young children, suicidal, and drowning victims. I have helped law enforcement solve arsons, armed robberies, murder investigations, as well as bring closures to families who have lost a loved one. In the past, it has never been a problem having personal time off when I get called out. The call can come at any time, day or night, no matter if it's 20 below or 90 above. I never know how long a search will last. It could take hours, days, or weeks. I have always been very appreciative with the flexibility I have been granted in the past regarding personal time off when I am helping law enforcement. I have never jeopardized my jobs, and my coworkers have always been very supportive of me. On Friday, June 6th, while we were choosing summer school routes, I asked if the same policy held true in regards to if I was called out on a search, if I could have additional time off in the event of an emergency. One week later, and I was told, yes, I could. If I was called out on an emergency, we're only allowed one day for summer school. After that, we have to forfeit our routes. I was told, yes, I could. A week later, I received a phone call and saying I would not be granted any additional time off for searches. If I take more than one day off for any reason, I will be forced to forfeit my route. While I value my job, I am being forced to make a decision, and that decision could mean life or death for the missing individual. I have always kept my job in high regards, but is anything worth someone's life? I feel like this is just another form of retaliation against a veteran driver. Thank you for your time.
Karen Adams. Karen Adams is next.
My name is Karen Adams. I live at 3851 Jerry Court in Plover. I have worked for the transportation department for 16 years. I love my job. I have become close to the kids I take to school, to home, and the parents who trust me to keep their kids safe. In the last year, I feel the department has been turned upside down. It has become a hostile work environment because of the way it is managed. The new drivers have been turned against the senior drivers. There's discrimination, favoritism, and bullying, which I thought was against our school policy and the law. There is no confidentiality. When I had a problem with a coworker, I went to my supervisor. Later, I found out he was in the break room talking to another employee about me and the situation I had. When I questioned anything that he had told me, I was told, just do it because I said so. When we are told, we were told all year long that there is no seniority anymore, until the last day of school and the final hours when we were told we could pick a summer school route, but even then, it was posted we reserve the right to remove a driver from a route if an issue arises. When I went into the office to pick a route, all I had to look at was a picture of a map. Didn't give me any times, any hours, or if there are any transfers from another school. Yet somehow, the new drivers ended up with the longer routes. In the past year, when a driver was removed from a route, the replacement driver was someone the supervisor picked. Jobs are not posted anymore, which does not allow an employee to get a longer route based on seniority. The majority of us started at the bottom and worked our way up. That is no longer the case. Since our supervisor has taken over the department, there has only been two rules that applied, because I said so, and I want to share the wealth, which we all learned isn't true. It really depends on who you are and when you were hired. All the years of my experience mean nothing anymore. I have not felt this much anxiety and stress in all the years that I have worked for the department, not knowing what's going to happen next, what's he going to change next, or who's going to leave next. Most of us have been driving the same routes for years. When we bid on a route, it was ours to keep until we gave it up. Now we were notified for the 2014-15 school year, we're not going to be able to keep those routes. On August 14th, we have to come in, pick 12 routes that we might like, and the following week, he will let us know which routes we will get. That's going to be based on our driving record, how well we get along with the students, and how much time we take off work. Now we all know who's really going to get those routes. It is my belief that the department was run more efficiently in the past than it has this year. The extended time given for pre-trips, post-trips, field trips, and all the paperwork, we do more checking underneath the hood than an over-the-road truck driver. It seems my boss has been trying to change a system that wasn't broken. Past history should speak volumes. When is the last time?
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to cut you off. We're going to do exactly three minutes. Apologize. Sandra?
I live at 1823 North Second Drive from Stevens Point. I'm here to talk about summer school transportation. The supervisor has hired college students to be EAs on the bus with special-needs children. He has turned down drivers to be educational assistants, even though normal bus drivers with special-needs children, they do not have formal training. He has turned down educational assistants that have the necessary training because they were not able, available the first week of school. Buses are supposed to have an educational assistance when they have special-needs children riding. We have buses running with no educational assistance on. A driver was yelled at by the parent of a special-needs child for not knowing the child's condition. The driver was not supplied with the book of the child's medications prior to driving this route, and does not have educational assistant onboard. Also, the most of the transfer buses went to the new hired drivers. So I would like to ask these questions. Number one, did these college students that are filling in as educational assistants get trained and take the tests that our regular assistants had to do? Number two, why is he turning down regular educational assistants? Number three, it is just to show I have the power to do what I want. Number four, did the special-needs administrator approve this? Number five, is it a state law, federal law, or a school board policy that educational assistants have to have special training? Number six, we transport many special-needs students, some with very serious life-threatening conditions. Do you or the parents want non-trained, less experienced assistants who are not familiar with these children taking care of them, or would educational assistants and drivers that comes with experienced training and are familiar with these children be a better choice? We would also like to point out that the college students are also cleaning our buses. Why was this not offered to drivers? Why is this not posted? If you ask our transportation supervisor, he will say, I can do what I want. I choose them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Douglas?
My name is Doug Pacina. I live at 6391 Highway 54, and I have been employed by the district for the last three years. I spent 25 years working in industry, in a labor shop, in a union shop, and we had supervisors at that time, where I worked, they went through a lot of supervisors. They brought them in, they sent them home, you know, they would hire 10 and keep 2. You could always tell which 2 were going to stay. And all my years working in industry, I never had a supervisor as bad as the one we have now.
Okay.
You're going to stop me, I know.
Yes, I am.
I'll go out, I'll change tabs.
Thank you.
You've all got jobs outside of this. Have you ever taken a two-week vacation? Have you ever taken a two-week vacation, come back and not have your job? It happened to us. You can't even take a two-week vacation, which was approved last year by the supervisor then, and you come back and after 12 or 13 years of driving, you don't have a job anymore. I think that's ridiculous. It's one thing to say you can't miss 10 days in a year because you're sick or personal reasons, but to say that you can't take a vacation? Who doesn't take a vacation? Who has a job that doesn't take a vacation? And then another item that I'd like to address is that the district has survived on 66-passenger buses for decades. Now supposedly, we've ordered 71-passenger buses, which cause a huge problem now because they don't fit in the garage. The fire department recently told us that we're going to have to do extensive modifications to the garage to fit in these bigger buses, which nobody really wants, because there's no room to get around them. If you put a 71-passenger bus in our garage and open the hood, you cannot get around that bus. That's a safety hazard. The fire department has said so. They said we're going to have to put in emergency exits, which is going to cost the district probably $50,000 or so, all because somebody wanted bigger buses for who knows what. The newest buses traditionally go on the longest routes, on the country route, which also have the fewest kids. Why do you need a higher-capacity bus? There's no sense in that. Plus, it's harder to get rid of a 71-passenger bus when you're done with it after five years because that's what the district does. Not everybody wants a big bus. So now we're going to be saddled with big buses that don't fit in the garage, that are too big for the purpose, and nobody can give a good reason for it.
Okay.
Is that my time?
It is.
Okay.
Thank you. Michelle Pacina?
I no longer have anything to say.
Okay. Judy?
Every single minute.
Okay. Jeremy?
You didn't make it.
Leanne, you didn't put a number? Did you want to?
Just scratch me. I'm trying to do something.
That is where we are. You don't, because, is that Jennifer?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry. It says that you're only allowed to address one topic once. So if you, do you have a different subject you want to talk about? A different item on the agenda? You're only allowed to speak to one item one time?
Okay.
We are now on Spash Student Report. Emily is not here. WASB Legislative Agenda.
I missed somebody who signed up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Who did I miss?
I signed up, Scott Wilsons.
I'm really sorry, Scott, you did. I apologize. You were way ahead.
Hi, I'm Scott Wilsons. I live at 1235 Rocky Run Road. I've been a school bus driver in this district for over 20 years. In those 20 years, I've washed buses, I've repaired seats, I've fielded buses, and I've assisted in state inspections. I'm considering early retirement because I feel that the safety of students is being compromised. We're short a school bus mechanic. Buses that I don't believe would have passed state inspection have gone out on routes. Cameras were purchased for school buses while buses, a bus in disrepair sat idle all year. Drivers who need a break are afraid to take time off in fear that they'll lose their route. For the safety of students, I'm asking the board to do something before it's too late. Thank you.
Again, I apologize for that, Scott. All right. WASB Legislative Update?
Today.
New report today. Consolidated Task Force update, Kim or Lisa?
We did not meet since our last meeting.
Superintendent's Report, Reed, do you want to speak before?
The five members on this board ought to be ashamed the way they treated these people who put them on the spot like that. You shouldn't even be board members. It didn't take 66 minutes. Guys exaggerate any reason to cut people down. So taking my time, I'm going to take that long. This technology professional development center, and I shouldn't even have to be up here talking about it, because I'll guarantee you that tech center has never been passed. But the superintendent of schools moves forward with this Jackson School idea, just keeps talking about it as if the tech center passed, and I'll guarantee you, it never passed. And there's some board members here, and anybody here can tell me if I'm wrong.
I believe you're correct.
Yeah, I am correct. So therefore, I shouldn't even have to be spending time here. That tech center never passed, and I'll tell you what happened for you new board members. And I can see shyly sitting right here. It came up, and then there was an agreement on it, and then after talking about it like you usually do for a long time, you said, let's just move on, let's just pass the first part, let's just agree to the first part of taking centuries' money on this, but we'll talk about a tech center later on. Well, you never did. Of course, superintendent of school keeps talking about it like it actually happened, and therefore, he goes, well, then you new board members, probably some of you who liked the idea, then let him talk about, yeah, well, we're going to open it up in Jackson School because I have that authority. You agreed to a tech center, and I have to, I have to open it up someplace. So what do board members do? Huh, go along with it. But that's not the case. It never passed. So once again, I hope that some, thank you, Ms. Totten for agreeing that that's never passed. I don't care what they think, and that's procedure here that is not followed. And besides that, this issue that these poor people have to come once again should have been handled by a board already, the last time, there's two people come and talked about it, goes to show that this board can't get anything done, nor even can the superintendent. So the board should start running their show.
Next, this is superintendent's report.
I have nothing to comment about other than I'll take any questions.
Any questions?
Well, I did have a question about the technology, the way it reads in here. Reed is correct. I mean, we never approved the center, and it sounds like in this paragraph, we approved it. I mean, we accepted the report, and I just wanted to know, did I miss something? I don't think I've only missed two meetings in the four years I've been on the board.
It does not indicate in here at all, nor does it intimate that the board passed it. What it actually says is, we will return to the board with a recommendation regarding the center.
Well, from my layman's terms, it sure sounds like we approved it and we're moving on. So again, my opinion, my interpretation, and I believe a lot of people too, so. The other question I had is on the board member's request for information, number one, and it's about the county elderly program service program. Is that like a cost-neutral to us? We're not losing any money?
Tom, are you in the hallway there? Is Tom Owens out there, Tom?
No.
No, he's not.
Okay. I don't know that it's cost-neutral, Kim, I'd have to check with Tom. Oh, here he is.
Yes, it's cost-neutral to us.
Okay, thank you.
Lisa?
When I read this first sentence, and it states that apparently a community member saw the meeting, and so then offered a temporary site, to me, that implies that he's assuming or she is assuming that a center has been approved. So I agree with both Kim and Reed. I believe if you keep saying it, people are going to believe it to be true, even though we have never voted on it. So even the fact that you opened up Jackson School for the temporary site to do this stuff, I think that was overstepping. I think the board made it clear that Jackson was not the selection for a, quote, "development technology center," and I'm very disappointed in the words that are being used and how the public is being misled.
Any other comments or questions? I have a comment. I'm going to read this because of the significance of it, in my opinion, and I can. Ben Franklin Junior High School was awarded a School of Merit recognition for its implementation of RTI initiative and PBIS initiative by the DPI. So congratulations to Dr. Nigard and her entire staff and faculty. Thank you so much. That is an amazing thing. We have letters from both of them on this recognition, and we're really proud of you. Thank you. The next thing we have is the consent agenda. Letter B is pulled out. You have an updated recommendation of employment at your spots. The revisions are in red. The revisions are in red.
I would move to approve the Consent Agenda items A and C.
Yes, Kim. On the personnel recommendations, some of the names are familiar. Do we... We used to... I thought we used to list that we're giving them an additional .24 FTEs. Can we start doing that again? So like the staff that we... Because I believe D on the back page. I don't know if I want to mention her name. I mean, she's an awesome art teacher, so Ms. Raspisian, I love you. But I mean, if she's still with us or is she coming back and we're just giving her... I thought we used to do it, you know, additional 2.4 FTEs.
Yeah, we did. We... Our new HR coordinator started today. So we can absolutely do that.
That would be great. Because it just shows that we're giving our staff a little bit more time.
Yep. Not a problem.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Then what we are voting on right now is to approve A and C in the Consent Agenda.
Mr. Kokonowski?
Yes.
Mr. Pressley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Backson?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Okay. We need to deal with letter B.
On...
Yes?
On page two of seven, under eight, under the Consent Agenda, I thought we were removing the extra comments that people said. And so the Ms. Totten request changes to be made to eight, being that item will be brought back on a future agenda. I do not believe needs to be there. So I make a motion that is removed from the minutes. And with that adjustment made, that the minutes are approved for the June 6th meeting.
I want to second that, but I want her to add something else of a... Just a correction or addition that needs to be added.
Okay. Go ahead.
Just 12B on the vote. There's just no number of the no votes.
Okay.
So it's just the typo. So I don't know if she has to...
Yeah, I probably just missed it.
Okay. Does she have to add that in her motion?
You can just do with changes.
Okay. With... Then I'll amend my motion to with changes.
And you're seconding that, Kim?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments on letter B of the Consent Agenda, which is the minutes from the June 9th, first regular June meeting?
Can I ask a question about this?
Yes, you may.
And this is maybe a dumb question, but I'll direct it to our secretary. This comment... This isn't... This is like a procedural comment. It's not substantive. I guess I'm wondering...
I really only have the request that be brought back side because we didn't make a motion on it. And I didn't just want it left hanging out there without a what happened to it in the record. And so that's why that comment is on there.
Trish, pull your mic, please.
Sorry. Sorry. Lisa, let me ask you. Is... This seems procedural to me, not substantive. Is there... Do you disagree?
Yes.
And why do you want that removed? I think that that's helpful for future agendas when you go... Or future meetings when you go back to understand what it was, 8B.
Well, then it should be just 8B will be coming back.
Isn't that what it says?
It doesn't need to have my name on there or anybody else's name on there.
Okay. That's what you're... All right. I didn't understand why you were objecting to it.
Any other comments? Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Pressley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Backson?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonowski?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Okay. We're on to Business Services, and Sam Levine has asked to speak.
Sam Levine, 1021 First Street, Seva's Point. I'll make this very brief because I've just got one simple comment. And I might expand it a little bit. So in this one occasion, I will accept censure from the board for doing it. But I find it appalling that this board, once again, as the same in each and every contract negotiation that comes up, is going to approve contracted services when you don't have a contract with your own people, be it custodians, bus drivers, teachers, anybody else, each and every of the employee groups. You need to start working on taking care of your people first and then working about your outsourced... Worried about your outsourced people.
Chartwell's Annual Contract. Tom?
Okay. This is the 2014-15 Amendment of a multi-year contract, the renewal to Chartwells for their purchasing power, et cetera. We've been very successful through the use of that program. And we've been very, very pleased with the quality of the food, the support, their ability to help us comply with the Healthy Hungry Free Kids Act and the National School Lunch Program. And the discounts and rebates that we have been receiving exceed the amount of the cost of the contract that we have been paying for that. So that's also been a positive nature... A positive reward of this. So we would recommend that we approve the amendment, which covers the next school year, as indicated in the memo.
This is an action item. I need a motion.
I would move to approve the amendment number four of the Cost Reimbursable Prototype Contract between the district and Chartwells for the 2014-15 school year.
Second.
Do we have questions? Yes, Lisa?
What is the actual cost of this whole contract?
Eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. Is there increased costs? I didn't look up the total cost just before I came in here.
Well, and that was part of the problem. The way it was worded, you know, it was hard to tell if that was just the increase or if that was the contract.
Yeah, that is the increase.
Just the increase.
Yes.
So then, these discounts that you talk about that we're getting to counter the cost or offset the cost, are those discounts available for the district, even if we do not go through Chartwells?
Well, if we didn't go through Chartwell... Well, we... At this juncture, we need to go with Chartwells. But this is a... The state requires us to go through a formal bid process. It's a very complicated process, very formal. We do that, and that's how Chartwells was selected. And that takes several months to do. And I'm sorry.
But that's not my question. My question is, can the discounts that we are getting, the discounts and rebates of $161,000 that offset the cost of this contract, can the district get those discounts and rebates without going through this contract with Chartwells?
No.
So the only way to get that offset is to go through them.
Those are discounts and Chartwells that... Discounts and reimbursements that are a result of the buying power of Chartwells and the discounts that they have acquired with vendors as a result of their capacity.
Okay. So you want us to approve this without us having the total cost of the contract?
The total cost of the contract is... Administrative fee is $41,8612 per reimbursable meal pattern. And what did I have here? Thought I had that figure for you. I do not have that in front of me.
I would recommend that this board table this or postpone this until we have the actual contract amount. This is not a good habit to be in.
Tom, is this a... This is an amendment to the existing contract?
It is. It is.
How long is the existing contract in force for?
One more year after this, and then we'll be out for bids again.
Okay. Did we have an amendment to the contract last year?
Yes. We have annually for the last three years. This is the fourth one. And there's one more amendment, and then we're out for bids.
How long would it take either you or Bill to get the total amount of the contract? Do you have that information available?
I don't have it available right at the moment tonight. No. I'd have to get it for a future board meeting. But we can do that. It's the same percent increase as last year. This was done the same way last year.
Yes.
So it's a four-year contract?
A five-year.
Five-year contract? And the increases aren't built into the contract? So we don't know what they are ahead of time? Is that right?
They're not precisely built in. It's 2.3 last year. It was 2.3 this year. The year before that, it was zero increase. They didn't take any increase at all. They kept it flat.
So I approve... Sorry.
Sorry. I guess that just strikes me as an odd contract that... What's the point of the contract if it goes up every year? Or if you don't know what it's going to go up every year in amount? Are there other parts of the contract? I mean, maybe it would be helpful for us to see the whole contract. Is it...
Yeah. Okay. I can get it out again. Sure.
I mean, I'm new, so I haven't seen it. So, you know, maybe it's just me. But thank you.
Not a problem.
Kim?
I had some of the same questions and concerns. I mean, numerous times, we have a contract, and we're supposed to agree or approve a contract when we don't have the full contract in front of us. I'm in the midst of buying a house. I wish my banker would ask me, you know, how much my house is going to be worth, and he'd just give me some money and then just sign away. So I got to quit doing this. We got to quit doing this. And same thing, Trish. What is a five-year contract good for if they're just going to keep raising? And anyways, I thought, you know, the reason we do a long contract is so we can lock in those prices. So I'm going to vote no until we get that contract in front of us.
Jeff?
What happens if we don't sign this amendment?
We can bring it back next board meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. That'd be fine.
And Tom, just for...
Yes?
Okay. For clarification, I would assume that as prices go up in certain areas and that, they can't be exact on every contract. They're not going to be able to do that. So all the things... All the things that they can offer or the rebates and discounts, they're not the same every year. So the amount's going to be different. I don't... I guess if you didn't have a five-year, but I don't think that's how they operate. So I think that's part of the reason. Just like food, you know, one year, a tomato might be this amount and that amount. But they're doing it in bulk and that. So I think that's part of the reason that they do that.
Can I ask Tom a question? I'm sorry, Jeff.
Yep.
Is it possible that we can get a representative here, too? Because I guess my concern is, they just provide a service to us. It's not like they actually provide... They grow the food and provide the food. And the cost of fertilizer went up or whatever. We still pay those prices for the food. This is simply a service. Why is it going up 2.3%? Again, back to the reason why we had, you know, a five-year contract is to lock in that agreement. I'd like to know why they keep increasing it.
Okay. I'll bring it back next time. I'll ask the rep to join us so he can answer those specific questions.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Contracted Custodial Services?
Well, we have a motion on the table.
A motion, yeah.
Can she...
Postpone it?
Yeah. Pull it back.
Amy?
It's up to... You'd have to pull your second and pull your...
You can pull your second.
Can we just postpone it? Leave the motion out there or table it till the next meeting?
No.
You have to pull them. You got to pull it.
Okay.
Or bolt.
Yeah. I'll pull the second.
Okay.
I'll pull the motion.
All set? Amy?
Sure.
That's all you needed? Okay. Great. Okay, Tom?
Okay. The next item, Contracted Custodial Services Contract. As you know, administration has set up the staffing at a 60-40 ratio, 60% being district staff and 40% being contracted service. And you asked at the last time we discussed this to come back with some options and for us to look at this again. And we did do that. The options that we're showing you, consider only the 25 positions that make up the contracted service. We're not proposing any changes to district staffing here. There are four options. One option is to convert all contracted positions to district employees. One option... The second one is to convert only full-time contracted positions to district employees. Third option is to convert three full-time contracted positions to district employees. And the fourth option is to maintain the current contract, or renewal, rather, for the contract as all of those 24 people being contracted service. Now, if you turn the page to the memo and take a look at option one, the table is basically divided up, so you have your locations, your positions of the custodials, the hours and days, hours per day. And the first five columns, it's color-coded, all deal with the current contracted service. And then you have days worked per year. There's a difference between the contracted and in the second column, you'll see like 250, that's a full year for contract, but for a district employee, it's 260, the difference being that with a contracted employee, we don't pay the vacation. And then you see the Carlson-Dedman study, which covers three columns. And then you see three columns on current custodial one start rate. This is to allow us to have some comparability or comparison between the costs on those three different ways of doing it. So, if option one, right now, our cost for those individuals that are contracted using the contracted service, we would have just under $560,000 in terms of budgeted ongoing sustained cost. If we were to convert all of these to district employees and pay them at the Carlson-Dedman study rate, which is a starting rate of 1261, that cost would go to 816,000, which would be just under $256,000 increase in cost. If we were to pay those same people, those positions, rather, at the current start rate for a Class 1 custodian, that would be 1.1, a little over 1.1 million dollars, would be an increase of about $557,000 to our budget. And one of the issues of this problem that this creates, outside of obviously the cost, is some of these positions are actually 0.75 hours a day, or two hours a day, or an hour and a half a day, and it can be difficult to hire someone on a regular basis for that short of time. So, that led us into option number two. Option number two is to look only at the full-time custodial staff that is contracted. And in doing that, we split that table into two. You've got the upper part, which is the full-time, the lower part, which is the part-time, and then we just concentrate on the 12 full-time positions. Currently, our cost to the budget is just over, just under $408,000. If we were to convert those to full-time, using the Carlson-Dedman study rate of 1261, our cost would be 641,000, which is just under $234,000 increase. Pretty close to the same increase that we had in the first option. Going to the current start rate for a custodian one at the district's rate in place now, it would be 863,000, or $456,000 increase in the budget. This option does improve the ability to deal with the part-timers, because all of the part-times then would continue to be done by the contracted service. And the model, the business model of the contracted service is much more well-suited for being able to fill in small hours like that, and then piece it together with jobs and other locations and whatnot. So, that works out better. A third option, if there's the feeling that you must convert something, they identified three positions, one at each of the secondary schools that could be converted to a district position in that option. And currently, that's just under $102,000 with contracted service. If we were to do that at the Carlson-Dedman study rate, that would be 160,000, or an increase to the budget of just over 58,000. Or on the current custodial one start rate, that'd be $216,000, just under $114,000 increase. The fourth option is to maintain the 60-40 ratio. That was basically the board's directive some time back, and to keep the cost running at about 560,000. We did look at housekeepers as a classification. Housekeepers are more limited in the duties that they can perform, and it didn't make much sense to hire a district housekeeper whose duties and responsibilities were actually less than we get from our contracted service, and then push those other job responsibilities onto a existing custodian. So, that's why that was considered, but then dropped as an issue. On the back sheet, we have a number of givens. I won't read through those. You have had an opportunity to look at that. But one of the most important things that I need to talk about, though, the recommendation that we made when we finished reviewing this, and we being the buildings and grounds supervisors and myself, is to go with option four, primarily because we continue to get the same level of service that we've been receiving. We're able to backfill several of the positions that currently are contracted with district employees, because we're waiting for the board to decide what the start rate's going to be for custodians, because we're holding some positions that we need to fill, and we want to fill them with our own district staff, but we don't know what rate to hire them at, because you haven't made that decision yet, so that's pending. We want to move on that, but with the budget being what it is, and with the future that the budget is facing, we're very concerned, because, for example, in the first example, to convert everybody to district employment would be about a $560,000 increase. And frankly, I think that would put you in a very detrimental position in the months and immediate years ahead. If you aren't familiar with it, or perhaps you are, in the last 10 months, the state legislature has changed the law with respect to community service fund three times. And each time, it's gotten more restrictive, and their final version has called for the DPI to establish restrictive rules, administrative rules governing how that's to be done. Why is this important? This is important because $902,000 of your budget lie outside the 10 Fund and the community service fund. A good portion of that is custodial time. And I spent about 40 minutes on the phone today with DPI reviewing their preliminary draft rule, which I just received a couple days ago, and getting clarification on that. At least seven years ago, I haven't heard back yet. I'm trying to have the folks over there dig out when this district started the practice of calculating, the method of calculation that they used to assess what portion of the cost of custodial contracts is charged to community service fund. I covered that formally with you a couple meetings ago. It's been at least seven years, maybe for sure longer than that. Under the new prescriptive rules, that process is not going to be allowed. So, between now and October, I've got to meet, and we've got to come up with a different way of calculating this, and I'm going to have to bring this back to you with respect to the calculation methodology, and before you get to the final budget, because at worst case, you've got $902,000 that's going to have to go from the 80 Fund to the 10 Fund. At best case, a number less than that. I do not know what that number is, because we don't know what methodology we can incorporate, and exactly how much that's likely to generate. But if we have to push 900,000 into the 10 Fund, financially, I would have to advise you against increasing your budget by 500-plus thousand dollars to pay for services that you're already getting for 500,000 less. It's just financially, it's not a wise move. It's your choice, but I have to go on record to advise you against it for financial reasons. That, plus facing the fact that we have to reach negotiations here with several labor groups that are not yet closed down, that's going to put pressure on the budget, pressure that we have to sustain going forward. And if we aren't careful, we will find ourselves too soon being in a situation of talking cuts, perhaps, or going back to six assignments at the high school and things like that, and we sure would like to avoid that. So, we need to be very careful about the commitment of funds going forward in any large amounts. So, that's why I say that. And I'll point out what I'm talking about when we get into the preliminary budget. So, those are the options that we kind of, we came up with, and if you have any specific questions, Don and Mark are here, and they can join me at the podium if you would like to ask us questions. So, I see some hands coming up, so gentlemen want to join me?
I would like to make a motion to approve option one. I do have some questions, but...
I'll second that.
I'm going to make my motion first, then we can discuss it.
Okay, did you have questions to go with that?
I do.
Okay.
First thing, and I apologize, I'm going to amend this motion with the Carlson-Dedman study section of it, okay?
And I'll amend my second.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. A couple of the numbers that you have on table one, you have, and I'm just going to give you, for instance, line four, 16 and 17, I believe. You have them as only a part-time position, but yet it looks like you're calculating their proposed custodian starting rate with benefits. Is there a reason why you picked those three to give benefits to? Or is it just a typo?
Unless they go over 880 hours, then they're entitled to benefits.
880 hours in a school year?
Mm-hmm.
That's a WRS.
Okay.
Calendar year.
Calendar year, yes.
Calendar year, okay.
Can I just ask, what are you, are you looking at this one?
At table one?
This one?
Table one, okay.
Yeah, table one.
But she's looking at this one.
Okay. Okay, and that, that's just kind of threw me, because some of them have five hours, and some of them have four hours.
Can I ask a point of clarification? Your motion said the Carlson-Dedman rate?
Yes.
Okay, that, please understand that that's just an example. Until this board determines what the rate is, it doesn't matter whether your motion said Carlson-Dedman rate, or whatever, because, well, I suppose it would, but if you select a rate higher than the Carlson-Dedman rate, we have to pay that rate, not what this study said, or, I mean, what you approved here in your motion. Because if you say the, for example, if you say the rate's going to be $13 an hour, that's what they'd be paid, so...
Understood.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. My other question, if I can continue?
Yes.
Okay. On line 10, then, we have a custodian at McDill that's got five and a half hours, but you still only have them with no benefits.
I see four and a half.
Four and a half.
Well, four and a half, yeah. But the number 16 has four, and number 17 has four, and they get benefits. I'm just, I'm just wondering if there's...
193 day.
Okay, the days, okay, I got that.
Their total hours, annual hours.
So, look at annual hours.
868.5, they're under 880.
Okay. My other question is on table two, which really doesn't make a difference on table of part-time. Are any of the part-time positions, can you combine them and only have, because Tom said there, we would have possibly a hard time finding a part-time position? Could we combine them? So, if you only have like one and a half hours at Plover Whiting and 0.75 at Spash, can someone do two jobs? Can someone do three positions?
Mark? Mark works intimately with the scheduling.
Yes, they could be combined. Generally, when they're combined, you pay travel time between schools, so you lose a lot of time and efficiency by doing that.
I just had one more statement, and Tom said, too, that, you know, and I apologize if I'm pulling this kind of out of the hat, and you said, continuing to receive the same little, level of service? I don't know what you mean, what you meant by that, but of all the complaints we've had throughout this year, I really don't want our level of service to stay the same. It's scary for the safety of our children. I've been put on the spot on this board about the safety of our children. That's why I'm proposing option one. Thank you.
Alex?
After option four, the other considerations, district housekeeping. You mentioned the reason, one of the reasons it wouldn't work out, because of the basic and light maintenance services that exceed duties of a housekeeper role. What kind of duties are you giving an example that Clean Power does, that our custodians, that our regular district employees are not doing?
Alex, will you please speak into the mic, so the camera picks it up?
Did you hear what I asked?
Yeah, I did.
Thanks.
Actually, it's, our regular custodians do a level of maintenance, okay? Clean Power typically does not, okay? Clean Power person is typically a housekeeper type role. We do have a few that do some maintenance, but they do like, our guys do light plumbing, they do like lighting ballast changes, lamp changes, that type of work. If we went to a housekeeping position, that would then take away those maintenance duties with the housekeeping designation, if you wanted to create two different classes of workers. Does that make sense? And we need those duties.
Right, so you're saying, right now, Clean Power changes ballasts? Or that's not the case?
Not, not usually, no.
Okay.
Change bulbs.
Yeah, they'll change lamps, but they don't change ballast.
And that's a housekeeping-type position that this company created? So, if we created our own housekeeping, would we not put that position, those kind of job descriptions, in the same title? Now, I understand that it might conflict with a regular custodian, but is that a possibility?
Well, okay, there's multiple things going on here, all right, and multiple discussions going on. I just want to clarify, so if we go with the 60-40 split, we will be hiring about three to five people right away, once we get a how determine what we're going to hire. Now, if we were to hire housekeepers when we need custodian ones, that would be a detriment to us, because we would be losing the maintenance capabilities we had when certain people left the district.
Right, I'm not looking to compete with what we need and what is available. I'm just saying that anything that's left over that Clean Power is performing for us, since the community has issues with Clean Power, that we still create our own housekeeping division, or whatever you want to call it, that our district employees, that we have the authority, hire-fire, do whatever we need to adjust, create it as a part-time position, which I'm sure that there are a lot of people looking for part-time jobs, or something without benefits, because it doesn't really, not all situations are the same. Those positions would be filled, in my opinion. Also, it seems like we would, or currently, or possibly are going to be paying Clean Power $16.98 per hour, per individual. Now, granted, what they actually pay their employees, we set a parameter that we want them to at least pay them 10 something and up to, we set that. So, that's, in that parameter, is what they're going to pay their employee. The difference of that $3, $4 is profit to Clean Power, where we could be taking that $3, $4 and hiring a few more custodians, maybe, or more cleaners for our housekeeping position, or pay a little bit more to those positions, because it's going directly to them.
Well, actually, if you look at the chart, when you add benefits in for full-time employees...
Well, we're not talking full-time employees for this housekeeping position, that's what I was stating. They would be part-time positions, and maybe more of them. The industries are going more and more to part-time employees, walking away from full-time. And we, as a school district, also need to consider that and maybe get on board with it, because that's how Clean Power can provide those rates to the public.
There are other districts that have gone, just recently, Mozzany School District went to two, they work four hours a day, so they're part-time, so they're, for eight-hour shift, they have two employees that take turns on that shift. I haven't talked to them, whether, and that's so recent, that I don't know if they've got any kind of track record on how that's working out for them or not, and whether or not they're being able to fulfill hiring for those type of businesses, and I can't answer.
So, we, at the very least, instead of totally abandoning this, we can use that maybe as a reference to see in the future if that would work for us as well?
I mean, there's stuff, I know from them that they're doing it, so if you wanted us to watch what they're doing, and seeing, getting feedback from them is how it's working, yes, we can do that.
Okay. I personally would still like to see us create our own housekeeping, but you know more of the logistics and what's involved than, of course, I do. I feel it's possible, but again, thank you.
Don, can I ask you a question? Alex asked the question, the cost of hiring a Clean Power individual is greater than the cost that we would hire a housekeeper, as an example. And he used the phrase that the difference, the profit, goes to Clean Power. How many hours a year does a Clean Power custodian work?
Full-time, they're working, what do we have, 2,080? Or they're working...
No, listen to, it's 200 and...
Yeah, 2,000, these all exclude overtime.
Okay, so they work 2,000. And they don't do the work, for the most part. You said there were some Clean Power employees who do change ballasts and lamps?
Not ballasts.
No.
No, no, wait a minute. He said earlier that there are some Clean Power employees, I don't know how many, could be one, you said some, who do some of the work that our custodians do. Is that correct?
Yeah, I believe it's one, and we have one.
Is he a licensed electrician? Is he a licensed electrician?
No.
Don't, don't have to be. So, so, okay, we have one. Okay, let's just put that one aside. So, if we were to hire a housekeeper, or a position, create a position, or as Alex said, a division, they would have to work the same number of hours per year, correct? In order to satisfy the work that we have now?
Yes.
All right. So, when you calculate the benefits on top of that, we're at a much higher rate than we're paying Clean Power?
That's correct.
Okay. If we go to part-time, as Alex suggests, have we had good experience being able to recruit and employ and retain part-time employees four hours a day?
You've had experience with that, haven't you?
Right.
No, it's very difficult. It's very difficult to hire part-time workers at that point. A lot of our shifts, our school term, and where the contractor, they will shift their school employees to places, other accounts during the summer when they have vacations. We wouldn't have that ability to do that.
Okay.
It's difficult to find...
Right. Earlier in the year, I don't recall exactly when, there was a list of anonymous, it was 20 or 30 complaints, questions, et cetera. And we came back to the board and answered each one. And in some cases, our own custodians were doing some of those things at a greater rate than the Clean Power. And in a few cases, Clean Power was more than our custodians. You recall that list, right?
Yes.
Okay. And those areas in which there were some legitimate concerns, have those been addressed and rectified?
We work with them on an ongoing basis, yes. So, I mean, we address every issue when they come up.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
One other item, before I forget, there's one cost that is not reflected here of the staff when they become district employees. And that is, we become responsible for the workers' comp aspect of it. And this group, obviously because of their activities, are the highest-risk group that we have, and do account for a large portion of the work comp expenses, et cetera. So, increasing the number of people within the staff could very likely, could very likely increase our workers' comp expense in the future.
I also want to just recollect, and I believe this is correct, that one of the issues that was raised, not this year, but actually in a couple of years past, was that the district did not appear to have a cap on the number of Clean Power people we would employ. And so, what we did, Don and Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, and we met, Tom and I, and the two of you, and I think Cabinet was involved as well, and said, number one, that was a priority to have every head custodian in the building, be, in the buildings, be one of our employees.
Correct.
For obvious reasons, not the least of which was loyalty and ownership in the work. And secondly, that we were going to develop a recommendation for the board and for the custodial group, to show them that we valued the work that our own custodians do, and recognize that there needed to be a balance with that, with our fiscal responsibility to sustain what we could sustain. And so, that's where we came up with the 60-40.
Correct.
So, what this contract does... So what this contract does effectively, though not officially part of the contract, is it establishes a sixty forty guideline for us as we employ, as we fill vacancies, so that we're going to retain sixty percent of our staff as our own employees, and then keep the forty percent as Clean Power.
Correct.
Okay.
Lisa?
You can go. I have two questions for you. It's a job description for the Clean Power employees. Is it identical to the job description for the people you're calling district housekeepers? Is it the same?
We don't have currently a district housekeeper position, so I would envision it to be very close.
So whatever we are currently filling with Clean Power, we could create our own category, we could call them housekeepers.
Yes.
And they could do exactly the same work if we can find the employees and budget it and so forth.
Correct.
Okay, here's my second question. The contract that we have with Clean Power right now, we can put that out one more month with no repercussions, can't we?
You've already decided to do that through the end of July.
Okay, okay. I'm just, I'll just say it out loud here. My concern is that this is a lot of money that we're talking about spending here, and I see in the very next budget, the very next item is more budget issues that have to come up. And I'm seeing a lot of pieces of, you know, large chunks of money that we're talking about, but I'm not seeing the global, maybe it's because I'm new still, but I'm not seeing the global plan, and I'm really, at this point right now, today, this evening, I'm hesitant to vote one way or another on this, simply because I don't have the whole global picture of our budget. And I want to see that before I vote in any direction on this.
Lisa?
Mark, when was the last time that the district went out and tried to hire a part-time custodial staff?
Oh, that was years ago, I mean, it must be eight years or nine years at least.
Okay, so it would be fair to say that we really don't know what the market would do if we put those jobs out there?
We could put those out there. I know even the contractors have difficulty finding part-time people.
Okay, but to say, but from experience, our experience is old experience, it's not anything current.
Right, and when we had part-time custodians, they were paid at the custodian one rate.
Okay, okay. The other thing, Tom, then, when you said that workers' comp is not included in these benefits, what is included in these benefits, then?
Health, life, dental, disability, social security, retirement, the standard things. Workers' comp is outside of that, all benefits, because that's a state requirement.
Okay.
It's not a benefit like health insurance or life insurance.
Okay. And I disagree on that, I consider that part of the whole package. But that being said, when you just brought up the whole housekeeping thing, I had thought the board had directed the administration to come back with different alternatives, such as the housekeeping positions and all that other stuff. So I'm a little disappointed that they didn't come back. That being said, I really don't see how we can afford to continue to not make the security of our students a priority. A lot of those issues that were brought to the board's attention were very serious issues. And I think, you know, we can spend, you know, how much money on this project, that project, just sort of like Trish said, with these silos out there, instead of the whole, picture as a whole in what our priority is. And I firmly believe our, safety of our students is a huge issue, and I can't see how we can't do this. Now, that, I also believe that housekeeping positions absolutely should be looked at. So I would love for this to come back again with different alternatives.
I think even the board could agree that the safety of the children outweighs technology for the children.
I would agree.
Yes, Chris.
I just have two short things to say. If you looked at the report that was given, Alex, I don't knew, I think you both had a copy of that. When you're talking about safety of children, you're making comparisons, and I think we had comparisons in there of issues that happened, things happened between contracted or district employees, and there were a lot of similarities in that. That's number one. Number two is, number five says, given that the district continues to retain the right to terminate the recommended Clean Power contract or portions of the contract...
Chris, where are you?
Oh, I'm sorry. Right before the recommendation, the givens that Tom gave us, that we're able to terminate the contract within a thirty-day notice if necessary. You know, I guess when you talk about that safety thing, it says, it says to me, and I could be wrong, that you're saying, if we approve having these people in the building, we're jeopardizing the safety of our students. Now, if you looked at the report, our custodians and the contract, there were a number of items that were exactly the same. So to put this safety issue, we received some information about five years ago, and we had someone come from Milwaukee to talk about, these are people in our community that work here. To accuse them of putting the safety of our children at risk by allowing them to continue, I think, is really an injustice to them. They have families here, they work here.
I didn't talk about that.
Not you, I'm not talking to you, Trish.
Okay.
I said, Lisa, no, 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 no. Lisa spoke about safety, Alex did. I don't think there's anybody on this board that would do anything to put our children at risk. I think they're all our children. So just to say, if you vote for this, we're putting our children at risk, the safety, I think that's an unfair statement, that's just my opinion.
I'm a little bit concerned about the management style of Clean Power, and maybe a remedy for that, because are they getting rid of those employees that time after time are an issue or not? I don't know. I'm not going to single out individuals, because I don't know any of the individuals who work for Clean Power. And yes, I do know that they're residents of this community. And I remember our conversations before saying that they did have very good individuals working there, and we would want those individuals. I would like to see, because I'm sure that one custodian who is overseeing this is busy doing the maintenance of the building and cannot keep an eye on what's going on with the housekeeping. Let's just create for each school or each area, maybe just the middle school, the high school, a district housekeeper who is in charge of the housekeeping, and whatever benefits are needed or whatever, to retain a very responsible individual, possibly one of the people from Clean Power already, and they will keep a day-to-day eye on what is going on, where a custodian may not be able to all the time, because they're busy doing all the maintenance on the building.
Kim?
If this comes back, the way it sounds like people want to kind of do a little bit different information, you mentioned, I think it was Tom, and I apologize if it's not, these numbers do not include overtime, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And Clean Power gets a lot of overtime, correct?
There's overtime in both district and contracted people.
Okay, could we see, I mean, if this comes back, can we see a table in just maybe a generic of overtime to add that? Because that would be fair to our accounting.
I don't think that would work, because we never know how much overtime is going to be needed, it floats all over the place. That's why it's not in there to begin with.
If we take a estimate of the last, how long have we had them, three years? If we take an estimate, I think that would be fair? Because from my understanding, what I've heard from custodians, Clean Power gets more overtime than our district does, because they get time and a half, our employees don't.
Well, that's actually, we have to be very careful here, because it's not that case at all. The difference, and Leon and I have had several conversations about this, the difference in overtime that you're referring to, Kim, only occurs on a few days a year, and it's not all the time. It occurs on a holiday when a district employee or a Clean Power employee is called in, and whether or not that district employee gets straight time plus holiday pay, a Clean Power employee gets holiday pay and time and a half. So the difference is fifty percent of an hourly wage, but only on holidays that they're called in.
Okay.
So it's not, it's not all overtime.
Okay, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I mean, I think that number still would be, even if it's a, you know, kind of put in a different space. The other thing that you two were talking about is, you know, the three-dollar difference, possibly, that we're paying Clean Power, excuse me, what Clean Power is paying their employees and what we would. And instead of going into Clean Power's pocket, it would go into our employees, people in our community, and that are going to love working in our school district. To me, a big difference, and the safety of the children are very important to me. And again, not all Clean Power, I'm going to put all in that, but if you receive the emails that we have seen, our community does not want Clean Power in our school, and I'm voting that way.
Yes, Tom?
That's a good point. Both Clean Power employees, for the most part, and our own people that would be our district employees under this motion, would be people who live in the community. But I want to point this out, you're the board, you vote, you do what the will of the board is, but financially, you would be spending over five hundred thousand dollars to get what you're already getting in terms of a cleaning service. Whether you feel that's up to par or not is a different issue. That's five hundred thousand less that you will have to pay other employees and settle with other employees.
Just a clarification, Kim said the, using the Carlson-Detman study, that's what's her motion, and it's two hundred and fifty.
Again, until you determine what the rate is going to be...
I know, but I just...
This doesn't mean much of anything, so it's two hundred and fifty thousand going forward, then, whatever. That is not available for other employee groups.
Mark and Don, I don't want to put you guys in the spot, so I apologize for coming back to this issue, but part of this discussion hinges on this issue about housekeepers, and whether or not the district can effectively recruit and retain part-time people. When I asked that question earlier, I didn't ask it as a leading question, I wasn't looking for a particular answer. When Lisa asked it, we got a different answer. So I want to clarify this kind of once and for all. If we were to go out for part-time employees, four hours a day, for a housekeeping position, which would effectively do the same thing that a Clean Power employee would do, except we'd have two of them doing what one person does now, do you have any idea about whether or not we could effectively recruit and keep those kinds of part-time employees?
Good question. We currently have difficulty filling LTE positions that we use for custodial. I would honestly dread having to do that. Mark spends a great deal amount of time now working on managing the different custodial staffs and working with Clean Power. I can't imagine how amount of time you would have to put in trying to constantly maintain a balanced workforce, trying to find those people.
Okay, just for everybody's edification, LTE is?
Limited-term employee.
Okay, and what does that mean in reality?
It means they work ninety days, and then they're done for the year.
Full-time.
And we use them, yes, and we use them as relief throughout the year. And that was a contractual thing that was determined a long time ago, and we've kept that relationship, or kept that hiring practice, and this last go-around, we just, people are not applying. We don't know why, but we're just not getting people that want to do that kind of work. And that was ten dollars an hour.
And Tom, I have one question for you. On the table, the option, under option, or Table One, the total cost of taking all of our current Clean Power employees and making them district employees, including benefits except for workman's comp, would result in one point one million dollars, correct?
That's if they're paid at the current custodian one start rate.
Correct. And so that figure, one point one, is five hundred and fifty-seven thousand more than what we're currently paying?
Yes.
And if we went to, if the board approved the Carlson-Detman recommendations, they would have to set a starting hourly wage for the custodians, which would likely be equal to or greater than what this is now?
Yeah, the proposed start rate at the Carlson-Detman study is twelve sixty-one. That's why we use that, because we had some basis to have a comparison. If that's the rate that the board chooses, it would increase the budget to fifty-six instead of five hundred and fifty-seven. And then we'd just have to stay in that increase. That is correct. If it's an amount higher, then split the difference, yeah.
Okay. And then, as part of that, you at the very end of your presentation informed the board that the latest legislation regarding the Community Service Fund will have the district have to pick up part, some, most, all, we don't know, what is currently run through that fund, we would have to pick it up as a district, which is a cost over and above this.
Yes, in the ten fund, it would be part, it would have to be included in our budget under the revenue limit.
Okay.
Which means everything else gets pushed aside.
Right, and the greatest amount, the worst-case scenario is nine hundred and two thousand, the worst-case scenario is zero.
Correct.
Okay. When is that legislation going to become promulgated such that it would be effective for its school district?
Takes effect July first of this year. And we have to change our budget in October to reflect that, and for every dollar that we're wrong, we'll be penalized at the end of the year.
Thank you.
Chris?
Would this group be part of a union?
Kim?
The worst case of that nine hundred and two thousand dollars would be that our community can't use our schools. That would be the worst case, because that's basically where that nine hundred and two thousand dollars goes to, technically.
I missed the first part of that, I beg your pardon.
The worst case of spending that nine hundred and two thousand would be our community can't use our schools, because that's where that money, that's why we put it in that fund.
No, no, it's not saying the community can't use the schools, it's saying that whatever expenses that we charge to the community at fund must be documented and must conform to the new administrative rules. The formula that had been used by this district for many years is not in conformity with the administrative rule guidelines that I just received.
Yeah, and I guess you'd have to bring that back, because I've heard a couple different things, the way that is, it's just got to be run a little bit different. But worst case is, is we don't let our community use our schools, because we don't have the money. If we can't afford it, we just don't do it. To me, that would be the worst case. So the other thing is, did you guys have a hard time finding your summer help? The ninety-day limited position?
Summer help is different, because those are college students. I mean, they're all...
Can't get college students to do some of the other jobs?
Not during the school year.
Because?
They're in college.
Yeah, but if you have a college student, you know they don't go to school every day, or all full days.
Michigan State, we're close.
Yeah, I mean, you could.
They're not here.
Yeah, but I mean, I have three kids in college, and they do not go to school Monday through Friday, eight to three, or whatever like that, so, but...
Mark has dealt with that, Mark, can you answer? We've had that situation before.
Yeah, college students, we could get some college students, but a lot of them have night classes, a lot of them aren't available every night. We need them Monday through Friday.
But that's another option, just like our summer help.
It's real difficult, we need them at three o'clock when the other shift ends. They're not always available at that point.
Okay. And the other thing is, if we would approve the Table One at two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, as it stands with those starting rates, and again, that's going to fluctuate, is I do see that we wouldn't be able to possibly hire a couple other positions, possibly two, three administrations, or one superintendent. That's the cost, twenty-five people to two to three to one.
Alex?
I remember, and I was going to bring up that point about the limited-term employment, I remember seeing it was based on the college community, and that wage maybe would appeal to the ones who would stay here. Why wasn't those, why weren't those positions offered at the same rate that we offer Clean Power? The nineteen, or sixteen ninety-eight an hour, that maybe would have attracted a lot of individuals when we're looking to fill those positions, instead of ten dollars an hour?
It's not our policy.
Okay. But why were the college community more so targeted with the limited-term employment, instead of going at a higher wage and trying to target more of the general public?
Because we can't afford that, it's a budgetary issue. They have a limit... We, they have a limited budget to deal with every year. You're talking about making a $6.89 per hour jump?
All I'm saying is, that's why you didn't get the applicants that you were looking for.
We understand. It's a budgetary issue.
Right, but you're stating the fact that no one's interested in this kind of employment at the wage. Well, at $10 an hour, I could see that. But if we created the housekeepers in general, not for just limited-term employment, to be at that 1698 an hour, part-time, I'm sure the door, people will be knocking. And one other thing about this, dual positions, I'm almost sure that these bus drivers who are looking for the extra hours, they would take those jobs.
Yes?
If I may suggest, in the interest of time and moving forward, you folks set the policy. Let us try to administer it and figure out the details of what works. So whatever, your pleasure. You decide what the rates are going to be, you tell us, we'll make it happen. You decide what to do in this motion, and we'll make it happen. If you stick to the policy and to the guidance, let us worry about how to do it.
Lisa?
So are you telling me with these changes with the Fund 80, that we are not going to have the opportunity to adjust our formula to cover our costs that we lose?
No.
So-
I'm not saying that.
Okay. So that is an option. So to imply or to say that, that...
I forget it.
So can I call the question, please?
Yes, you may. I think we are about done anyway.
Okay.
I have a suggestion. We have talked about doing a budget-
Educational financial priorities?
Yep. Workshop and doing it in August. I don't know if it's possible. It would be my thought that this, including this in that, so that we can see, for instance, I mean, I love Proposal 1, too, but it's a lot of money, and what will we have to give in order to take that on? And if we can look at the big picture all at once and maybe make some of those decisions as a big picture, I'm wondering if the board agrees, maybe, oops, sorry, looking at this, when we have that information in front of us, thank you, Jeff, kind of dealing with what we're dealing with right now, go forward, this contract's through the end of July, but when we look at this in August, saying, okay, so here's this amount of money. If we're going to take this on, where are we going to cut it? That kind of thing. What do you think of that instead of making the decision right now?
Thank you.
I would agree.
Yeah. Yep, Jeff?
The rates are set by the state. As far as the custodial, you can get that number from our agent. If we add those people to our staff.
Yeah.
The workers' comp.
The worker comp. And bring it back at that time, too.
I guess I would like to see that number as well.
That's in our formula.
The rates are set by a formula. There's not a set rate. You take a factors, you go through a formula calculation, and a lot of it is dependent, it's very much dependent on claims. We, because we've had some cost dropout, we've, I think it was $200,000, our premium went down in workers' comp this year because some of the claims dropped. I may be wrong on the dollar amount, but-
We gave that report last board meeting.
Yeah, I just didn't remember precisely what that number was, but, so, the formula calculation is prescribed in law. Jeff is precisely correct. The impact is dependent on claims, entirely on claims, so.
If you base it on the current factor, at least that's a number.
Yep, yes.
They can estimate it.
Yes.
Yeah, we have a rate that has calculated,
Yes.
And we have to multiply that times the number of people to get a premium increase, correct?
Actually, that total compensation rate has that factored in. There's, yeah, that's in there.
Well, good, because I agree, it should be there. Thank you, Don.
Angel, on your recommendation, are you saying, we talked about the, looking at that big picture after, the budgetary in that, after the Consolidated Task Force came forward, because what we were going to do is take a look at that and then talk about our priorities, is how I remember it. Am I incorrect?
We, I feel like we need to look at the priorities before all of the studies are complete, because we have to start deciding what we're going to do with, like, we can't vote yes or no on Carlson-Detman or the Consolidated Task Force without kind of having at least a general idea of where we're going to prioritize, where we're going to spend money. So, yes and no?
Yeah, but if they're coming forward with some recommendations and that, and we look at, then we look at the big picture of where do we want to go? Because you know, if they come, you know, 912, example, high school, you're going to have to probably have a referendum. After you look at that picture, whether we want to go for anything in the picture or not, wouldn't that be, wouldn't you have more information about what do we want, how do we want to prioritize what we spend? I thought, I thought that's what we said, but maybe-
Can I, can I?
Yes, you may.
Here's what the discussion was. It was that the Consolidated Task Force, when it comes forward with its recommendations, will have a large impact on the future of the district as much as 15 years out, depending on what the board selects to do. Number two is, we know what the costs will be in half percentage, quarter percentage, whatever it is increments the board would like, giving employee, negotiating with the unions and giving other employee wages. That's a big-ticket item, but it's part of the consideration. Number three is that we have goals and objectives which we're working on, which also have dollars attached to them, which has to be part of that discussion. And then we have begun administratively to develop a master list of educational and financial priority options for the board to consider. So we're waiting on the Consolidated Task Force, but we're also waiting for the board to decide on what it wants to do with the Carlson-Detman situation, which I know, I think as Angel just pointed out, the board doesn't want to make a decision about that until it sees the whole picture. So we won't have that information until sometime in August, depending on the CTF's report. My question is, will Clean Power extend that contract another month in order to allow the board to get all of the information and then have this workshop?
And that's what I was, why I was asking, part of it is July, the end of July is part of that.
I tend to remember that the agreement was, we would just continue 30-day increment indefinitely.
I see a hand on the side? Yep.
There's, from my perspective, a very much a difference with what we're talking about here. What Angel is talking about is our priorities for our operations and our funding of how we want to set our priorities with the Consolidated Task Force. Like you said, that's referendum stuff. That's, that's different than these issues that need to be settled first. So Angel, I think that's a very good idea. I think we need to do just what you suggested.
My question, my question was simply procedural for our parliamentary, and we have a motion on the floor right now to approve one of these options. I would like to, but I'm not, you need to tell me if I can do this. I'd like to make a motion to just table this or adjourn this for-
I need to remove the, I'll remove my second. And the first was?
Kim?
Yep, I'll remove it. As long as we know what's going to come back within 60 days.
Right, right. And if that's, if that's the motion, I would make that, that we readdress this in 30 to 60 days after we've had about an opportunity to look at all of the other large expenses that we're going to be addressing.
I'll second that.
30 or 60?
30 to 60.
You want a specific?
Well, I don't know when all of the other things, I mean, I think that-
We can only be specific if we agree right now on the date of a workshop. I'm sorry, yes, Tom?
We do have the representative from Clean Power here. We've signed a contract through July. If you want us to extend that to August, we would need to have Clean Power agree to that. They're here, I think we should ask them if they're willing to do so.
They already did.
Our minutes will show that we did.
Yes, it's on tape.
She verbally said-
It was on a month-to-month basis, I think.
On a month-to-month basis.
Through the end of the contract.
And that-
No, no, it wasn't.
Folks, all I'm saying is, let's clarify it. Let's clarify it so that we don't have any confusion. Are you willing to let us extend this on a month-to-month basis, through, whatever?
The people that we're talking about here are, have jobs that support their families, so I would ask to not postpone this any further than we have to, because after the last four board meetings, they have asked us directly if they still have a job or not. And there's, there's people on both sides of this that are fighting for their lives and their jobs and their livelihoods. So we would offer another 30-day extension through August, but, you know, we've got people that were hoping to leave us because of the decision that's been postponed so many times here. So we're hoping that we can make a decision. And again, I would throw out, it's a 30-day cancellation clause in this contract. You've got cable contracts that go longer than that. I've got mosquito bites that last longer than this. I mean, you could cancel us in 30 days, but at least give us the ability to tell our people that we were able to go forward until you make a decision, because it has been so long since the beginning of this discussion, and I feel now it'll be a while till it ends. That's what I would ask. We can give you August and a 30-day extension, but, you know, we've got commitments to our employees, too, to tell them about the security of their jobs.
So you're willing to maintain the contract as it is through August 30th? Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What would the board like to see before, when this thing comes back? Because there has not been consensus on the board's part, at least from my perspective, about what it is you would like to see. So if we could get that.
Yep, but I'm not going to do that this second, because we have a lot to do. So, but I totally am with you. We need to decide exactly what we're going to do on that. Yes.
Tom, will we have clarification on this Fund 80 issue? And if so, when?
I heard the first part of that, and then your voice dropped off. Will we have clarification on Fund 80?
You said it's effective July 1. Will we have that interpretation in the next 30 to 60 days?
30 days, no. The law is in effect, but the law required DPI to write an administrative rule. It's in draft form at this point. So the law goes into effect July 1. So it affects this coming school year. And we don't have the final decision yet in what that rule is. We have a draft rule, and the way we've been calculating that $902,000 distribution of our expenses will not pass muster on the new rule as it's drafted. What we have to do is review the process, figure out how we go about identifying our costs that are related to the use of our facilities by the community, so that we can more accurately document a dollar cost connected to the activity that takes place. We haven't discussed that even internally. I just talked to Don about it today. So we don't know the mechanics administratively, how we'll be able to accomplish that, so it's all pretty much up in the air at this point.
Okay, do they have a deadline on when they're going to come out with that?
They do not have a deadline that they'll come out with it, except that they would have to have it before the end of the school year, because if we don't comply with the requirement by the end of the school year, any district out of compliance gets penalized. So I guess there is a deadline, that'd be June 30th of next year.
Okay, so let me ask the board, can we do, can we agree to do, probably even late July, if not early August, even if it's a phase one of this conversation? We need to kind of decide as a board generally where our priorities lie, so that we can start taking steps. I mean, I don't know that we can come up with black and whites on a lot of things, but I think we need to at least get a, get a majority of where we're going. So if, even if we do it as a phase one, is that all right to start setting that up? And then we can do something a little more concrete, late August, early September, when we have, I think it's going to take more than one workshop is what I'm trying to say. It's because I think we want to have conversations about this. You know, the weight of this versus this and that versus that. What do we think? Or should we use one of our fourth meetings?
I would suggest using one of our fourth meetings, because just like the gentleman said from Clean Power, you know, with working at a position where you know your position was, your department was closing, you just didn't have a deadline to start looking. I mean, I feel sorry for these people. They are from our community regardless, or I guess regardless where they live. We need to make a decision soon, and so I think we need to start getting on this way before August.
So we can use our fourth meeting in July? Okay, Trish won't be here, does anybody else going to be gone or know that they would be gone?
What's the date?
Uh, yeah. 28th. I'll be gone but can drive back for it. I'll just be a couple hours away.
I thought we already had a meeting set up for that date.
Did, is the Clean, and I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, and I apologize. Jeff, thanks, Jeff, I appreciate it, sorry. Our contract, your, our-
Come up to the podium?
Yes, please.
Can you come up to the podium?
Can you come up, Jeff? Thank you. Back, back in April, the board voted to extend the Clean Power contract in 30-day intervals. It did not indicate dates. I just looked at the minutes, which were approved. Our contract with you extends through July 31st, or was it over earlier?
It was extended an additional 30 days through July 31st. So technically, it ended on the June, at the end of June.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Week from today.
Trish, are you unavailable the 3rd Monday of July also? For your regular?
I'll, I'll make it work if that's when you want to do it. I just, I'm on vacation the 28th.
Does the 3rd Monday of July work for everyone else? The 21st, yep.
Yes.
Jeff?
Is that a, that's not the financial priority workshop, is it?
It's an initial discussion. It's not an actual workshop pulled together. It's, we need to have a conversation.
Do you have a workshop on the board, for the board, on the 28th?
Yes, that's how we have it scheduled.
Right, but Trish can't be here?
No, that's 1, 2, 3, that's the 4th. You're gone then, you're gone the 3rd and the 4th?
Yeah, but I'll, I'll be here on the 21st, if I have to be here on the 21st. It's just, I'm going to be in northern Minnesota on the 28th. When we talked about those dates, I told everybody then, it's been scheduled for six months.
So all I'm saying is, let's switch to the 21st instead of the 28th.
Oh, instead?
Yes.
Don't you want to meet everybody?
Pretty much no.
So in preparation for that meeting, what information is it that the board will need?
I will get that to you. And you guys can all get that to Amy. So if you have specific ideas of what you'd like addressed or that sort of thing, please send it to Amy as soon as you think of it, so that we can get that to administration. And just, you know, I'm not expecting this to be the full workshop that we talked about. We're talking about a conversation to get this going, so that we have an idea, even just basically out of respect for the Clean Power employees, so we can start making some decisions. Okay. This is now done. Anyone have any further questions regarding this?
I still have a motion on the table for putting this off, deciding, deciding this contract within 60 days. Do we need to vote on that, or do I need, should I withdraw that?
That's up to you. Did you want to withdraw it?
Well, quite frankly, I think we need to do it. I mean, I think that, I think we need to make a decision on this.
What can you?
I mean, that was simply, it was just to address our custodial issues within 60 days.
So our August 11th meeting would be within 60 days? Is that a?
Sounds like it.
Does everyone agree to that? I mean, obviously, we'll take a vote on it.
Are you stating coming to a conclusion? Like deciding what we're going to do?
Yeah, I mean, I think we have to.
Is that what your original motion was? Because I didn't hear that.
Maybe you can read back. No?
Trish, before you do that, though, we're not going to have the Consolidated Task Force report, I don't think, by-
I, I'm saying, we need to make a decision about our custodians.
What I heard the board say was, and I, I'm sorry if I'm wrong, but I'm really trying to understand what the board wants as a group, and it's very difficult. Do you want to have information, holistic information, about the district's educational financial priorities while you make this decision?
I'm not going to speak for the board. What I said was that I think that we need to have our larger financial issues for next year's budget laid out together, so that we can make a, have a global understanding of our finances, as opposed to simply just going along saying, okay, here's $500,000, here's $90,000, here's, I mean, since we've been on the board, I've made like four decisions already on big chunks of money, and I'm uncomfortable spending money without having the global picture. We haven't talked to our teachers yet. Our teachers need a raise. We need to address that. And I'm quite frankly, very concerned about that, that we've not addressed that. And that's coming up here with the next presentation from Mr. Owens, and that's why I'm saying we need to...
I'm agreeing with you. What I'm asking, I agree with you. What I'm asking is, is that if the Consolidated Task Force recommendations...
I think...
Is going to be a part of that, it may not be ready by August the 11th. That's what I'm trying to say.
For me, I agree with Lisa. The Consolidated Task Force is vision of the next 10 years. What we're talking about is next year's budget, just really black and white, not this bigger goal of what we're gonna be doing. Next year's budget needs to be addressed, and along with that is our teachers. We've got to address that, and we've got to address that very soon. But I'm uncomfortable saying, we're gonna spend $500,000 without knowing what the other pieces are.
And I'm not disagreeing with you. I agree with you. Do any, Tom, as we sit here today, do any of the CTF recommendations say that we should implement something in '14, '15, which would require expenditure of dollars?
Not that I recall. I would agree with Lisa that the Consolidated Task Force is really dealing with issues that would be potentially referendum-type issues. And I believe Patricia's talking specifically about the budget. This is really, the budget's dictated basically by the state through the revenue limit, so it's not a question of how much in total budget's gonna be. That's pretty well clearly defined. The question is, what do we do with the money within the budget? So it's, we're gonna be struggling over what to do with the scraps within the budget. That's the pressure. So, for example, when I said 250, 500,000, whatever, that's inside the budget limits, and we're gonna have to figure out what we do or don't do to make up that amount of money, if you choose to do that. The same with the amount of money that's gonna have to come out of the 80 fund and now fit into the 10 fund, whatever that amount is going to be. That now is going to consume what our allocation is, and that's gonna be less money that we have available to pay teachers, to pay custodians, and whatever. So we're looking at somewhere between 250, 550, plus up to the worst-case scenario, 900,000, that all of a sudden I was gonna have to fit into the 10 fund that wasn't there before. And then on top of that, come up with how do we pay people more money? And that's all coming out of the same bucket of money. We don't get extra money, we don't get more money.
I understand that.
Okay.
Yep. Okay. What do you want to do about your motion? Do you want to leave it as is? Or would you like to make it? I don't think Amy got it down exactly. Did you?
I have to address custodial issues within 60 days. That's it.
Okay. And does it have a second?
It does not.
Oh.
I did second it.
Lisa has a second? Okay.
I would just like one quick comment.
Yep.
I've noticed that a lot of us feel very strongly, one way or the other, if we're listening to the other information. I'm asking every board member, including myself, to please come to the decision we do and have that discussion with an open mind, not saying, no matter what you say to me, I believe this is the right thing, and I'm not gonna consider it. It's really important that we do that, because there are people waiting to find out about their job, and our schools are gonna need those people there. So I think we need to be open to whatever decisions that we all decide, and then go from there. I'd appreciate it.
I feel the same way, Chris.
Because I think we have a lot of ideas.
And also, the other topic that'll be coming up tonight about the superintendent search. I hope that same thing, the open mindedness to explore new ideas.
Okay. Can we please do a roll call vote on Tricia's motion, which is to have the custodial issue resolved within 60 days? The obvious plan is to do it August 11th, where we already have a regularly scheduled board meeting.
The amended?
It's not amended.
She didn't put a date in there. She was just ad libbing that.
I just said that, for people's information. We're not gonna meet 60 days from now, I hope. We're gonna meet...
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonowski?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Motion carries 8 to 0.
Okay. And we are now on to the budget.
And for clarification, for the record, you have authorized me then to sign a 30-day extension with the gentleman from Clean Power to take us through the end of August. Is that correct?
With our thanks.
Okay. I just want to make sure. Thank you for that offer, by the way, Clean Power. Okay. Progress of the current budget, 1314. It's been an interesting process for this particular budget year. We had a number of things occur in the bigger scope of things, concentrating on the general fund, which is really the single biggest thing and our main effort. We did receive a little bit more in our local sources than we expected, and this was brought about because, excuse me, we were short some, 110,000, because of a difference in student fees, gifts, and rental income associated. Another big activity that took place is in the state sources, excuse me, the federal sources. We had a net swing of about $722,000, and that was brought about by two main things. We did receive unexpectedly a windfall of a million and a half dollars from Medicaid. We will likely not see anything like this again in the future. These were back claims from a funding issue that went back a few years, and that's been cleaned up. So that generated some additional funds. And we were short of the federal funds in Title 1, 2, and 3. They did provide us some less income, so it netted out at 722,000. And we did have some additional revenue generated, our one-time windfall from a legal settlement with Microsoft, which allowed us to receive $425,000 this year. And we did get 30,000 more than expected insurance dividends. So we netted just slightly over a million more than what was expected in revenue this year than budgeted. Again, this is a result of windfalls and unexpected things. No one has a crystal ball that actually works, so these things can happen. Now, in the expenditure side, we were under budget 3.4 million. Significant result to this is about 2.8 million in salaries and fringes, because we've not settled our labor contracts, et cetera. So that's a major contributor to that dollar amount, clearly. And another factor at work there is, we, of course, froze the corresponding amount of money in the title programs that were shorted by the federal government, 775,000. So we did not expend 775,000 in salaries and benefits related to the income we didn't get in the projects. So there's a revenue and expenditure side. So we didn't get 775 in income, and conversely, we did not expend 775 on the expenditure side of that transaction. And then with respect to non-capital equipment, we were able to secure the textbooks, et cetera, that we needed without consuming any of the 440,000. So that remains available. That was part of the fund balance application that you approved. And also, the 525,000 for, that you set aside for the Life Skills Center, obviously has not been spent yet, so that still is in abeyance, et cetera. When you combine all of those and offset, it comes up to 5.6 million, but as I went through the explanation here, those are all explained in large chunks. On the backside, we just kind of gave you a little report of what happened with some of the things that you had set aside in the assigned fund balance. The 440 for textbooks was unexpended. On the technology budget support position, we consumed that. It's estimated there'll be about $200 left out of that. The technology budget, you set aside 150 to be used. That was used up. Again, I talked about the Life Skills Center. That balance is still available. External coaches for RTI and PBIS, you set aside 56,500. That's been consumed. School-based improvement plans. At this time of this memo, we had 15,000. Some of that is being expended. We don't have a final figure yet, and that amount has been put into our budget per year. Actually, last board meeting. And then we had the Pover Whiting Edition, which I should be getting the final bill any day now. They, I think they had a sidewalk to put in, and that was pretty much it. They'll be done with that project now. Then we have the, some staffing issues, some money that we've already talked about in the other case, that is set aside from fund balance. And at an upcoming board meeting, perhaps in August or September or thereabouts, we'll talk about setting aside monies in assigned fund balance for the projects that you would like to designate for that purpose, and that's part of the workshop or part of some future board meeting coming up. So that would conclude my report of the progress of the budget. I do not expect numbers like this again this coming year, clearly. So you want me to go on, Ms. Faxon, or...
No. I'm assuming people have questions about the budget. Give me just a general nod, because what I'm gonna do is take a break if we're gonna have a lengthy discussion. So, okay. What we're gonna do, I apologize, Tom, we're gonna take a five-minute break, so we will reconvene at 3 minutes until 9:00. Okay. We just had a presentation by Tom, and so we will move into board questions about the budget for Tom.
Are we in 9A3 or 9A4?
4.
4, okay.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
We just finished 9A3.
Yes.
9A4?
Um, no, no, well, are...
Was there any question?
How attached are they? We didn't have questions on 9A3 yet.
Right.
Okay. Correct? Does anyone have questions for 9A3? Okay. Then 9A4, which is the preliminary budget for 2014-15. This is an action item.
Okay.
Excuse me. Madam President, I need to recuse myself. If you could please make notes in the minutes.
Okay. The preliminary budget. Let me begin by clarifying the preliminary budget. Here's, as it says in the memo, wrong. It contains numbers that will change, absolutely, and all of the major numbers are going to change. So what you see here is just that, it's a preliminary. The purpose mostly for the preliminary budget is to get your approval, so that it allows us to pay the bills between July 1st and when you set the actual formal budget in the end of October, because we have to meet payroll, we have to pay the light bills and all the other things. So that's the basic purpose of a preliminary budget, and that is because so many things are in the air. We do not know what our Third Friday count will be, how that will affect our three-year average, rolling average. We will not, we won't know that until late September. Third Friday count, and then it takes a few days, a week after that, to get the numbers. October 1st is when we get the certification of equalized values for the district, that we need that in order to calculate the levy rate, as well as the computer aid, the $900,000 for computer aid. And we do not know the amount of state aid until the 15th of October. So these numbers are wrong. They just give you a very ballpark, general idea of where we are at this point. Several of the items in here, you'll see zeros where there were amounts before, and as it mentioned in the memo, this is a result of the fact that we do not have those numbers because they involve projects, federal or state projects, and those either haven't been approved by the state or federal government yet, or they were not yet entered at the time that the cutoff was made to provide you with this data. But looking at it as a whole, we have gross expenditure set up for all funds at 96.5 million. I won't read the precise dollar amount. It's printed there. And for revenue at 92,815,000. I would point out, for some of you that may not realize, there's a, in the 30 funds of debt service, we're applying some of the fund balance, because in another year or two, and Bill can tell you exactly when that is, but in another year or two, we will be debt-free, except for the 38 fund. But in the regular referendum debt, that will retire, so we're applying that fund balance towards it, and that's why you see the decrease. Also, there's a decrease because our amounts are dropping, and we have to cover two fiscal years with some payments, payments, rather, that are in this upcoming fiscal year and the next fiscal year, in order to get the money in time to make the payments. So that's why you see a decrease in the fund balance there. Let's see. Most of the other changes are all due to the fact that the federal projects aren't included. I should point out one item you might have a question on, and that's in revenue under... Where did it go? Here, no. It was 400,000. Is that in the 900s, Bill?
70s.
Let me see. Here, you see, on the 780s, 790s. On the back page of the general fund, this would be in source, 780 and 790, under federal sources. The last, the first two years showing in this report, which would be, you audited 2012, 13, and the budgeted 1314, you saw amounts respectively of 404,000 and 316,000. Those were the last amounts associated with the PEP grant. And now you have the 400,000, which is for a different entity altogether, and I, just, it's out of my head. What was that again?
Forward Health, just for the Medicaid cost report, part of it.
It's a cost report associated with Medicaid, yeah. That just went right out of my head, so... Let's see. You have also included in the packet, the worksheet, the revenue limit worksheet for 1415. This is a draft, but it's interesting to note a number of things. For those new on the board...
Can you pause one second, please?
Yeah.
Trish has a question, based on what you said.
Back on 780 and 790, so the federal revenue through state has $400,000 in it for the coming year, but the other two years don't have anything, well, 30.
Correct.
And then below it, then are those numbers that you gave, the 404 and the 315, but zero. Is that... Did you just comment on that 400,000? Just explain that one more time for me.
The Medicaid one, on line 780?
780. That's the Medicaid dollars? Is that right?
Right.
Okay.
In January of this year, DPI determined that payments that are received for prior years could no longer go to Fund 27. They had to go to Fund 10 instead.
Okay.
And that was when we received the first million dollars, which was from like 2005, 2006 settlement. And they're just trying to clean up the back year and said, okay, now we're done.
Okay.
But we also, we file an annual cost report with them. Actually, I filed quarterly and then annual. The settlements for those come in the following year. Well, it tends to make the maintenance of effort reporting for Fund 27 really difficult. So they said, we're taking those out because they're for a different year. So they said, from that point, from this point forward, we have to put in Fund 10. That's why there was a huge, in the previous discussion, 9A3, we had a, like a million and a half dollars we received in 1314, which has to do with this Medicaid reporting.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. That was my only question.
The other document in there, that multicolored one, if you have a colored one, looks like this. That's a revenue limit worksheet. It's a draft for this preliminary. And for the new board members, and the edification of the existing, or the older board members, the left half of this sheet is more or less a work area to calculate things. The upper-left side of the sheet shows what last year's revenue limit information is, and it's the start point of calculating our revenue limit. In the middle of the left-hand side is the area where you calculate the three-year rolling averages. And you'll notice that for 2014, we're within one student between, we're not really estimating any particular number. It's basically flat, because we don't know what Third Friday's gonna be, so we're not guessing at a number. Below that is a... not guessing at a number. Below that is a declining enrollment exemption. If our three-year average, when you compare line two and line six, the 7370 and the 7370, if we actually in line six declined, we would be able to recapture some authority from that. Then there's state aid for computers, 903,000. That number changes as soon as you change your, your calculations of your revenue limit, or you change your students, or you change your equalized value, that, that number changes, because it's part of a formula. How that came about is when they established the revenue limits to begin with, which control the amount of money we can levy by subtracting the amount of state aid we get from our limit, levy limit. They got petitioned basically by businesses throughout the state, through manufacturers, commerce. They were complaining about, they wanted to be able to deduct the business computers from their inventory for tax purposes, and the legislature did allow that. So when we figure out the, the TIF out, it, it pulls out the computers, but then to make us whole, they created a computer tax, aid rather, and they just replaced that. So they took from one hand out our state aid, and they turned around and gave it to us right back and called it computer aid. So, we didn't lose anything, but we have to record it in a different way, and there's a formula now to calculate it. So that's what that is. And the very bottom left-hand side is data where we look at the, you see the exempt computer property valuation, a little over 100 million. And then you see the TIF out, which is just under 3.8 million, and then TIF out value plus computers, 3.8. These, these are our values, because when we calculate what we can levy, it's always TIF out. Then, on the right-hand side, this is where the calculations begin. In the upper part, you have your base revenue limit, you divide it by the base membership, and you come up with the amount. And then the state tells us in 4A, how much it's going to give us extra. In this case, they're talking about $75 a student more. That's how much more money we're going to get per student. And you multiply that out, you get a total, and it comes, in this example, 68.2 million. Then there are some recurring exemptions. There's a carryover of 9145. This is the amount of a student from last year. What happened is we just received, was it in the last two to three weeks or four weeks?
Last two weeks.
Last two weeks. We received notification from the state, when they finalized the 13-14 revenue limit worksheet, they adjusted our pupil count by one student. So as a result, we under-leveied by one student. And so, then we carry that forward, and we're able to pick that up. Then there's a transfer of services, $64,000. This is when students come to us, and we have increased costs of services that were being provided by some other governmental entity, now we have to provide it. And I can tell you that, that number's going up. It should be, the last information I got is probably going to be closer to 250,000, so that's going up. And that will increase our revenue limit. Now, there's a thing down in 10C, energy efficiency exemption. We have to add, now this is under non-recurring. Each year, we have to add this, whatever our principal and interest is. And this happens to just cover the interest at this point, 148.5. I, I mentioned this back in November. If we under-levee, it comes first out of this amount. It's actually a penalty. So, in this example, it doesn't hurt us now, because this is, upcoming year is the first year. But in that example, where all of a sudden we find out that, in the audit, that there's an adjustment of one student, next year, that 9145, we don't get that back. It comes out of that 148.5. So, that comes out of the 10 fund, and we have to make that up. We don't get that authority. So, we're impacted by that for, for one year, and then, then we get it back the next year. But for that year, we would lose that 9145. Then what happens is you get down to line 11, and you see the total revenue limit there, the 68,423,179. Then we subtract from that the general state aid. You see 35.3 million. That's an estimate at this point. We don't know what it's really going to be. That's what we're waiting for, for October 15th. When we get that on October 15th, then that creates, on line 12, the allowable revenue limit for tax purposes. And that's, then if you follow down, you can see how you apply the general fund levy, and you apply the non-referendum debt, and then the referendum debts that fall through. And there you see community at 902,000. Well, in October, I fully expect that number to be different. To what it will be, I don't know. But, in worst-case scenario, it would be zero there. And then we'd have to figure out how to fund that out of our existing 10 fund, without any additional monies. But anyway, they fall through there, and then you come up with your proposed levy amount. They adjust out the computer aid, and then you're left with a 2014 all-fund levy, a $34,034,333 in this example. And then by applying that equalized value, you come up with a levy rate. Now, I created a, a tax levy sheet that I think is much easier to follow through. If you turn the page, it looks like this. Just a table. It shows all funds. It's much easier to follow. I think it's summarized there for you. It shows the total of expenditures. It shows the revenue, which is made up of the revenue plus the tax levy. And it comes up with a levy of 34.9, and subtract out the 903 in computer aid, and you see the 34,34333, same as you saw at the bottom of the revenue limit page. And then you see the comparison of the two levies, one year to the next. This is an increase of 452,000, which is a 1.35% increase. And then you see the equalized valuation of 13-14 and the estimated one for 14-15. They're identical, because we have no idea how it's going to change. And then the two levy rates, it's an increase of 12 cents or 1.35%. These numbers obviously will change. The levy will change. The computer aid will change. Equalized value will change, and the rate will change. So all of these things are in flux. But that's the way it goes in this business. On the backside of that page, I have provided you the use of the revenue limit authority since 2006-7 school year for your edification. In some of the later years out, all the way through 2009, you had some authority that was granted to you on a non-recurring basis for referendum, which you did not use, as much as 3.3 million. And of course, that was non-recurring, so that authority was lost after the time period. And then, there was a minor adjustment in one year of 21,000. In 2011-12, 12-13, we met what the revenue limit was exactly. We had no adjustments in the audit. And then, in 13-14, we were under-leveied by that one student, 91,45, which was carried forward. So, that's where we are. And subject to your questions.
Questions?
Yeah, go ahead. What exactly is, I guess, let me start off with a couple observations, a couple questions as far as just operational-wise, and then specific questions about the budget themselves. This is a $100 million budget. For us to get it on a Friday afternoon and have to talk about it on Monday, and it's over 500 pages, this is something I talked about months and months ago, that I would like to see earlier and sooner, so that we have time. I'm not spending Saturday and Sunday looking over a budget, and I have weeks to look at it. You have six months to prepare this budget. It needs to come to this board in a timely fashion, and in a fashion that we asked for. Just an observation, because it was very challenging, it was very discombobulated, I guess is the word I'm looking at, because I get emails, bits here, bits here, and then this bit, and then trying to match them all up. It was not a cohesive budget. And I would like to see us do better as far as that goes. Just an observation. Second is, as far as if we approve this budget tonight, are we approving specific capital projects that are buried within this budget?
Nothing that you haven't already approved, no.
Okay.
If, if you've approved allocations to each school, each department. If, if the superintendent's office chose to spend 20,000 on a piece of capital equipment, that's his prerogative. If Don Keck does with buildings and grounds, that's part of his allocation. That was what you approved back in December. But there's no other specific, the only other building project I'm aware of was already approved, which is the sprinkler system at Plover Whiting. It has not been completed. They have to done over the summer, so it's been started. But there's no other capital project I'm aware of.
Okay. Now, the salaries and benefits were given to you in, what was it?
March.
March?
No. They were given in April.
April.
The rest of the budget was in March. If you go back and compare those two reports-
Pretty much the same.
-with what you got Friday, 99% of those accounts have not changed. The only ones that have changed is those associated with a federal or state grant.
Okay.
That Linda Gnerlik was in the process of entering, and when I told her, said she had to stop. And I said, I have to have a cutoff point so I could actually do the report.
Sure.
And then once I had the report printed, I said, okay, now you can keep, start going again. But, you know, the, the reports, you've had the accounts since March and April. They haven't changed.
Okay. There's 3.3 million in capital projects in this budget. What are those?
That could be in any-
Is that, it's just, I mean, any department, I mean, everything from a roof to-
I'd have to call every administrator in here to answer that question, because we're decentralized. We approve the budget's amounts to each building and each department, and it's their responsibility to budget this.
No, wait, wait. What, what account are you looking at?
Um, I think it was 49?
That's, that's the electrical project?
Okay.
Efficiency, that's Fund 40, Fund 49.
I thought you were talking about general fund.
No. Whatever is in Fund 10, you're not going to see, because it's, this is by function.
Okay, so that was the, okay.
That's, that's what, based on their original draw sheet that they gave us in December, this is the amount that was expected to be spent sometime after June 30th. I'm not sure how much is going to be spent by the end of next week, or by, by June 30th, so I had to guess at that point.
Okay. My next question, personal services. I see that throughout the budget. What is that?
Are you looking at a specific fund, or just?
Uh, Fund 10. 101, 310, 1100, 11,000, zero. You see it show up in HR.
110,000?
No, it's, it's called personal services. And I'm just, what is that?
What's the object number?
It's Fund 10, 101, 310.
310, okay. Go ahead.
101 is Plover Whiting School.
Okay.
What-
It's 310. It keeps showing up as 310.
They're hiring somebody else that's not an employee of the district. What's probably in there actually is teachers on call. Those are not our employees.
Okay.
So they're considered 310.
Okay.
If you have 310s in, under the board, it's probably the audit or the attorneys. Those are, those are, those are personal service, well, it'd be location 895.
Wouldn't be attorneys at the school.
No, but I'm saying it'd be location 895. But if you're looking at, 310 is, anytime we hire someone to do a personal service, that's not an employee, it has to show up as a, as an object 300.
Except contractors, and it's 324 under maintenance. For the two new board members there, on the, on the website, district website and the business office, there are a number of tutorials that explain these numbering systems that have been up there for a few years. You can look at those, and it'll tell you what the 10 means, what the 310 means, what the 101 means. 110,000, it explains all of that, how to read those numbers. So if you want to look at those, that, that'll help you a lot. It also talks about the revenue limit worksheet and some of the things we covered today.
Jeff, can I just interrupt, because I have three of those personal services, basically too, and I have the forms right here. I mean, there's one under HR, if you don't mind.
That's fine.
HR, there's one under business service, and then there's one under legal. I mean, we're talking about 600,000, 32,000, and 95,000. If, if I'm reading the same thing you-
600,000, that's teachers on call.
Okay, in HR, teachers on call, okay.
We budget, we budget for teachers on call is a lump sum in HR, because I don't know where they're going to be used. That's why-
Okay.
-if you actually compare the budget with actual, the schools show no budget, but they show the actual expense, because we actually charge it to whatever school used, had the teachers, or the subs.
Okay.
The only way I can, I can do it that makes any sense is to say, I'll budget one lump sum, and we just charge it to HR.
Okay. And how about the one in business services, our director of business?
The business service one, what I did was I attempted to cut our budget as much as I could. I said, whatever I had left over, I put in there as a holding point. But I'm planning minimal of everything, and we'll see what we need to do transfers for. I figured, rather than trying to maximize the other ones, I said, well, just, if I think, if everything goes perfect, we could, that's how much we could save.
Okay.
But I don't, we'll actually have some expenses, but we'll save some portion of that.
And then the legal fees, that's just legal fees?
That's under the board. Right, that's a-
Okay. You are correct. Under the Board of Education, so that's what's-
You've got more than one, you've got some up here.
Oh, 500.
You've got another 310 up here.
I missed a couple of them.
Oh, yes.
Good. Thank you. Sorry about that, Jeff.
That's fine.
Okay. You know, this is just a philosophical mine. Our budget has, we budget a lot for food, for different things, whether it's here at Bliss, or at the school level, Fund 27, whatever the case may be. My personal opinion, let everybody buy their own lunch. We don't have an obligation to provide them lunch. And I would really like to see us, as a budget, pretty, you know, provide them with water and a cup of coffee if they're coming to interview. We don't have to feed them. I just, my concern is, the amount of money that we spend as a district, and we have a $100 million budget, a large portion of that, I shouldn't say a large portion, because it is a large budget, there is a lot of money that potentially could go to fund a teacher position, as opposed to buying them Subway lunch because they had to work late. Just, just a comment as far as that goes. I don't know if the rest of the board agrees with that, or doesn't agree with that.
I agree with you, Jeff.
Teacher or Subway?
Teacher or Subway. Some, some of those under, under HR, they have a group of people. Some are teachers, some are administrators, that are sitting here during, doing interviews, and they work through the lunch hours, what they're doing. So they said, rather than having you go out to get something to eat, they bring in subs. I mean, it's, it's not all of it, but that's-
Right. Or just schedule the work, go to lunch.
Well-
We want you to get out, blow off steam, go have some lunch. It's just a different philosophy. As far as we had entailed the service of a PR firm, I don't know, it was like $23,000 a year that we, I couldn't find that in this budget. I don't know where it is.
It's either location 890 or 895. I don't recall if it was put into the board, if it was put under the superintendent's budget.
And I didn't see it under the superintendent's budget.
It should be a 310 object code, because it is a personal service. That'd be for the Donovan Group.
Right.
I don't know if it was, I believe it's, there's something else in the same account there are, that were combined. I don't-
There might be, you don't necessarily, you're not going to have one entry for every single item. If it's the same account number, you're going to have several items fall within the same account number. Could be one, it could be one item, it could be 1,000 items. We don't know.
Yeah, I think we have, that group plus Carlson-Datman were in the same account.
Okay. Again, my own personal opinion, we combine that position for the superintendent. His secretary is that slash PR. Why are we paying an additional $23,000 to something that we have somebody already designated to? I just, again, I know this is the prelim budget. It's something that needs to be out of that budget, because I don't want to see it being spent anymore.
I can provide some rationale, but the board certainly can direct administration to do what it wants to do. to do what it wants to do. We have a fairly extensive communications plan that we've been implementing. It does require the work of an outside consultant who is not given an annual salary or contract. He bills us as he works for us. And we've done quite a bit with a new website, done quite a bit with profiles of each of the individual schools in the district, and we've done quite a bit with social media, which has involved Brian and Sarah and Joe Donovan. As that communications plan becomes more fully implemented, his services will be less and less needed. That was the whole goal. So we have a halftime person for PR, but that doesn't cover the entire needs of the district. So that, in my opinion, is needed, but as I said, it'll drop off as the communications plan is implemented.
Are you done, Jeff?
For now, yep.
Yep. Kim, do you have questions?
Yep. These are going to be very basic questions, and maybe you can explain... Let's start with the Board of Education apparel. What do we use that for?
For new teachers and at the beginning of the year. We have approximately anywhere from 30 to 50 new teachers every year, and we give them a shirt with a logo on it.
Are they required to wear it?
We ask them to wear it on the first, that employee kickoff day, and then they wear it throughout the year, I'm sure.
Okay. Might be bouncing around here a little bit. The new administrator that we did, we didn't put her actual salary in there? Is that just wasn't adjusted? I don't think that's her new salary that we have in the budget. Is that for our new person?
No. Whatever is in the budget is based on who was here March 19th-
Okay.
-or the position. So for the HR position, whatever Keith's salary was at at that point and whatever his benefits were.
Okay. So it wasn't adjusted for the new position coming in? Okay. Okay. One more off.
Those are run as nine different payroll pulls, basically, into the system, and that's why those haven't changed since March.
Okay. So next time we see this, it's probably going to have her?
Yeah. Once I get past the preliminary budget, by the 1st of September, I will remove all of these salaries and fringe benefits, and I'll have to redo all of them based on who's actually working here the middle of September.
Okay. Good explanation for me. And that's why you don't have a budget for our possibly new board secretary?
Right.
Okay. Just a mental note, I know Jeff did that, too. Our leadership team, $11,000. That could, you know, if we could, especially with our new technology as the Board, we need to cut that down, you know?
What is that, Kim, that you're referring to?
$11,000 for leadership travel, leadership team travel. We need to start looking into webinars. We need to start... I mean, that can hire four to five custodians right there. So, I mean, we're putting all this technology in. Let's start using it then, and that could be decreased by quite a bit. 11,000 it was. What page are we on?
I think it's probably in 89.
Right here. Employee travel for leadership team. We were at 10,005.
What budget is that in?
Superintendent's.
Superintendent's.
There's 40 members in the leadership team, and that budget allow, permits us to, for example, send, when the curriculum office... This is a little complicated, but...
And I'm going to interrupt you. I probably is. You don't need to explain where it's coming from. Would we not want to agree that with our technology that we're going to try to use, we could save money on traveling and doing inside, in-house webinars?
Not necessarily.
Okay. I would like the Board to probably address that down the road, so... And then, there's a few other things, but one is the food, one is the printing and binding, 13,000, but it keeps other people in our community and business, I guess, so thank you. That's all I have at this point.
Anyone else? Questions on the budget? Okay. We need a motion to approve the preliminary budget if there aren't any other questions.
Motion to approve the preliminary... Oh, I'm sorry. Seven.
Bill and Chris Scott. Roll call vote, please.
Did he just read this same recommendation? Because I didn't hear it.
Yeah. Same.
Okay. I just, I didn't hear it. There was a little interruption, so, okay. Thank you.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Mr. Pressley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten? Never mind. Seven to zero, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay. We are on to the second reading of Policy 141. Board officers, so we're down to letter F. It reflects changes that were made at previous meetings, so this is the only one in second. The changes are redlined. Yes, Kim?
Motion to approve the Policy 141 for second reading as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Mr. Pressley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott? Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
All right. We have several policies for a first reading, and Sam has asked to speak.
I actually want to speak about these school board committees, but I'll do it now. I understand that you don't want to expand your committees like I recommended. I can understand that, and I accept that. What I can't accept is the fact that you are devaluing three of the people on your committees as it stands right now by saying four board members, two community members, and a student. What a quorum of the Board is three of the four board members. You devalue three people in saying they're second-tier committee members, as Jeff knows from the county board. When we have a committee made up, be it board members, citizen members, and as it states in Roberts, a quorum of the Board is one more than 50% of the committee. You should change that from three board members to be in a quorum to five of the seven members of the committee being a quorum. And as a hindsight, with the four board members on there, if something catastrophic should happen right now and you lose a board member or a board member has to resign, and you go to a committee member, a committee meeting with four board members, you don't have a committee anymore. You've got a school board meeting because you've got a quorum of the school board that's down below, below eight. So I really think you need to look at that and give, you know... Many times, I've seen the elections come up and people running for their office and people who are currently in office would sit there and tout how Stevens Point includes a student representative on the Board and committees, includes community members, but yet they're not valued the same as any of the other members of the committee, and that's not right. A committee is a committee, and you've got to change a quorum to a majority of the committee, not a majority of the school board members on the committee. Thank you.
Okay. We have five policies, and the reason that some of them are on here is because they address questions that were asked and therefore need to be adjusted if people feel strongly about them or suggestions need to be made in that direction. The one I'm going to address first, and then if we want to move this whole thing to committee, that's fine, but there are a couple of things that I think we need to discuss as a Board. I'm on school board meeting procedures. I'm on number 180. So we need to discuss special meetings. Primarily, I don't want people frustrated that they cannot get a meeting called if they need it or want it. So I think we just need to agree on exactly what needs to happen. I sent you an email that just explained legal counsel's thoughts on it, and basically, in the state statutes and in a couple of places in our policy, it says we need five signatures and that the signatures have to be filed with the Board Secretary and Clerk. That's when a special meeting is called. I will add that Mike also said that it can't be a generic topic. It has to be, you need to put, if you're calling a special meeting, you need to say what your special meeting is about. Not the lunch lines. Has to be, you know, that kids are pushing and bullying in a lunch line, and it's causing injuries. Because that, then, when people are signing yes, they're willing to sign off on it, they know exactly what they're saying yes to, and then we won't have any issues with agendas not being approved, that sort of thing. So these are the recommendations. Five signatures. We need to decide as a Board if that means five identical emails or similar emails, obviously identical if you don't have the period in the same spot, it's not the issue, being sent to the Board Clerk, or if it means a literal piece of paper with five signatures on it. And what we mean by filed, are we talking about an electronic file? Does it have to be filed somewhere? Does the Clerk need to put it somewhere? I asked Jeff, and he just has, from last year, he is just kind of have them on hold in an email so he has a file of them. Do we want a physical file? What are we looking for? So I'm opening that up for discussion. Obviously, I'm interested to hear what our Clerk thinks since the ultimate responsibility will land on her.
Well, I pulled up the statute, and I'll just read this because this is... Oh, I'm sorry. Should we use my microphone? I pulled up the statute, which I think is a little bit not quite as speci... Well, let me just read it. "A special school board meeting shall be held upon the written request of any school board member. The request shall be filed with the school district clerk or, in the clerk's absence, the school district president, who shall notify in writing each school board member of the date and time..." I'm sorry. "of the time and place of the special school board meeting at least 24 hours before the meeting. The notice shall be delivered to each school board member personally, should be left at their usual abode," kind of the normal stuff after that. "A special school board meeting may be held without prior notice if all school board members are present and consent, or if every school board member consents in writing even though he or she does not attend." So I guess my point in reading this is that I think the first line is really important, that "a special school board meeting shall be held upon the written request of any school board member." To me, email is fine, but the prosecutor in me says anybody can pick up your iPad and send an email, and that makes me nervous that I'm getting an email and I don't really know if it's from you or if it's from your kid or your husband or wife or... And I guess my feeling is, is that if you send it via email, that there be something in writing to follow up with that. And if that's something that you just simply drop off here at Bliss, I'd be good with that, but I think that there needs to be something with your hand, you know, your handwritten signature that says, "Yes, I agree to this," and it should be left here at Bliss for Amy, and I can pick them up because I guess I'm the designated person that's supposed to pick them up. But just an email or an email saying, "I've talked to five people," I don't think that cuts it, and I think that the whole meeting and everything that can be conducted at that meeting might be up for review because we didn't follow the proper procedure. Do you have something to say?
I can appreciate that you're concerned about the security, the security part of it. My spouse has no desire to even touch this iPad.
What about your kids, though? I know you have kids.
And I can appreciate that, but I think just, you know, like Kim said, you know, embracing technology, you know, as well as I do, it's still legal per se because it is represented by that individual. I mean, they could literally, I guess, if you were concerned about that, they print off the email, sign it, and fax it to us. A facsimile is a legal document. It's accepted in Wisconsin as an official document. Making somebody actually come here to Bliss is a little inconvenient. Some live a little farther than others. I'm just a little concerned as far as that goes. I would assume they may have fax capabilities.
Yes. I mean, and what about a scanning and a PDF? Yeah. No, I think-
Yeah. Just something with a, signature-wise, hey, I got five. Here's the five emails. Here's my signature saying, "I got the five emails." Then you look at it and go, "Okay, we can call it." I guess my concern is, you know, we, in our policy, were more restrictive than what the state statute is, and it begs the question, well, why? Are we trying to control the special meetings and them occurring? Or are we, we had problems in the past, and this is to alleviate those problems? I don't know. I'm not-
I don't have any problem with facsimile or signing it and scanning it. I don't have any problem with that. I just think that just sending an email is not enough, and I don't think that that complies. So I don't have any problem with that. If we have another opportunity for a special meeting and somebody scans, you know, does a PDF or scans their signature, I'm good with that. I'm fine with that. Or sends a fax here. Amy can... I mean, I work a mile away. It's easy for me to just run down here and take a look at it. I'm good with that.
Just a follow-up to that. Those documents, whether they're emailed or signed or whatever, those are public documents, and they are record of the district. They should be kept where the records of the district are kept. So once that special meeting occurs, then those five facsimiles, emails, whatever they are, should be kept in a file with the date and time on it so that if anybody wanted to come and verify that five members did in fact do that, it should be open to the public.
Yeah.
So just as a, that's another step in this procedure that really should occur.
Kim? The person that's calling the special session is the only one that needs to sign, or each individual person that's sending the email?
Each individual person.
Okay. That's what I thought, and it didn't sound like that. So...
Of course, they're going to do that.
Yeah. Because, you know, if I don't have a fax machine, I don't have a scanning machine, Bliss is open only the same hours I'm at work, and I understand the procedure. I'm just trying to hit all of the bad things that could happen. You know, living 25 miles out of town, do I have to run in? We're going to get mileage reimbursement for that. You know, can we do the email and then at the meeting, at the special meeting, or if, then sign that piece of paper so then it's on record with the emails and then sign it? See what I'm thinking about?
I hear what you're saying. You know, the statute says written consent.
Does it say 24 hours? Does it say three minutes? Does it say?
What about, I mean, we can file taxes with the electronic signatures, you know? So there are so many things, you know, we just type in our name, and that's our signature.
You can have a special code or something.
I mean, it just seems a little bizarre.
I don't... This isn't intended to be, it's actually intended to make it a smooth process. So because I think up to this point, there's been frustration in getting something called and not... For last, for instance, last time, attorney suggested I not put it on the agenda because it wasn't filed correctly. This way, if we have a black and white way of doing it, there aren't any questions. It's very simple. If this is done, there's a special meeting, and that's all there is to it, as opposed to, what should we do? Chris?
In the last year, there's been more special meetings called than there has been...
Can you speak up?
I'm sorry. In the last year, there have been more special meetings called than I can recall in probably 10 years, 11 years. Nothing has been really done exactly in the same way, kind of email, kind of this. I agree with Trish. We're not talking, you can call a special meeting, um, with the number of meetings we have. I'm just concerned, what designates a special meeting? I didn't get the vote I wanted, so I'm going to call four people, three of them agreed with me, and, you know, maybe I can get a special meeting for whatever reason. I think if we're going to have a special meeting, let's make it legitimate, let's get signatures, you know? Let's make sure we have documentation, and specifically, what is that meeting for? You know, is it, is it a need? You know? Let's be specific about what the topic is on that meeting. And then, I think it's fair to the people who are saying, instead of, "I want to call a special meeting for this, will you support it?" And you're like, "Well, what is this?" And that's, I think the explanation is important, but I also think the signatures are important, too. If it's that important and you're that concerned about a special meeting, there should be a way in 24 hours, you can get a signature to someone with, you know, an email, with a faxed, or, or something like that. If it's that important that a special meeting needs to be called, I mean, I've, I don't know, I want a signature. And I want it before the meeting, not at the meeting.
So, what do we want to do? Basically, what we're doing is, we're agreeing as a board what we want to do. We kind of have the clerk's thoughts, we have the post clerk's thoughts, our most recent past clerk's thoughts. I tend to think we need to follow our policies and the state statutes. If we aren't going to, Mike was really clear, don't suspend your policy, change it. Yes?
I agree. I just want to kind of piggyback on what Chris said, that whenever I agreed to a special meeting, I knew what was going on in there. I didn't, I wasn't, someone didn't say, "Oh, I want to talk about board member," and that's it. I asked questions when they discussed it with me, you know, and then, when I would send my email, I would send it, "Hey, clerk," I'd use a name, "but I am agreeing to the special meeting on board members' comments." I would put that right in there and then sign my full name, because as a licensed agent, that is accepted as a signature. You can sign a policy that way. So, I, I don't think, and I don't think I'm going to, you know, we're going to want people to run in 20 miles to sign something. I think this is unacceptable. The technology, we're spending 100,000, 300,000 on technology, and now we're not going to use it? A little scary.
Alex?
I think maybe a remedy, if we're worried about a false email, is within five minutes of sending the email, we make a phone call, leave a message at a specific, specific number stating, "I just sent the email confirming," in lieu of the signature, and get the signatures right before we begin the meeting, if it's necessary.
But what do we do about the state statute that says signature? What was the, can you please read the first part again?
I can, just a second. Sorry. "Special school board meeting shall be held upon the written request of any school board member. The request shall be filed with the school district clerk, in the clerk's absence, the school district president, who shall notify each school board member of the time and place at least 24 hours."
This is written request, doesn't say anything about a signature.
And it doesn't say a majority.
Yeah, I was going to say, where is the whole signature thing?
Just says, the person who wants to make the request for the meeting.
Yeah.
That's in our policy, though. I mean, so we need to, I'm saying we can't, we can't mess with the statute, so we have to follow exactly what that says. We can adjust our policy, but per a majority vote.
Well, and it makes no sense to have our policy more restrictive than the statute. Why would we want to limit ourselves like that?
So, we could make a vote to remove the signature part of it?
Where is this part in here?
And Angel, you said 180, is it really in 171? Board meetings with the special meeting on the red line?
Yes, it is, sorry.
I was going to say, I didn't see it in... Okay, I was a little lost there, so it's a...
That would make two of us.
171 special meetings. So, basically, we could leave the majority of the board out.
All we need to say is, follow statute 120.432. Is that the one you write?
Mm-hmm, yeah. 120...
Well, I think what they're...
No, I'm sorry, just a second. Hey, I'm looking at 120.11.
They're looking for a quorum.
Well, just because it says that in the policy doesn't mean it's right.
They said they're looking for a quorum, is what they're looking for.
What are you talking about?
When they says, uh, it says a majority of the board, they're looking for a quorum. Two, two board members cannot call a special meeting and have a meeting for the board. You are not representing the board. So, they're looking actually for a quorum there when it says majority?
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
That's what the fight is.
That's what, that's what I'm saying.
But I don't understand your point.
The point is, to have a meeting, you have to have a quorum of the board.
Well, that goes without saying for any meeting, whether it's regular calls...
Right, right.
You have to have a quorum.
Right, but I'm saying there, the majority means a quorum. It's the wording, that's what they're looking at. In other words, if four board members decide, hey, we want to have a, or three, or whatever, you can't. I'm saying, that's why that statement is in there. Whether it needs to be in there or not is pointless, that, I'm telling you, that the reason the majority's in there is they're saying, you have to have a majority, a quorum of the board, to have that special meeting. You may not need that sentence in there, but I'm telling you, that's what they're referencing.
And, you know what, this actually, this policy should say 120.11 sub 2 and 120.43 sub 2. This is 120.43, and you need to read them together. So, this is the other statute that talks about special meetings.
120.11, too?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's referenced at the end of the policy, Trish.
Oh, okay, all right, good. Okay, so, sub 2, "The school board shall meet at least once each month, and at other times upon the call of the school district president, or upon the filing of a request with the school district clerk, signed by a majority of the school board members." So, there's your majority, and there's your signature. Now, how you interpret signature, I don't know. That's, it says, "signed by a majority." So, it would be the quorum, it'd be five in our case, and it'd be a signature of some kind.
It could be an electronic signature.
Yeah.
Again, it doesn't state a timeline, so if we just agreed to a format, we can get those signatures before we actually officiate the meeting.
Well, I think that's when you need to go back to 120.11, because that's when it says the 24 hours. That's where it has the timeline.
That's when the meeting's actually called, is when the clerk has that, is, is what she's saying, is, that's when you poll for a time.
But you have to notice at 24 hours.
Right, we have to notice at 24 hours. So, we just need to agree on if we want electronic, if electronic signatures to the clerk work or not, and that can include the facsimile that Lisa was talking about, sending something in a fax.
I would say, yes, let's accept an email to the clerk for our signature on a special meeting.
I would agree with that.
Before the meeting?
Before the meeting, yeah. An email.
In order to file the meeting.
In order to file the meeting, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, Jeff?
I'm sorry, what were you proposing?
That an electronic signature qualifies as a signature. So, an email, signing your name, saying you're okay with calling a special meeting, would qualify.
So, it's, it's verifiable that it's your signature, it's unique?
Right.
Well, wait a second, because we're talking about two different things. This is a really big, this is a really big issue in the courts. If you digitally sign something, it's got to have all sorts of, of special security encryption, it's got, digitally signing something is really different than just an email. An email, I pick up Jeff's tablet, and I send you an email that says, you know, whatever, something funny, "Your mother wears army boots to bed," or whatever, whatever. You think it came from Jeff, but the reality is, I swiped his iPad. So, that's why emails...
So, would, would, if the person calling the meeting gets the email, and they call to confirm that that is indeed from that individual, would that cover that?
I, I prefer the facsimile or the PDF with a note that has your signature on it, because I think that fits with what the statute says much cleaner. It's a written request, and it has a written request, and it has a signature. When you read 120.11 plus 120.43, the two of them refer to signatures and writing. And I think that the facsimile, or the PDF with the signature on it, like you say, let's use technology, those are perfect, and those are both accepted by state statute in lots and lots of different places.
And I would accept that, I mean, I would support that.
Facsimile or PDF signature?
With our handwritten signature?
Yeah.
Let's make sure. I don't have the capability right now, but...
Right, or you can just show up and sign it, but in case someone can't. All right, do we have a consensus on that? PDF?
Facsimile.
Facsimile.
Or standard pen.
Given the option.
Yeah, facsimile or actual signature. What we do need to do, Amy, is, we need to adjust our policy to reflect that, that we agree.
I will let Sarah know.
Do you want to come back as a first reading?
Yep. So, this will have to come back as a first reading with those things added. Okay, special meeting, were there any other, that was all I had to say about it, I...
Can I suggest that you do have a procedure for where those will be kept and when?
Oh, I think they should come here. Don't you think? What?
No, I agree with you. What, what Attila said, is that they need to be kept by the record holder or whatever.
And don't send them to my house.
That's what I meant, she just doesn't want them by your house.
Okay, so, needs to be filed here.
So, that'll be incorporated in the policy?
Yeah.
And does it have to come back for, uh, first? Can it come back for a second with these?
Yeah, it would come back as a second with changes in red line.
Okay.
Do we want to do any, I mean, do we want to stick to 171 for right now?
Well, all I was going to ask is, I had to say that. Do we want to send the rest of this to committee, since we are creating policy heads and stuff tonight? Or do we want to continue this conversation? That was the one that I was required to talk about tonight.
Well, the only concern of mine would be, is that if the committee's at 5:30, I may not be able to attend, so I would try to get it to somebody, I guess.
Okay, we can talk about them now, it's totally the pleasure of the board. What do you got? It's 10 o'clock.
Committee, I'm in favor of sending it to committee.
The committee needs something to do, I say send it to the committee.
Anyone else? We have to, we have to have a consensus. Or we have to do about...
Senate to committee.
Committee, committee, committee? Lisa?
That's fine.
Committee, Kim?
I'm going to say no, because I'm not going to be guaranteed I can come to the committee and have my input, but I'm only one out of the...
But it has to come to the board anyhow. The committee does not make any...
I know, but you hate to play the same game we did a year ago, so, but anyways, yes, go ahead.
Okay, so there's nothing else that we need to handle right now? Making sure, wait, there was one thing, oh, committees. The staff person being on the committee. Just want to address it publicly, address it in the email. This was, can staff members be on our committees, not including HRs? Can legally? Yes. Is it wise? No, only because any decision they make, if it affects their classroom in any way, curriculum, financially, anything, it can be considered a conflict of interest, and they can be held somehow accountable. So, I think the way around that is, what Kim suggested, is can they be on there in an advisory role? And I think maybe, this is like giving power to the committee heads, but maybe once we've decided who the committee heads are, you can decide what you want to do with that. You know, you have, you have my answer in terms of what legal counsel advised. You can choose.
And as long as you brought back the committees, you know, I kind of laughed, because, and yes, this is my opinion, we don't even let our public speak for five minutes, and yet, then we appoint, um, as citizens that we appoint, they aren't elected, we appoint who we want to listen to as citizen members on the committee. And I really wonder, well, why aren't we running our committees in a way that we allow for whoever attends the committees to be allowed to give us input? Because if we are only letting people on the committee that we pick, and then we limit their speaking here, it really doesn't bode well with actually being open to community input. So, I just really think we, before we assign people to committees from the popular, general community, I think we need to think about that.
Okay. So, these policies, other than 171, which will come back as a second reading, everything else will go forward to the policy committee, which will begin meeting in August, the best we can tell at the moment.
I think 171's got to go there, too.
Yeah, I was going to say, otherwise, I have lots of...
Just said 171.
No, you said, "Other than set 171."
Other than the changes we made to 171.
No, no, I just meant the changes, that we just did, where we agreed on a facsimile or a PDF.
Okay, but the, the policy is going to committee, right?
Yeah, okay. Oh, you mean, am I, is 171 still going? Yes, we just need to add those sentences, for sure.
That isn't how it came across.
Sorry, sorry.
You're fine, you're fine.
Thank you. Okay, approval of future agendas. Okay, so let me clarify, because this is on here several times. We just wanted to make sure that it's clear, because Angel may have screwed up at the last meeting, letting people, we voted on things that didn't need to be voted on when it was just ideas. So, this is the place where if you have an idea about what's coming next, about what you want on the agenda, right, Jeff? Sorry, correct me if I'm wrong. This is the spot where if you have an idea about what you want on the agenda, is this where you say it? Or is this where we're voting on the items that have already come through? Oh, help me out, people.
This item right here?
Yep, so we are on...
See where we vote on items that were given at the prior meeting, isn't it? That's what it was in the past.
Yes.
Okay, so that that's what we're doing, then we are on, we need to vote on, it's under 11D1 and 2. Because those have not been voted on by the board, is that correct?
But they've not been posted here as an action item.
We're on G.
No, she's saying move 11D1 and 2 over to G.
Why do you want to jump up to 11D?
No, she's saying the list underneath there should have been under G1.
Correct.
Right? Oh, I see, okay. So, you're saying 11D should actually be at 9G?
Correct. So, they're going to have to just stay.
No, the, the board actually can vote to make those action items. If it appears on an agenda, even if it doesn't say action, the board can vote to make those action items. So, if the board wants to move 11D1 and 2 to G1A and B, and then act on it, you can do that.
Can we move it now, since the agenda was approved the way it was before?
If the entire board does so, yes.
Yes?
Sure.
Is that, that, that was the intent, so, that, that's what this space is for. And those are the only two things that have been brought up, that have not been voted on by the board, to be on here.
Or you can approve them to be put on the next agenda, rather than, so if I, if you say, "I really want to talk about Spash," and everybody says, "All right," then it'll have to be on the next agenda, I believe is where that's going.
Or 60 days or whatever. Yeah, can I just offer, if we're going to be talking about these things and, and potentially voting on something, I think that these both, but in particular Spash Athletics, there may be members of the community that might have wanted to speak to this and didn't understand, and I'm really uncomfortable.
We're only voting about putting it on the agenda.
Oh, God, okay, okay. Okay, okay.
It's a determination of whether it should be on the agenda or not.
Got it, okay, okay, thank you.
So, yes, that's what we want to do?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, so, Lisa, these were both requested by you, I think, or, Kim, did you do the instructional leader?
No, I did.
Okay, can you just explain?
The instructional leader positions, I just want to make sure everything is working properly, get an update. I still think about that meeting where we had the people up here in tears over not having time to do their, their RTI stuff, and we threw money at the situation, and I just, I would like to revisit that.
Okay. And then Spasha, oh, sorry.
Are you talking to asking the staff to come back and just...
Well, it has to come back. I'm asking it to be on the agenda.
Okay, so, can you make a motion?
I make a motion that the instructional leadership positions appear on a future agenda item. Did you want to include the SPAS one in your motion or just instructional leaders? Because you can move them as one.
We always done separately.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions, I'll take questions or comments first.
No, because it's not on the agenda. This is just a-
Yeah. This is just a-
Right, 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 sorry.
That's why I pulled my voice back.
Yep, okay. Roll call vote, please.
One second. Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonowski?
Yes.
Mr. Pressley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to one.
Okay, SPAS athletics, Lisa?
That I have been receiving a lot of input from the community. I would like to discuss it with the athletic director and the community and the board as to just the whole program. So I'd like, well, I'll make a motion that the SPAS athletics be on a future agenda item. Second.
Roll call? Oh, sorry.
Ask, I don't quite understand what this is about. I mean, that's too general. Can you be more specific?
Want to talk about an employee?
No.
About a program?
Just the whole athletics, yes. Because it's been brought up about why are we bringing, why are we even recommending the ninth graders go up to SPAS? Is that because of SPAS athletics or is it academic? I mean, it's like a whole, you know, the way, the way, yeah, it's not on the agenda, so.
Well, the reason I'm asking is because is it something that this board really should be involved in? Is it a personnel issue or is it a superintendent issue?
It's not a personnel issue, if that's what you're asking.
Administration issue?
Well, number one, I mean, I don't either. And that's why you have to have the discussion. And you can always table it or postpone it or whatever.
I would sure like to know a little more specifically about what it is we would be discussing.
It's not on the agenda.
When she, when we, next month or next time when we put it on the agenda, then she can explain it more.
If it gets put on the agenda, then yes.
I think we need to refine this a little bit, only because at that point, we would be providing information. Do you know what I mean?
They need to at least know enough about it to know if it's something they want to hear.
Or that we want to spend our time. We have very, very busy schedule. Agendas are going to be very full.
Okay, then can you leave it? Can you leave it on there and I will formulate some information so that I can articulate it better?
Sure.
I have to pull my second back?
Yes. And I pull mine.
Okay. Thank you for flexing with me on that. Sorry, I had things in weird places. Okay. Filling the board vacancy is next and Reed has asked to speak to that.
First of all, I see no written attorney opinion regarding this matter. And I don't want to hear your, or the superintendent or the president's secondhand conversation with an attorney and neither should you. You know, I want to see a written one that one could challenge. And attorneys are wrong all the time. So just because you got this attorney that may give you some opinion that you may want, doesn't mean it's right. And I want the opportunity to challenge it if I don't agree with it. So it's my opinion that was going to happen. So maybe we're not going to have any discussion on this because I don't see any in the packet and I looked quite a few times. But I have a feeling that you guys are going to want to, you know, push forward on this at least, at least probably five of you. Because what I see happening with this board is, back to the previous much criticized, unholy split board alliance, alliances are already reforming here. When I say re-reforming, not reforming, they're happening again, okay? Pretty obvious what the heck's going on here. Back room, my guess is talking, I see notes passing out amongst board members. I mean, can just imagine emails going between some board members here. And it appears that what somebody is going to want to do here, the five are going to try to get another board, you know, a member that agrees with them. And let me tell you, you know, I don't want to see any board members choosing another board member. Let the public choose them. We're almost into the next election cycle. Guys are already talking about here, you know, the mayors and everything else. It's all next spring. It's going to be July. You don't need to fill it. And I don't believe you, you should fill it. Now, if somebody's going to come up with some opinion that, oh, we talked to an attorney and you can be more restrictive, let me tell you, my opinion would be if you think that you can appoint them as being more restrictive. I say that would be less restrictive because now the public doesn't have anything to say about it. Now, if you were to appoint someone, you know, if you were, which I'm not, I'm saying I don't even think you should under the state statutes the way it's written. Because the term, you know, Shibley was in her last session. She's already been a couple of months here since the election. And we're having another one, so you don't have to do it. I think that's what the state statute says. Okay. And, but let's say somebody comes up with some new one and for five of you want to go with it because you think, you know, then you would probably, should appoint the one who took the fifth number of votes. Because we're looking at one over here got the fourth number of votes. Is sitting on this board right now. But I don't believe that's what, perhaps, I know some board members, can't mention her name, but I'm looking at them and they want to get one of their little, another one of their buddies in here. And that isn't how they should be. You can operate with eight. Still need five, you know, to get something passed. So just keep it like it is.
Okay, you all asked me to find out what the deal was with filling the board vacancy.
I asked to speak on this one too.
You did? I'm sorry, Sam. I didn't write it down. Please, come on up.
You have a policy in place right now. And that policy's been used the last, I don't remember exactly how many times. Chris, you might be able to help me.
I don't know.
Four or five times we've had to replace board members?
Yep.
And it simply states when a vacancy occurs, people apply for it. And it's filled by appointment. And it's filled by appointment of a majority of the board. And then after that, it says, when it occurs in office during the last year, then that person will be elected at the next spring election. But what they're talking about there is after someone is appointed, the successor to the person appointed will be elected at the next election. That happens after the replacement's named. If you want to look at your policy though, look at the second part of it if it's not that year. And it gets more confusing. That's why you need to go over your policies. We had somebody that ran for reelection and got a one-year position, became president of school board. He's not here now because he chose not to run again. I won't say in hindsight that he might not have been reelected, but that's, you know, for everybody else to think. The bottom line is you have a policy that's been in place. You have a policy that you've been using. And it should be followed right now. That person is going to be on the board until the next election. And then they have a choice of filing to run again or not. And then it's up to the public to decide if they want to keep them here. You've got your, you've got your policy. Use them.
Thanks, Sam. Sorry again about not having you on here. Okay. So you saw what I wrote, which was basically the attorney's advice. I'm going to just flip back to it quick, although the gist of it is it went back to the word shall. We shall elect someone. Yeah, I'm sorry, Alex, yes?
Just a quick interpretation of shall. Shall, as I read it index, Webster speaks about in the future, done in the future. It doesn't mean it has to be done, it's just in the future. So there's no specific date specifying it, it just needs to be done. So it can be postponed until the next election because we will do it in the future. Just to clarify, shall.
Well, that's Webster's clarification. There's a legal clarification though. And incidentally, it's all over the place. There is no black and white. So the bottom line is this is our decision. Are we going to bring someone in or not? And we just need to decide as a board. It's been our past practice that that's what we do is we have people come in, apply, fill out an application, speak to the board and the board elects someone when there is a vacancy. Is that what we want to do or not? Yes?
Go around the table. I mean, this is pretty simple. Either we want to or we don't. I'm sure that we had some discussion. I'm sure you could have more, but either we want to or we don't and then just move on.
I'm all about it. What do you guys think?
Place to start.
Can we state reasons why? Can that also be done by everyone? Would they all agree to it? Why?
Sure, I'm for following the procedure. We have a, we have a policy.
And I'm for leaving it vacant unless we were to pick the next person on the election. I think it's very important that the public select who's on this board. And I think this board picking who we want on here will be, our decisions will be based on things that, I mean, we have enough issues going on with this board. So no vacant, leave it.
I think that we should appoint somebody and I think that we should follow the procedure that we've used, I don't know, four or five times so far. That's the history. That's historically how we've done it. And I would note in the policy, there's nothing about going with the next person that had votes. So I think we should just follow our procedure and appoint somebody after they've been interviewed by us.
Jeff?
I'm kind of torn, I guess. It could go either way, in all honesty. I'll go with the majority of the board, whatever they decide. But, I mean, I would agree with Trish that it doesn't define that you go with the next person. I've been that next person and I wasn't chosen. So, and it was the will of the board at that time and I can appreciate that. So if we are going to fill that position, we just need to follow our own policy. And this is a policy I think really needs to go to the policy committee to look at.
Go ahead.
I'd go no, keep it at eight because of the dynamics involved. You still need the majority-
Can you talk into the mic?
Sure. I'd go no because of the dynamics involved, keep it at eight because you still need that majority of five to pass something. And for something to fail, it would be four. This is going to cause us as a board to work closer, trying to understand each other and get down to it without an extra individual that's going to potentially muddy up the water even worse instead of making it better.
Chris?
I think we should appoint someone. I think each time we have, I think we've been pretty successful. I think it's let people who were really, really uncomfortable with the process of running, at least it gives us an idea of who's out there, who might be interested and who is a little frightened and doesn't have the knowledge, but is interested. It's only a short amount of time and I think we have still with two new members, a relatively new board. I think we should. I think we're a nine-member board. We have a policy that we've used and has worked. If we want to look at it again, great, but it's in place right now. And I have had a number of people, and they're not all my friends. There are people who I hardly know, ask about when we're going to do it, so.
Kim?
Well, since I've always kind of been a stickler about following our policies, you know, but it's how you interpret them because they're always interpreted differently depending on who read them. It's kind of like reading the Bible. Depending on what side of the water that was opening is how you read the Bible. And it's how you interpret the policy. Now, if the policy reads that if they're in their last term and we don't have to replace them, how do you interpret that? Do we just leave it as is? That was a good politician, wasn't it?
But you brought that up and that's not exactly what it means. It means if you appoint them, they have to be real.
No, Sam did.
Sam did.
Oh, Sam.
And that's Sam's interpretation.
His interpretation. Because last week we had somebody said, no, that they say, and even in the state statutes it says, and again, it's how you read it, in their last term. It doesn't say this paragraph is based on that paragraph. You got to appoint them and then they're reelected. So it all depends how you, but I'm going to stick with what I've been saying is we have to follow our policy. Let's appoint somebody because we're wasting way too much valuable time in getting this done. And let's do the dog and pony show like we've always done and get it going.
All right, so we have a majority. When do we want this accomplished by? Do we want to do it at the next board meeting?
Can we have your opinion on it first before you?
Oh, I think we should follow the policy and it's primarily because I've been told pretty clearly by legal counsel that my main responsibility is to follow the policies. And to make sure that if for any reason we don't want to follow our policies, that we agree as a group to change the policy. And so, you know, his interpretation was definitely that we need to do this. And I have to respect that. So I think it should be filled just the way we've always done it. The when, here's my only concern and this is Angel's two cents and I got it. It took a long, long time last time, like a couple of hours, I think. Do we want that part of a regular meeting? Or do we want something set aside for people to come through? Because what we did, sorry for the edification of those who are brand new. Well, Trish, you were on there. People filled out an application. We passed out the questions and then they came up and they were allowed to, they answered three questions, right, Trish? And then we're allowed to have a person speak on their behalf, a person or two speak on their behalf. And then we did a vote. And it's a, oh, it is a simple majority. Amy and I looked it up. A simple majority means, for instance, if there, how many people do we have? Eight? If it was a-
It'd have to be a five.
Five, four.
Be a simple majority.
Unless somebody abstained.
If someone abstains, so there are eight of us, yes.
So it's questions that we all agree upon or?
They're standard. I mean, I think we have a form.
We couldn't, someone's at the podium, ask a specific or personal question?
We did, didn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, we were able to ask question.
I think we each took a-
Didn't you apply? You didn't? Oh, I'm sorry, it was somebody else, I'm sorry.
And then the board also said that if the individual board members wanted to ask them questions, they could. That's how the process was.
Each board member took one of the questions.
So what we can do is find that list of questions and forward it to everybody. Do we want to do that?
Do what? I'm sorry.
Sorry, it's okay. Find the list of questions that we did last time and forward it to everybody so everybody can look it over, give their two cents. But timeline, what do we want to do for a timeline? And do we want this on a regular board meeting?
I think it has to be on a regular board meeting. If she's getting questions, it's in the paper, we need to do it for everybody to see. I know it's not the answer what people want to see, but we-
Our next regular board meeting is?
7th?
July 14th.
No.
14th.
14th.
Then we should do it at our next regular board meeting.
We can't have a, just a meeting of that before that board meeting?
Kent Lepack. Not you.
No, we'll just have our second board meeting for the month instead of the workshop if we need more.
Yeah, but then you're waiting about three or four weeks.
So if we do it the 14th, that is, today we're at the 23rd. We're three weeks out. So that's enough time for it to be published in the paper, people to get into. I mean, if people are interested, they're interested. If they're not, they're not. They've already thought this.
They've already been waiting.
Exactly.
Can I ask a question? Are we having committee meetings on July 7th?
No.
Okay, so couldn't we do it on the 7th?
You really don't-
No, there are committee meetings on the 7th.
Jeff is out of town on July 7th.
Okay, nevermind.
And there are committee meetings.
No, we're not.
We still aren't starting the committee meetings?
I think we were just going to start them in August. We can decide that. We just, it was an assumption because July is crazy, crazy. How about if each head decides that?
There you go.
Oh, and it was because most of the administrative team that are on 11-month contracts won't be available because that's their month.
That's their month.
Yeah, can we have, let me say this and it's going to be poorly said, but a simple board meeting on the 7th so we can kind of close up some of the stuff? And so our 14th board meeting, when it's supposed to be a regular one?
Jeff's out of town.
And I don't think I'm going to be here.
Well, I mean, if we have to wait for every board member to be here at all of these on the 7th to have a board meeting, I mean, hopefully he doesn't go on vacation again and I don't go on vacation because, you know, that's the only thing. I mean, I'm not saying appoint the person on the 7th. I'm saying having a regular board meeting on the 7th of stuff we can finish up and then having the appointment on the 14th. I may not be here on the 14th, but that's my own choice if I'm going to be gone.
I don't, I don't understand what you're saying. So do what on the 7th?
Well, we thought we were going to have committee meetings.
Okay.
Okay, so can we not have a board meeting on the 7th?
And then have another one on the 14th.
And that would be the... Go ahead, Amy.
Um, we were, I believe from our previous meeting, going to have a meeting on the 7th or the 8th to continue the discussion regarding superintendent's evaluation.
That is on the 8th, I believe. I thought we changed it from the 8th. No, we...you're right. It is changed. It is on...tomorrow night.
Yeah, tomorrow night.
No, I am aware of that one. It was more of the final organization of that.
We have to present it to them.
Right.
Oh, we didn't pick a date for that.
Right. We were gonna talk about that tomorrow night.
Could we combine the two?
Is the meeting tomorrow night?
No, not that you need to be aware of.
Well, actually, board policy says I do.
Oh, yeah.
We're not following.
Okay, so let's...let's figure out the timeline for this. One.
So we put...
Two, three. The 14th would be three weeks from now. That gives...it has to be published in the paper.
Mm-huh.
People have to have a chance to answer the questions. Um...
I don't think it's fair to do it any sooner than that.
Yeah.
I agree.
The 14th is when.
Yeah.
I'm good with 14th.
You wanna do it on the 14th? Let's do it.
Okay.
And we do it before 6:30?
No, no, people won't be able to come. Here...here's my question, though. If you guys wanted to see the questions beforehand, before we submit them to people, if we get them emailed out to you like now, when can you look them over and have them back? Because if we put this in the paper, we have to be able to hand people questions when they come in and apply. Yes?
We don't know where these questions are.
Yeah, me neither.
We'll find. I'm assuming...
Really, the questions...
Not gonna get published until probably end of the week, and I'm sure at some point we can find them before then.
Exactly.
And if I look for them really hard, I can probably have them for you tomorrow.
Okay, so I'm just saying the turnaround on that has to be reasonable.
Sarah would have them.
This week.
Sarah can look for them.
It's reasonable.
Yep. Alex?
Um, part of the decision to do the...the appointing is, in case someone isn't able to, uh, do the election process, isn't comfortable with that way, but they're more comfortable meeting the small group and being appointed. Uh, that...that brings to mind that there are individuals who have, um, problems expressing themselves, language barriers, and I wanna make sure that as a board, we're in agreeance that we really want the demographics to come forward as well, to represent all sides of our community, that we, with a warm, open heart, we do want, uh, for instance, like, members of the Hmong community to definitely come up to that podium, because that would be a great diversity to this group. That's the way we feel, right?
Yes.
So what are you...what are you asking, though?
I'm just...so the camera can hear it, so that we encourage everyone.
Everybody. Come and join the party.
Absolutely.
Everybody, everybody.
I didn't know if you were asking for an interpreter or something. That's what I was like.
That's kinda what it sounded like.
Okay, so 14th is when we're doing this. It'll be in the paper. Questions will be emailed out to people.
What update for applications? Have to look at the policy.
Yeah, what...here, I've got the policy up.
You said, Amy, you said...while she's looking at that, it won't be published in the paper till the 27th?
Deadline for filing.
No, I don't...I don't...that's Sarah does that. I don't know when the newspapers go to publish. I mean, it's gonna be tomorrow.
I agree with you tomorrow. Wednesday would be...probably be the earliest, but I'm like, Friday?
Just so the answers get in the packet.
And we're gonna have people coming tomorrow to do the paperwork.
Normally, you would do it, but I'm...
The Wednesday before, yeah.
Yeah, so when do you do the deadline?
The...the deadline will be the Wednesday before the 14th, so that the...the answers can be, uh, included in the packet. So let me give you that date, instead of just saying the Wednesday before.
Wednesday the 9th.
Wednesday the 9th is the...the application deadline, meaning the application and the questionnaire have to be in by the 9th to bliss, so they can be included in the packet. And then, yeah.
This may be really going too far, but with the holiday, um, week being in there, is that gonna be too much for some people who want to be on the board and have vacation plans, or...no, it should be fine. Okay.
I think people have already thought it through personally, but...
I do, too. We had multiple members here, or potential members, sitting in the audience tonight. Still have one, actually.
Here's a question, then, actually. What if, like, for instance, Chief Ruder, which I'm sure wants to speak at the podium, there's some kind of thing going on, and he cannot because he's a chief of police? So he just lost his chance? Is that what we're looking at?
Kinda.
I just don't think we can, you know...
Yeah.
Okay. 'Cause I mean, that...that's a big responsibility, and things can happen.
Yeah.
Well, we have his written questions.
Yeah.
Skip the questions.
That's what I'm thinking.
Pick her feet.
Okay, please.
Like we do.
Okay.
Yeah, but they were dumb.
Let's keep going.
Yay!
Another decision. Okay, we are on to continuing education memorandum of agreement action item.
If there's no form, they just have to write a letter. There's no form, and it doesn't say write a letter, so it's...
Are you still awake? Are you? You're sort of popped, didn't you?
Keel's all ready to talk, so...
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am hoping that this will be an easy, simple decision for everyone.
Yep, sorry.
Forward, um, when we post all this future agenda item and that kinda stuff, per our policy 171, all the stuff is supposed to be listed as information and possible action. So when stuff comes up like that, you know, like the, um, we did the filling of vacancy, and now we're doing the continuing education and morale plan and blah, 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 just so you know that. 171 says that, so I apologize.
Okay, go ahead, Keel.
I...no. Number nine, it's listed...
Oh, okay, and that applies to all of it.
As the title, information or action, right.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
And it's listed specifically information if we haven't received, uh, information saying different. So if you had said, "I have an action I want for this item," then we could would have listed it differently.
But it...but, and that's part of the problem. The policy, if we're saying we're following policy, policy is that it's stated that way, whether you have information or not. Okay.
Where is that, Lisa?
Policy 171.
I'm there. Where is it?
Sorry about that.
No, I just...
Okay, and the first paragraph, um, it says, "Once an item is approved for a future agenda, the president, vice president, superintendent have 60 days to schedule the item on the upcoming agenda as information and possible action."
So it's just those agenda items that have been approved by the board? It's not all agenda items?
No, no, right. Just the ones that...yes.
Thank you. I was trying to clarify.
Keel? Would you like to tell us about your...
No.
Continuing education memorandum of agreement?
Yes. And this is, uh, as it says, a continuation of a very, um, interesting class that we have at SPAS that's, uh, essentially a collaboration with UW Stevens Point. So our kids can take the healthcare and health care professions course, and they get the credit from SPAS, but they also get the university credit. It's taught by a university professor, and of course, that gives them, uh, a multitude of opportunities to not only engage in a course with the college professor and see what the curriculum's like, but they're also exploring areas of interest that they have personally in terms of healthcare profession. So it's a very interesting course, uh, well-attended by our kids, and...and we simply wanna continue the agreement with them this year and be able to schedule the kids for the fall.
I'd like to move to approve the agreement between the district and UWSP CPS-CE.
I'll second it, since I was supposed to do the motion.
Sorry.
Doug, I knew that wanted to.
But I did have some questions, too. Sorry. Yes. Um, and I know you're being brief, and I wanna thank you for that. Um, the cost of the program is $808.59. Okay? The...we get a reimbursement of $267.68. The district pays $259.80. I'm just kinda...and I'm just meant to make sure I'm reading this right. And the student, or the student's parents technically, would pay $281.11.
Correct.
Okay. With the $259.80 that we fork out for the student, do we get any recourse or reimbursement if the student fails, doesn't complete the course, or drops out midterm from the student or the student's parents?
In, uh, I don't think that we have an agreement that says that for this particular course. Um, we do have a policy that...that works with our youth options courses that says if a student fails, you can deny them the opportunity to take the course again, or you can seek reimbursement for the class for youth options, but that's where the district is paying the entire cost. And so this essentially is quite a savings to the district for these students that are involved, because we're paying only a portion, a third of the cost. So I can check into that in terms of, uh, past practice if we've had something like that happen with a student and how we've handled that.
And I know a handful of students that have taken this, and they're pretty dedicated to it.
Right.
But I just don't want a student to be able to take it and not be dedicated to it.
And you're...and you're accurate in that that's how it's been perceived and accepted by the families, too, is that the student and the family have a vested interest in the course because they're paying a portion of it, and so it's been successful that way. But I'll check that information.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry. Go ahead, Alex.
Are there enough seats if there's a lot of students who wanna do this?
It's...I'm not sure what the, uh, course is at right now for numbers, but, uh, like any of our courses, it's gonna be capped. If we get, uh, you know, above 32, it's gonna be...
So in the past, have we turned...or last year, if it was the only year, was it last year?
I...I'm not sure.
You turn anyone away that year?
Yeah, don't think so.
Actually, how this works, Alex, is that there is a class, and from that class, students step forward to take it for credit, and that's when this third, a third, a third is applied. So it's not a requirement that you take the third, a third, I mean, for credit. So there's a pool of kids. Uh, in one of our courses, um, we have five sections, and kids decide...how many of those kids decide that they wanna pursue that then for...for payment? We've, um, there was a grant that paid for this until four years ago, and then, um, so the kids weren't denied opportunities. We paid it, and it was $250 a student, and four years later, we're only paying $9 and something more per student. So it's a...it's a great partnership with the university.
So out of that $259.80 that the district pays, I'm just wanting to make sure that we are not really allowing certain law students to benefit from that, and we have to turn away other ones, 'cause that's obviously not fair.
No, and we've...we have a history of really supporting the students who wanna take the college credit courses and...and supporting them and going out of our way to make sure that they're...our cooperation with the university is, uh, goes through our counseling office at the high school, and that they're very, um, very good at planning and arranging for those kids, to make sure they're supported and getting in the right classes.
Any other questions for Keel?
I'm good.
Yep. I...if you can get, um, the superintendent just basically how many kids are taking this course, and he...and if you could put it into your report, just maybe that'll...I think that was kinda Alex's question there, and, um, my question would be is if we had any fail. Again, most of these kids are very dedicated, and so...but that would kinda give us a little bit forth, so...
Sure.
All right. Roll call vote, please. The motion...will you read the motion, please?
Uh, to approve the agreement between the district and UWSP CPS-CE. Ms. Eric?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Vaxton?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonowski?
Yes.
Mr. Pressley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, the next item is the staff morale plan. This is on...Lisa wanted to just have a continuing discussion, and we didn't really give her the full opportunity to do that. So Lisa, I can hand this to you.
And actually, um, because it's posted the way it is, what I wanted was to actually make a motion that we, as a board, create a staff morale plan, because it's pretty clear we need one. Um, but seeing as it's not posted properly, um, I can't do that, so I would like the indulgent of the board president to put this on again at the next board meeting, but put it on for action.
Definitely. Do you...
I don't believe it's my role as one board member to come up with the morale plan. I believe that is the role of the board as a whole.
All right, I'm just format. What are you thinking? Are you thinking workshop? Are you thinking...how are you thinking of putting...you want people to submit ideas? What...what do you want? I'm just trying to streamline a little so we don't...
And that's where I'm totally saying I don't think it's my call. I mean, I think it's a discussion that the board needs to have. If the board wants to throw ideas together for when we have this discussion at the next meeting and throw them around, and then we vote on them, that's fine. But what I'm saying is, we have a staff morale issue. We've had one for a very long time. We've had groups come and do a vote of no confidence. We've had our superintendent come up with the morale plan. We've had all these things, and our morale keeps going the wrong direction. So I believe the board as a whole needs to decide what we're gonna do to improve the situation.
Okay, so maybe we're thinking about ideas you'd want to submit. Administrative contracts. This was Lisa and Kim's request.
I believe it was mine, but is it an action or information? There's no parentheses behind it.
Because it's under number nine, which is information or action, it can be an action item.
I mean, you can agree, you can see how confusing that is. Either it's action or information, and if you just put it underneath that heading, then we can choose to make an action item if we want to. Am I the only one that's not reading that clearly?
No, if it's...if it's under that heading, then it shouldn't have anything in parentheses behind it.
And I thought we agreed to that in the past. So if...I guess if this is an action item, what I was looking at is I would like the board to go through every individual contract for the administration. We are going to make changes. We need to look at them individually, and I believe they're coming up. And I'm not saying I'm trying to get rid of any admin. Don't get...don't even start putting that, 'cause I know it's gonna probably be in a paper tomorrow. I wanna look at the contracts. We're talking about certain pieces in contracts that we don't want, shouldn't be in there anymore. We need to bring them to the table. If it needs to be done in closed session, so be it, but they need to come forward so we can look at them in a whole...that whole hole that Trish is always talking about. So that didn't come out right, but I apologize. And I believe that's what I had stated last time. I wanted to see all individual contracts.
You did.
And it...
And it didn't show.
All right, hang on, I'm writing this down. Yes, that is a closed session item, by the way.
And I'm not talking about an individual person. I'm talking about the contracts, so...
Yeah, so that's...
From Cabinet, any admin I want to read.
Um, so anybody who's considered leadership team, is that what you mean? So that's 40 employees? Or are you talking Cabinet...anybody that's considered in our administration that has an individual contract?
It's 40.
Yep. Okay.
So you...you want their individual contracts with their names on them? Is that what you want?
Well, you can have their position on them. I don't need a name, for say. I mean, it's a public knowledge.
Yeah, it's all public information.
It's public information.
I...I'm asking...
Yes.
Trying to fulfill what you want.
Yes.
So tell me what you want.
Yes. If you...if it's easier for you to hit the button and print it up.
Not easier for me either way. I just wanna know what it is you want. Please, just tell me.
I want all administration individual contracts.
Is that what the board wants?
It's her agenda item.
Well, it has...
You still...
The board has to direct me.
If she wants to make...
Right. Sorry, I'm trying to see where we are in this. Yep, okay, so this is already through, what? In order for us to post this correctly, I need, I understand what you want, you just want us as a board to go through each, so you want us as a board during a meeting to go through 40 contracts, is that what you're asking?
No.
And is there an end? Like, is there a purpose?
To see if we need to change the contracts.
Okay.
So we, for the sake of time, we don't necessarily have to go through all 40 here. We'll have this ahead of time, we look at it, and we all might have three, or, you know, they might all be the same thing. So we don't have to address each one down the line.
Exactly, they're in the packet, put them in the packet. Then we all look at them ahead of time like everything else. Not that tough.
Okay, it's, it's not an issue of toughness, it's just clarification. When, when we get in there and talk about what's going on the agenda, and we go, oh, doesn't remember why we wanted administrative contracts on, we stare at each other blankly. We didn't know if it meant you wanted a copy of an 11-month and a 12-month, and you wanted to compare them, I didn't understand you wanted a copy of each individual contract. I understand that now. It just has to be posted, this is what, this is what Mike said, it has to be posted in such a way that if someone wants to comment on it, they're commenting on what we're actually doing with it, where if it just says something like administrative contracts, that's so wide open that someone could come in and just comment on administrative contracts. If what we're doing is going through each one to see if there are any changes we want to make, that's what people, someone should be commenting on.
Changes on, possible changes on administration contracts.
Okay, yes, Chris.
Contract is not up for another year? Want to look at those right now?
Yes.
And if they're generically the same?
Doesn't matter.
Do we want to look, you know what I'm saying, if there's 10 that are the same, but...
We'll see that in the packet. I would like them, if they're 10 the same, then have them stapled or paper clipped together that this group is the same, if they are all the same. I mean, they're not going to be the same because of the...
With any, with anything...
Because the wages are going to be different, but basically, and I'm not questioning about the wages, it's some of the other verbiage that's in there. But yes, I would like, and if possible, if they can be put in order if they are grouped together, so.
Okay, we need to vote on this.
Why?
It needs to be a board determination, doesn't it, to have it brought? Does this work?
No, that, this has already been determined.
Already been determined. And it was, she had said before that that is what she had wanted with the contracts.
One board member can't direct the administration to do something, I'm asking...
But it was, it was already approved, I believe, to be on the agenda.
Kim, I'm just asking, did the board approve, did the board direct the administration to provide today 40 individual contracts? The answer to that is no. So I'm just asking, if that's what you want in closed session, we can provide that for you, it's easily done. I just want to know if that's what the board wants me to do.
It doesn't need to be in closed session.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Then I'm not going to provide you with 40 individual names, I'll provide you with the 11-month contracts with special provisions, the 11-month contracts without special provisions, the 12-month contracts with special provisions, the 12-month contracts without special permissions, and my contract. Those are the five categories.
You don't have that right not to provide that to us when it is public information.
It is public information, my concern is to, my goal is always to protect the board, and when you have contracts with people's names on them, and you begin talking about those publicly, you're in a very fine line. That's what I'm trying to say.
Let's have the contracts without the names, then.
We can provide whatever it is you like, I'm simply trying to protect the board.
40 contracts without names, because it doesn't matter who's really doing the positions we're evaluating if accurate.
The names can be redacted.
That's what I had said in the beginning, I don't need the names, I just want, you know, the positions. I mean, if anybody really wants to do the research, they can do it themselves, so, and if I have to poll every individual contract, I guess I can do it, because it's public knowledge.
Amy.
Not to step on our toes, but this is something the HR committee could review. Because we are going to committees.
In closed session?
Our committees.
They don't have, yeah, they don't have one.
They don't have to go into closed session, if Kim doesn't want the names on them, that should, that should be done in public, actually.
Yeah, I like to put it to committees.
Well, again, I have a problem with committees, because I can't make them all the time, so...
Is the board?
The board is the chair.
So...
But it was all board members.
If we do this by consensus of the board, if it's going to committee, but we guarantee that the committee is set at a time where Kim can be there for this one in particular, is that acceptable?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, is that okay, Kim?
No. But we have to with the majority of the board, don't we?
Okay, so we'll just make sure this is set at a time where you can come, is, what time are you available?
Not until 6:30.
6:30, okay, so it has to be the third committee, no, second or third committee set? Okay, which is, that's also on the agenda, is how to start the rotation. Okay. We are now, oh, yes, Amy.
Are you then consenting, since it's changed, that it'll be at a time when you are available? Because if it's not a consent, then we would need to do a roll call vote.
Would it help to have a motion?
If, if it's a consent, we don't have to have a motion, so...
Why don't you just do the motion, then we don't have to worry about that.
Okay.
It's not my call, it's your call.
I want to make a motion to have the administrator contracts at the, oh my God, when is our next meeting? At the board meeting. Since this has been, already been on the agenda, so I want to go, do it at the next board meeting.
Now, second that.
We're walking away from committees right now.
Correct, this is...
For this item, yes.
At the board.
And I'm not saying the committee can't discuss it, I just, because our committee's not going to be starting until August.
Is it next board meeting?
July...
14th.
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 No, it does not. We're not starting until August.
Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Eric?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
No.
Mr. Ebel?
No.
Ms. Faxon?
No.
Mr. Kokonowski?
Yes.
Mr. Pressley?
No.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Motion fails three to five.
Okay, so we'll put it on the committee, and I will make sure that it is posted at a time that you can attend. Which is, what an excellent segue, here we are, rotation of committees on first Mondays. So the HR has to be the second or third meeting. At least.
And we're talking about starting these on August...
First. The first Monday in August is August 4th. So committee meetings...
And I will be gone that day.
And plus, it's my birthday.
Well, go ahead and do it, I'm not going to have someone change...
Can you wait till September?
Is, is any of the contracts coming up?
For renewal.
For renewal before then, that we can't make a change to the contracts?
No, the first, the first of the new contracts were July 1 of 2013 through June 30 of 2015.
Because I don't understand all that 18-month stuff that you got to do to them.
Yeah, so the first ones are up on, expire, I should say, on June 30 of 2015. So, and then there are some that have been, like, the ones we employed this year, July 1 of 20... Yeah, even, even like Brian was still July 1 of 2013. Florence Haley's, Barb Doran's, Molly Demrose, theirs are effective this July 1st, so they'll be up in 16. So what I'll do is I'll, I'll check with legal counsel to make sure that we have the timelines correct, so that we're not running late.
That would...
Right, you want to be sure that you have a chance to discuss them before any action on the board is required.
Correct, that's, that's...
That's what I'll check on.
That's what I want to make sure, and, though I don't want to keep pushing this back, because things would get pushed back, we kind of, they kind of roll off the ducks back and we forget about them, so...
I'll tell you what, I'll find out tomorrow, and then I'll email Angel and Amy so they can forward that information on.
Okay. Okay. So where we are now is the rotation of the committees, and if that specifically isn't effective, what we can do is let the committee heads decide that, which is the next thing, unless someone has a specific thought on which committee we, my thought was alphabetical, because that was brilliant.
That's what I was just thinking, pick alphabetical, and be done with it, and so...
So what do we have, business, education? Come on, people, what's the last one?
Human resource policy and legislation.
HR policy.
Okay, so that's the order they'll be for the first meeting unless the heads decide otherwise, business meeting, the business committee first, education committee second, HR, policy, legislation will be third.
You'll just move them down.
And we will just...
Business will be second and third, and whatnot.
So this is for August the 4th?
Yep, and that's, that's out of respect for people who need to, because that last committee is just going to end up late, is the bottom line.
And what time do the meetings start?
5:30.
And how, how long were they again?
75 minutes.
Please say Chris has a joke, but then I'm going to put the gavel down, and everybody's going to quit speaking and move to the different chairs.
Yes.
Depends on who has the gavel.
I was going to say, I will not have the gavel. Okay, so committee stakeholder composition and representation.
I want to speak on this one, too.
You are. Wait, wait, wait.
And I'm just going to say, are we not, where do we vote on people to run the committees?
That's what the stakeholder representation is, but hang on, I'm sorry, Reed, you are on here as well? Nope, you're on superintendent's search, sorry. Okay.
I'm on this one, too.
Yes, you are, come on up. Let me see who signed up first, Sam signed up first, then Reed.
In the past years when we had committees, and correct me if I'm wrong, the HR committee is composed entirely of, is composed of the entire school board. Is that correct?
Oh, just board members.
Okay, well, you might want to change that to entire school board, I don't know, that's up to you. But policy and legislation has always been a separate committee, and judging from your problems with HR, and your problems with policies that I've just seen today, maybe you ought to think about that again. The staff morale plan would be a good place to go to the policy committee, and it should be a separate committee, and it should have citizen members on it. It should be able to be open and let people come to talk to about it. But what Kim just said, the contracts, that should be, go to the HR committee, it should be discussed there. I really think you're hurting yourself. If you would use the committees properly, like the HR committee, when they meet and talk about the, the contracts, they then will forward to the board a recommendation. If they approve it, they'll forward to the board saying, we recommend this for approval. If they don't approve it, you could still ask for it to come to the board, even though it's not approved by the committee, and let the whole board hear about it. You've got policy on top of policy that contradict each other, and nobody can understand, including yourselves. And you need to go through all those, and you're not going to have time to do that, and also do all the HR issues that are going to come up in one committee. You should separate those committees, have a separate HR and a separate policy and legislation as was always done in the past.
Reed?
Anyone thinks that these committees will be run properly, you're living in a dream world. Doesn't make any difference, for example, how anyone answers your dog and pony show questions that you referred to. The school board has already made up their mind and will point and stack the board like they're, that they will attempt to stack the committees. The committees that I don't, didn't, and don't approve, never got a chance to talk on that, you did that at a meeting two times ago that the public didn't get a chance to speak about it, okay? Not even the superintendent agreed that committees will work. You know? Oh, then somebody's new, a couple of board members, at least one of them, board member thing, oh yeah, but we've gotten some new board members. Well, this board hasn't elected enough new and good members to change. And if you, three good board members don't stand up against the bad ones, this board is doomed. Now, let me read here, the standing committee of the bar, because that's the more than, where, you know, a committee may also consist of up to three voting. May, may, doesn't say shall. That's very important, because I don't want to see three of their appointed buddies on this, on these committees making decisions, and that's what they'll do. That's what this new, that's what this bunch will do to you. So you better start saying, let's, and by the way, some of your county affiliated people who tout the committees, even your county top committees have all just members on the committees. Stevens Point's city committee, committee meetings, standing committees have nothing but members. Plant Commission has a few, you know, some, citizen members. So you don't have to appoint members to this committee, and you shouldn't. I want to see elected officials, not appointed people, running this school district. And so should you. Because when you start appointing it, and when this board is already formed, there are little alliances here. Honesty in a properly run school board isn't going to happen. And by the way, boards, you know, you, because these committees, here's what you're thinking, these committees, especially the county, are going to run the whole show, and see, everything's going to be different now. And that was the whole trouble before, because you board members didn't trust the people. There's no trust here again, because of this, of this, these phony alliances you're, that's formed already. So it's not, they're not going to work. I know, you guys went ahead and done it, it's going to be a waste of time. So there you go. So don't put any, any citizen members on.
Okay. So what we need to do is decide who the heads of committees are going to be, and Amy, what do you have for interest?
I received one email in regards to board members who are interested in having...
That was OK, yeah.
It was Chris.
Surprise, surprise.
She's interested in the HR curriculum, which I assume is education services one.
Either one.
Okay, so let's deal with that first.
Angel, can I make a comment on what Sam said?
I think so, yes.
Yeah, yep.
Yep.
If that...
Can you speak louder in this mic?
If that first item, the human resources policy and legislation proves to be too much for that 75-minute period, the board would then consider creating another committee to help that?
We can do whatever we choose.
I see a head shaking, no?
Oh, that's fine.
That's, yeah, we can, we talked about that.
I mean, we should, it's a work in progress.
Yep.
I presume then you're volunteering to be on that committee?
No, I'm not, I... Fortunately, unless you're going to make the committee start at 6:30, I cannot be at a single one before 6:30. So that was a board decision, I already voiced that I can't make them, but it seems like you want to exclude certain board members.
That's not true.
That's not the case at all, and at the time, we didn't have two people who could never make it to a 6:30 meeting, so I think we need to re-discuss that, I mean, the topic...
No, that actually was discussed.
We did.
We want to discuss this. Because we are rotating the committees, it will end up that someone, well, oh wait, I know, I remember this discussion now, is because the committees are rotating, it would be one missed... Every three months. I'm up for creative solutions, does someone have one?
I did, but no one voted for it, so, is polling that HR policy committee on the, the, um, third month, third Monday of the month. But the board chose to change, and not do that for one board member, but run it at 5:30 and leave out two board members. That was voted down, so...
You know, we would, why don't we try this and see, if we need to change it, we can change it.
Can I just ask, what, what committee would you like to be on?
Be on, to be a part of?
Yeah.
I'd like to learn about all of them, I don't necessarily want to chair any of them.
And, but there's, there's not one in particular that you want to be on?
Oh, the one I'm most interested in.
Because I would have no problem always meeting, whatever committee I end up on, I have no problem meeting at 5:30. And if there's one that you want to be on that would start at 6, whatever, 6:30, 6:45, I think it is, you know?
Well, my, my two main interests, I have two of them, is the human resources and educational services, so that's two.
And which one do you want to be on?
Well, again, I, for, when we had the committees before, I went to almost every committee meeting so I could know, but...
What's your number one choice?
Well, since, since I'm interested in the HR, and I think we need to change our HR advisory committee or whatever like that, when we go into negotiations, that one I'd be interested in. Policy and legislation I don't want.
Sorry.
It's a package deal. And, and the educational service, 'cause I was on that committee before.
Well, I have no problem, and let me just throw this out as a suggestion, that we have that committee meeting always be the, the third one or the second one. That way, you would always make at least two of them, and you would-
But, but what they were trying to do is make it easier for the administration, so the same administrator doesn't have to be late.
Actually, it's, it's, it was, that conversation took place when we, we still believed that the administrative assistants were gonna be taking the minutes. That's no longer the case. The board secretary's gonna take all the minutes, 'cause that's what the board said they wanted for consistency. Secondly, you're gonna populate these committees with people other than board members, correct? It's only fair to them that they not always have the third meeting or the second meeting. So the idea was to make it fair, was to rotate those. So you have, that was the reason, that was the discussion that took place. It wasn't just the board members, it was the people on those committees, so they wouldn't always have to be the second or third ones.
Okay.
But in the, sorry-
Yep, go ahead.
But in the past, we always had two meetings at a, always a set time, and the other two meetings always at a set time. We didn't, don't do notes, so if you were on the, the HR committee, you met Monday at seven fifteen.
But we didn't go that late, Kim. We're, seventy-five minutes each, starting at five-thirty, that third committee is going to-
That's why I'm suggesting split them. You know, I'm still suggesting split them, because you-
Well, and I think-
You want business?
Yeah.
Okay, so-
Taking consideration, we are, it seems like pointing at a ninth person, that they may wanna chair a committee, they may, you know, their timeframe, who knows if they'll even be able to make it at five-thirty, again-
We have to pick committee chairs tonight.
The chief of police, can he be here at five-thirty?
I know, this, try this on for a solution momentarily. It's all about solutions, you don't like it, I'm okay with it. Trish expressed an interest in being on the business committee and heading the business committee. She just expressed it verbally in the hallway, she did not send an email, she just said it to me. That would be an interesting idea, that that one always meets at five-thirty, because she is always available at five-thirty. It would eliminate the two of you from being on that committee, but it wasn't either one of your first choices. And so then whoever Trish's committee can always meet, then we'll flip-flop the other two. Back and forth, you can always be there for them. I mean, or we can just come up with a solid blank always time for each one. But it would, it would eliminate that you never have to miss a committee meeting.
That you serve on, you would have to miss whatever.
Correct.
Okay, good.
But it's a start.
I don't like that you wouldn't be able to be there. So what do we think of that as a solution?
I think it's good.
Well, I'm mostly interested in what-
The people who are involved are the ones that she's thinking for.
Right, well, and my schedule is from week to week, so, but I wanna always prepare for the worst, so. It's, it's fine, as long as it's not too confusing for the public, so.
So, so with that, we kind of just elected Trish the head of committee and gave her a permanent spot. I wanna make sure that everybody understands we did that, is that an okay thing?
That kinda came about in a funny way, but that's fine with me, I'm good with that. And, and if it allows you to be at the committees that you wanna be on, honestly, that's more important, because I don't think it's right that you guys not get to go just because of your job requirements, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that you should be, that's the whole idea here.
Okay. Then that one consensus, nodded. Business always meets at five-thirty, Trish is the head of the business committee. One down. Okay. Now let's return to Chris, who is the only person who submitted in a request, she wanted to be the head of HR, uh, policy.
Well, I put them both down, and one of the reasons I put HR down is that Keith was relatively new, we had the handbook. He learned a lot, and I learned a lot from him. And after the first year, when the handbook was done, I was like, taken off the committee, taken off as chair. I never really got to follow through on a lot of the things that I would've liked to gone through and done. Someone new from HR, um, I think it's a really good experience. I've been chair of curriculum, I, I don't care which committee I'm on, I'll serve on any committee, it's fine with me. I think they're all good, they're all interesting, so I don't have a problem. If someone else wants to do it, I'm just offering to do it. I enjoyed it, um, so.
Okay, we can do this by consensus, as long as we're doing it. I, I think because you asked for it, do you, do you have a preference? Would you like to, you said, I, I heard you say HR is your preference, the HR policy legislation?
HR, this is just my personal opinion, I think HR is a tough one. I love curriculum, I love the educational services. I was on that quite a bit and chaired it quite a bit. It's kind of, it's really joyful, but I think right now, we've got some HR things that are going on, and, um, I think it would be more of a challenge, so I would like that, but it's the board's decision.
Yep.
While I agree with you, the HR and policy and legislation has a lot going on. I'm not sure HR is where you should be, only because, um, that's part of the whole, that whole turmoil and the whole, um, morale issue. I just, I, I'm of the opinion that I think we need new blood in there. The rest of the board can agree with me or not, that's fine, that's just my two cents.
I don't know if I wanna really do this, but I'm gonna stick my neck out, is, is if you, 'cause I don't, if no one else said anything, and I'd be interested in trying, um, to chair somebody, I can't believe I just said that out loud. If you wanna do the educational one, I will do the HR one. And I don't know if I wanna do the policy one, but I know it's gonna come all together. But I will, I will rely on the board members to, um, help me dearly.
Well, my preference is the HR, but I'm willing to serve on any other committee. So, I, the board can decide whatever, and that's fine, and I'm fine.
Okay, so Amy, what do we do? We have two people offering, is there anyone else who's offering to do business?
Jeff.
Sorry, educational? Educational, no?
I, I wanna serve on the, on the budget committee.
Got it, got it, okay.
Well, since there's two people with interest, it would have to go to a, I nominate, I second, and then a vote.
Are you interested in leading the educational services committee?
I don't want to have this sound poorly, but I think with all the discussion with the HR morale and the, how the negotiations and all that, would, I would not think that would be a good position for you right now, Chris, so I, I would prefer to stick with the HR.
Okay, so then what we're gonna need to do then is do a vote?
Yeah, I'll nominate Chris for the HR committee. Chair the HR committee.
Do you need a second? Do you need a second, Chris?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Just a second.
We're still gonna have a problem here.
Nope.
If Chris gets elected, then we will probably not have the educational service one. But if the other direction, she's willing to do educational service, and Kim's willing to do HR, sounds like if no one else is willing to do education, we're putting ourselves in a bind. Or can you, can Chris chair both committees?
I'm not going to-
No, you're right, you are correct.
We're gonna pass the president's assigned committee chairments.
We don't do that.
We had to eliminate policy. Okay, so, hmm.
Jeff, you can, you can chair a committee, can't you, Jeff?
Give me a moment.
Jeff, chair curriculum.
So, well, we're gonna have to vote then. So we have a, we need another nomination.
I nominate Kim Shirk for, um, the head of the HR Policy and Legislation Committee.
I'll second that.
Okay. Do we do this by ballot, Amy, or just a verbal vote? What do we do?
I don't have ballots, maybe?
Let's just-
Let's just, if everyone's okay with just a voice vote-
Everyone's okay with that.
If I call your name, you say who you would like to vote for, is everyone, all right?
Sure.
Okay, Ms. Baker.
Oh my goodness, why am I-
Why don't you start at this, I might not wanna leave here.
Yeah, why don't you start with us?
Gotta do it sooner or later.
Do you have that quarter? Always gonna pull out a quarter, I love it.
Would you like me to come back to you?
Yeah, I would, actually.
Mr. Evil?
Chris.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Kim.
Mr. Presley?
Kim.
Ms. Scott?
Chris.
Ms. Shirk?
Kim.
Ms. Totten?
Kim.
Ms. Baker?
Have you called on our president yet?
No, I do the final vote on these things.
Chris. You wanted the final one.
Yeah, you got, you asked for it.
Ms. Paxson?
I'm sorry, tell me where it is.
Um, three, four.
Four.
Three for Kim, four for Chris. Do they have, do we have to have a simple majority? So it doesn't really matter what her vote is?
Well-
Oh, no, it does. Yeah, I'm sorry, I was having a moment, I was having a moment. Three for Kim, four for Chris.
Nope.
Great, no.
Four for Kim.
It's four for Kim.
Four for Kim, three for Chris.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Four for Kim, three for Chris, right, okay.
Give me, I'm, I apologize, I'm gonna take thirty seconds to think. I know, I'm not asleep. To expedite the situation, I'm gonna vote for Kim.
That doesn't make me feel very good, but thank you. That doesn't make me feel very good at all, but, you know, that's my confidence in my leader.
Wow, I'm absolutely willing to chair curriculum. It's the most joyful thing we do.
I did not mean that as it sounded, so let me correct that.
Nope, you're fine, you already spoke. Yep, so.
Guys, the only way we're gonna make things better is if you let people explain themselves, it's, I don't, I didn't take it.
So Chris, are you willing to take the edu-
Absolutely. All right, so if the committee heads can meet, if people can express interest on what committees they'd like to be on, what do we need, four board members?
No, it's a maximum of four.
Let's have, let's, let's work on the committee heads getting together, and, and it, I think we agreed that it would be the committee heads, Jeff and I, that would figure out who would be on what committee, but I'd like to know what you're interested in, yes?
As Sam mentioned, if for whatever reason, a board member for the regular meeting is not able to attend, so they offset the number, would it be a quorum, then?
They're all posted, because most times, well, I shouldn't say most times, but a lot of times, there is a quorum there, 'cause the other board members wanna come. So they're all posted.
Okay.
And the chair, um, if, if you can't for some reason make a meeting in that, you would let the chair know, or you could let, uh, Amy or somebody know, and then they would find another board member that would-
The chair of the standing committee may designate another member of the board to join the committee to make at least a quorum.
I'll be there, but I'm ex officio.
No, no. We, that, we had that issue when I was a chair, and I got Angel to be on, and Chris came, 'cause Chris went to the president and the policy stayed, I have the power.
Let's- Okay.
We had it different ways.
Yep. So, are there any other conversations that need to happen regarding committees?
Well, how are we gonna know who's, wants to be on each committee? Are they sending us an email, are they gonna let us know right now?
What would you like to do, Board of Education? You said finance?
Can't you just let Amy know?
Yeah, why don't we just send a request to Amy? And she can send it on to the chairs. And then we do have a new, possibly a new member coming, so-
Okay.
They can fill in it. What do we do on the community?
For the community, are we gonna put that out in the public?
Hang, hang on a second. I'm, I'm looking at this, it, um, says that, it, it doesn't indicate who selects the committee members.
I know, we talked about it being the committee heads, and Jeff and I, just kind of figuring it out.
Okay, then it says, "Board officers, superintendent, and chairpersons of standing committees shall appoint board members and citizens to the standing committees." That's what it says.
Okay, so we need to put something in the paper, right? I, I wasn't around for this policy before, something goes in the paper asking for people to express an interest in serving on committees other than HR.
Correct.
Okay. And then people will submit their interest, and that'll be dispersed. I've asked this question before, there's not usually a ton of, it's not like we have to weed through a pile like this. It'll, yep.
Because of HR, the community cannot serve on that committee?
Correct.
So can the first X number of minutes be about HR or the other parts of the po, you know, policy and legislation? 'Cause we're, really are shorting the community from being a part of policymaking or whatever.
Correct, yeah.
That's what I was just gonna say, thank you, Alex.
As the head can ma, can make that decision, however she wants to divide it up.
So we are going to allow community members on the policy and legis, like, HR policy and legislation?
The problem is, how are you gonna do that when they're the same committee?
Yeah, that's-
It's not gonna work. You're gonna have to break up the committee if that's what you do.
The public can still have an input.
Yeah.
Show up to the meeting.
True, yeah.
And I think for policy especially, I think, they go so long on some of those policies, you might wanna just do that, they can have input if they want, but.
Just to be clear, it says, "Board officers, of which there are four."
Oh.
Superintendent and chairpersons of the standing committees. That's what it says.
So, everyone's invited except you two. To decide for assigning who's on the committees, so Alex is also included.
One last meeting for us.
What, board members?
Well, if people, if people know what they wanna be on, absolutely. Do people have an idea?
People have an idea, whatever they're-
I mean, I would like to know who, who's interested in what.
We can tally right now, I, I had two that I'm interested in, we can just start tallying and see if it's too much or too little.
Okay, Alex, you are on-
I'd like human resources and education.
Okay, Jeff, you're interested in business, finance.
Finance, and also legislation, you know, I mean, that's part of that, because-
Yes, I was hoping liaison.
And I'd probably be at the meetings even if I wasn't on a committee, but I'd serve on that. So if they need me on that committee, I would serve on that committee.
Okay, Lisa, what's your interest?
No preference.
On all of them.
It's Jeff, do you have a preference?
I recall saying-
The policy, not the policy, it's the finance.
Okay. I'm not on anything. You stated yours, you're ahead, and you're ahead. Oh, but you wanna serve on another one?
We can be on something else, that's what I was gonna ask Trish, she can be on another one, 'cause we're gonna have to.
That's right. I want to be on whatever comes at six-thirty.
Do we want to flip-flop those last two, or should we just set up right now that this one meets at this time, this one meets at this time, this one meets at this time? What do you guys wanna do, your thoughts?
For me?
Well, if, if, if we're gonna make it that the, I'm sorry. If we're gonna make it that the human resources, the community might not be able to be involved, or, or something on the committee, that maybe should be the last one, because then they're not necessarily having to be there.
For one, and then break, and, yeah.
It's like logic wins the day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And what was it, I missed the logic?
So educational services would be in the middle, because community members would serve, and then they can stay if they wanna listen, but there won't be any community members inconvenienced for the last one.
Yep. So it's consistently the same.
So my HR is always gonna be the last?
Always.
And which one does that start again?
Eight oh five.
Eight thirty, is it?
No. Anyways, we'll get the times again.
We don't have breaks between, you're five-thirty to six-forty-five, six-forty-five to eight oh five, eight oh five to nine twenty-nine thirty, something like that.
And that's not ever gonna happen, but we can hope.
Right. Is that consensus, everybody thinks that that is fine, to keep them in that consistent order?
I actually think that's easier for people, that their meeting is always up-
That's what I said.
Okay, so therefore, Trish, you would like to serve on the educational services committee?
I will.
'Cause that's the next one.
Yeah, you too.
Then I got all three of them. So I'm probably gonna be there anyways.
So are you, are you guys getting this up here? Who you got?
Write it down, and I'll get it.
Okay, so, yeah, we're good. Lisa's willing to do anything, so we, we have the-
Well, who, did you write them down? Presley did. Presley only said- Presley did. Presley only said business.
Yep, he doesn't have a preference on that.
So on the business, we have Ebel, Presley, and then Trish. Right? Okay. I don't know. On the human resource, we have Alex, Ebel, Chris, and Kim.
So we're done.
Yep. On educational, we have Alex, Chris, I would like to be on that one, but I don't need to, and Trish. So that would be four, but if Totten wants to be-
Kim. Everybody can see it.
Okay, you got them a little bit different than I do. Business?
I just said them all.
Oh, yeah, you're fine. I did them with, um, Ebel, Presley, and Trish was the business.
Jeff, Jeff.
Oh, I didn't see the plural there. Educational, which is third, I got Alex, Chris, and Trish.
Guess that's better than square Jeffs, huh?
Same difference.
And I would be interested in that one, but not needed because Totten's not there. Yes, I know.
Okay, so what did you say for, who wanted to be on?
HR.
HR.
Uh, Alex, Ebel, Chris.
And Kim?
Chris. Okay, so Lisa, where would you like to go?
I have no preference. I mean, I really-
Can you put both Jeffs there? Because that's a little confu- that's a little-
It looks like it's short.
Yeah. Okay, so Jeff, P.
So put me on business.
Lisa. And-
And P for new person.
Oh, yeah, we have a new person.
Yeah.
The new person needs to be.
New person in education, there you go.
New B.
There you go.
Just kidding. What do we call it on the vote sheet? Vacant.
Sure they'll appreciate that.
Hi, are you vacant?
Well, at least if we can give them the last committee.
Oh, that's true. They can't go on the last one. That's a full vote.
Relatively painless.
So there, there are three board members with one committee and four, five with two.
Looks good to me.
Yep, I think it's, it's reasonable.
Because on the HR, even though we don't have, um-
No, four.
Jeff's on one, I'm on one, the newbie's on one.
There's four on one.
Well, Kim-
Kim's only on one.
And Lisa's only on one.
And so is the new person.
And Presley's only on one.
Right.
Although I think that's interesting.
Do we want to remedy that, or is that?
I'm good with it.
About nothing.
Whatever everybody wanted.
Because we can always come to them, I mean, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Momentarily, that's where we are. Yay us.
And you're gonna send us a little, somebody's gonna, Amy, you're gonna send us something on there, aren't you? Come on.
Okay, let's go to the next topic, please.
Yeah, it's like eleven thirty.
August fourth, and I won't be there.
Information. Okay. And distribution of board pack management.
Item C, all those items are mine, they've been moved forward. I'd like to move them forward again because of the time. Thank you, that was thoughtful. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, superintendent search, Sam and Reed have both signed up to speak to this. Yes, you are.
I'll make it very simple. The district needs to hire either a superintendent or a district administrator. This board has proven already it is not capable of the day-to-day operations of this district. You couldn't decide three, four, or five minutes today? You just spent an hour putting names on the board for committees? A number of things. The board needs to concentrate on its job, which is to set policy. Then you pass that policy down to your superintendent or district administrator and hold them responsible for carrying that policy out and also getting information back to you in a timely manner. You didn't do that. That's why we have a failure. During the last election cycle, I was the most vocal opponent of Dr. Winiger getting his contract extended. And I told him a day before the meeting, I still feel that way, and I feel that way because I feel like there was a personality problem, not because of anything he did. But a lot of the friction that was caused was caused by this board. You allowed things to get out of hand. You're not capable of running the district, I'm sorry. You may think you are, but you're not. And you proved that when after the elections, you had a meeting and this man offered to resign. And you said, "No, he can't, we won't accept his resignation." Why? Because you wanted him gone, but you wanted your damn pound of flesh too. And that's not the way to do things. That puts you in just as bad a light, in my eyes, as the problems we had before. You didn't want him to go out with any dignity, you wanted him to go out on your terms. That's not how you run a district. You need an administrator or a superintendent. You need to form a search committee of board members, management, employees, community members. You don't need to hire somebody, we've done that enough times in the past. You're so up on, on, on the finances here with this, uh, this group that's hiring teachers and giving all that money to them, why don't you do what they do? Put an ad on Craigslist for a superintendent, that's where they're advertising for the teachers. But a lot of you didn't under- didn't know that. That's ridiculous. Let's trust our students to somebody with kind of a Craigslist. We know we've got to look inside the district at people, we've got people who have the credentials necessary. We have to look at people who have worked in the district previously and have the credentials. We have to look at people that care about this district, know this district, are willing to roll their sleeves up and sit down with all the employee groups, all the members of the district, and talk. You don't have to agree with them, but you gotta listen, you gotta talk. And that's why we have to find a superintendent or a district administrator. It'll give you a chance to focus on your job, which is policy.
Okay.
And by God, your policies stink right now.
All right, Reed, it's your turn. It's Reed's turn.
Your three minutes are up, sorry.
Okay.
Now, the president just said a while back, uh, she's up for creative solutions. How about try and run in this dysfunctional, uh, school administration slash, uh, board without an all-powerful superintendent? Unless you believe everything is working fine despite the vote of no confidence from the employees. And I think maybe, uh, some of you who want to run without a superintendent should ask the ones who are advocating for a superintendent, that, you know, did he think he's doing, is everything working fine? I'd, I'd love to hear that, and so would the voters like to hear. That'd be a surprise, because they'd be only, some of the few people that think this school system is running fine. And, you know, then I'd like to, these people, like, to, same people, defend a, a statement, I'm looking at the person, can't mention names, she, uh, who claims that we need to appoint a superintendent to formulate a vision. Well, defend that statement and why nine elected school members can't, but one appointed superintendent could. It makes no sense. And if the president's staff, uh, which I believe could handle the, uh, running this, bringing in advising the school board, but the same person believes that, uh, that, that they can't do it, then, um, if, if, if you, if you believe that, you know, half a dozen staff can't handle it, uh, why do you believe one superintendent can? And then if you believe the staff can't do it, why would you even consider looking internally for someone to be the superintendent if that's what, what you end up doing, which, you know? A lot of this stuff makes no sense. And the two elected, uh, or two affiliated, uh, board members here that are affiliated with the county said you're a great job that Patty Dryer's doing setting the vision. Well, you'd, I'm guarantee if you read the news, you're in a minority. She's been just shut down by the board, uh, head of the board, Eiswog, here several times. So, uh, let's get, let's get with the program here on, on how, how well Patty Dryer is actually doing. And once again, she, by the way, is elected, not appointed. So, uh, what I'm saying is, if you guys go with, without a superintendent, to be innovative, you can do it, it's been proven now, it can be done. And, uh, you have your administrators, uh, run it. In fact, why don't you call them up here and, and, and see, you know, have them come here and ask them if they can do it. And then if they can't get the job done, your job is to fire them. That's what your job is. You hire good people to run the system and then you'll get honest answers. But when you got, they gotta filter everything through the all-powerful superintendent here, it isn't gonna happen. It isn't gonna happen. And it's about time you could school our members, challenge these other people so that voters know how these people think.
Okay. Um, I actually don't have anything. We agreed to have this on the agenda every time until we decide where to go. And to the-
I have something.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Alex.
As I passed out earlier, um, I was contacted-
Can you speak up?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And into the mic, please. Thank you.
I was contacted by, uh, the school district of Amrell in reply to what they've read in the Stevens Point Journal. And I emailed back and forth a conversation with them that I'd like to read here now. What was written to me by, let's see, Nicholas Kran, who is the superintendent of business operations, human resource direction, director, executive committee. He wrote, "Mr. Kokonowski, I am emailing you today in regards to an article I read in the Stevens Point Journal in regards to the school board's discussion about not replacing your district administrator. My purpose in emailing you is to inform you that we have operated without a district administrator in Amrell for the past three school years. The education world is full of challenges and neither model will eliminate those challenges. Strong, successful district administrators are difficult to find and even harder to retain. We have built our executive committee, executive committee model to sustain such, excuse me, sustain success for the long term regardless of the challenges the district may face. We have created a job description for the purpose and an executive flow chart outlining the duties, responsibilities of each administrator to ensure none of the typical responsibilities of the district administrator are overlooked. Our executive committee is made up of four positions, our three principals and the business manager. The development of this model is still a work in progress, however, the progress our district has made in the past three years undeniably greatly exceeds the progress made during my first four years with the district. I respect and understand the position of those that believe that having one leader provides consistent direction, but I would greatly, excuse me, I would respectfully argue that our four minds that are heavily involved in the day-to-day operations of the district exceed the ability of the one person. Further, I would point out that the typical lifespan of two to three years for the district administrator in a district creates an unnecessary challenge. If we can be of any help to you, please let me know." And my reply was, "Thank you, Nick, I greatly appreciate that you shared this with me. If you would not mind sending me an attachment, I would be interested in reading the outlined job descriptions that your district created for these positions with the executive flow chart that outlined the duties, responsibilities of each administrator." And then I further say, "Would you be willing to speak at one of our board meetings in an open session to describe how this could benefit our district?" His reply, "Mr. Kokonowski, attach our, the two documents you requested to see. Our board president was in today and I shared with him that I had emailed you. He offered his contact information, should you be interested in discussing this with a board member. I will not reveal his name or the numbers because I don't want the community to come right out and start calling him. Additionally, if your board would be interested in meeting with us, I am confident a group of us would be available to do so." So he is saying he would be willing. If they are interested, please share with me some potential dates. Thank you, Nicholas Kran. And then he did, and those, I passed out as well, the two, um, attachments that he said, sent me. I won't go into that. Now granted, I understand that the district there, student-wise, I believe it's 1,200, give or take, so there's a size difference to our district, but I feel that there's an opportunity to maybe learn something that we can incorporate into our school district. Maybe this is a model that we should be considering, and they're more than willing to come here and speak to us, it sounds like. We just have to come up with some dates and present it to them. Thank you.
I'd love to have, hear what they have to say. Can we schedule something?
Uh, if it is what the board desires. Two, I'm, I'm, well, let's see if this is what the board desires. Do we want to hear from this group of people?
I do.
I do. Yes, yes, and yes. Okay, well, those were the three that were in favor of the other, of, uh, not having a superintendent, so we need to hear from?
I think, I think it sounds very interesting, and I think for a really, for a tiny district like this is, it sounds very innovative, and my guess is they all get along really well, they can make it work. I would be interested in hearing from him, but tonight, while we've been sitting here, we have probably scheduled four or five hours of things at different meetings to be taking place. And I just, it's, it's, you know, if maybe one of them wants to come and speak once for ten minutes, you know, I'd be with, I'd be good with that, but we have, we, we're scheduling stuff and scheduling stuff and scheduling stuff, and it's quarter till twelve, and we still have things on our regular agenda. I'm just, we just keep, like, there's no control over how much we schedule, and that's what I struggle with. I, I just, I, I have a hard time imagining that this model would work for a district this large, but I'd like to hear from him, I would just like to keep it short.
So a quick question now, if this was scheduled, if this topic was scheduled on our agenda sooner, this would have been potentially voted in to, to go ahead and do this, but now that we have all these other items on the agenda, we might not do this, a great opportunity. That's what you're stating.
I don't have a problem with, I'm, I'm not saying I disagree with him, I think it's very innovative and very creative. It sounds to me like, I mean, I read the whole thing, you didn't need to read it because I read the whole thing while-
For the public, to no one, for the papers, the media. Because they're gonna criticize the board for not taking this opportunity.
No, I think it's very innovative, and my guess is these people get along really well, and that, that, that's how they can make it work.
They'll teach us a thing or two.
Um, my concern is, is we're just scheduling and scheduling and scheduling, and somebody's gotta say, "You know what, we can schedule this, but we're gonna schedule it for ten minutes," or, "We're just gonna schedule it for fifteen minutes," or whatever. We just keep adding on, and I'm looking at the clock thinking, "Wow, you know, we might just start meeting twice a week, eight times a month."
Uh, Lisa?
I totally understand that frustration. I personally don't think these are the things that need to be cut. I think when we get documentation from our administration, I don't think they need to stand up there and regurgitate what's in here. We can all read, that needs to be limited, they should have five or ten minutes, and then we should be given time for questions. That being said, I also believe as an elected official, I committed to this community to do what it takes to get the job done. And if it takes scheduling another meeting, then that's what it takes. So, it's the job. If you can't make the meeting, you know, that's your choice, but there, you know, when you run for the school board, you're committing to do a job. And I just feel strongly that, um, we need to step up and do it. And if there's a lot to be done, there's a lot to be done.
Kim?
One of the things that Lisa just said too is, is, you know, we have to limit our presentation. Again, um, you know, this wasn't in our packet, Alex, that's why you read and I do understand that, but this is all in our packet, you know, all the stuff that was sitting up here and, um, you know, and then we get criticized for asking too many questions or speaking too long. That's our job, is to discuss it. They don't have to keep reading the stuff over and over. And again, and I'm gonna pick out Keel, I don't know if he's still there, I mean, he was very quick, yes.
He's wonderful.
I picked, picked out the points because I wanted certain ones, and we could have all done that. You know, it was a very short and sweet thing. Oh my God, what was I gonna say? Remedy to our long meetings? Have every Monday. I've suggested it over and over again. We're throwing these committees in there. Yeah, we're gonna be here every Monday, so.
But that's not what we're discussing. What we're discussing is, do we want these people to come? And so, I need to hear from the people who were not necessarily in favor of not having a superintendent, because we don't want to waste these people's time. So, Jeff, yes?
I will speak. Alex, thanks for looking into this. I mean, took some initiative, and I do appreciate that. And it sounds very intriguing. Again, I can appreciate there's a big difference between this school district and the Amherst School District. At some time in the future, possibly, I don't think this board is capable of running this district. That's, can change every year. But I just don't see it happening. I would propose that we start a search if we want to continue to discuss this. I think it's great, but we should start looking for a superintendent.
Can I comment? The rest of the material that you did have, it did not state that the board ran the school board, I mean, did not run the district. This is not that model. This is a model of executive committee. It's completely different. It's foreign, besides what I read there. And there's much more that they could elaborate on. This is one extra way that we could handle this. And if you saw in here, when I read his title, he is the superintendent of Business Operations, and he is on that committee. Four heads making one choice, instead of one head making all the choices.
Okay, Chris?
I think it's a very, very neat idea, and I can see it work, I can see how it might work. But I think we have a very, very large district. Our offerings and all of the things that we are involved in, I am sure they're not. And at this point, I would just like to continue our search for a superintendent. And I, it's not that I disagree with it at all. I think there are models of all kinds of things that could work. But I would agree that how much, you know, we could keep adding, and adding, and adding every Monday, every Wednesday, everybody, the more we add on, you know. And I know we're all doing our jobs, but I would like to, you know, let's, let's keep moving. Let's do something.
Jeff, do you have thoughts?
No, I appreciate you putting this together, Alex.
Kim? I'd like to finish my comment when I was interrupted. They're saying there's four positions, three principals, and a business manager. How many directors do we have here that already run portions of our district? And how many more principals we have? So, we're not saying that only four people are gonna run our district and bring it in. We already have five in the cabinet, I'm not quite sure. So, five or six that would come. So, that's, I mean, I appreciate this, and I think this would, is a good opportunity to do it now. And mold those people while he is still here, this is how it's gonna be. So, we're not just leaving them hanging, but...
We may not have this opportunity again, to just have them come and us listen to them, and let it be if they agree for 10 minutes.
How far away is Amherst?
Amherst is closer than Oshkosh.
Between Oshkosh and here.
65 miles.
Now, they did not, I'm sorry, what I wrote, or he wrote to me, it wasn't very specific if they would still be willing to come here or we have to go there. I didn't find that out completely, but I assume it sounds like they'll do what they need to as long as the dates align.
If he comes and speaks, I think it would be really important to have our cabinet members here.
Yeah, definitely.
They normally are.
Because the only way that this could work is if they want to make it work.
Right.
And we don't know that. We don't know if they do.
Sure. I presume that the only two people that would be coming to speak would maybe be the president of their school board and Nicholas, but I could be wrong. Maybe all four of the heads, so it'd be a total of five people. I don't know, just my guess.
Okay.
It sounds like I heard that there's a lot, this is neat, this is a, you know, Chris said it, Jeff was implying it, everyone's saying, kind of, it's neat. So, why is the answer gonna be no? Because we don't have any time? Or ultimately, everyone else already made their decision, and it's gonna be five to three? That is what's gonna happen.
And, and we all have to admit, it's not working now.
Are we giving a new camera? Are we gonna have this camera? That was the other question I posed, that's kinda similar. I still think we're gonna end up with a new camera, even though we'll get the old camera a lot.
Okay, I don't know where we're going with this, but we need to decide. My concern would primarily be wasting these people's time if this is not a viable option that this board is going to consider, not, is it a good idea, that sort of thing.
But what you're really asking is, are we gonna have open minds if they came and spoke?
Why don't we just call them and ask them if we're feeling like we're wasting their time?
Because we need the majority of the board to grieve to something like this, that's why.
Then let's table this, let's ask them, and they will respond, and then maybe it goes away. Or maybe they'll say, "Yeah, we're coming."
That's why you bring them here.
Okay. Jeff?
Sure.
We need to decide what to do about this. You and I are the two that have not given a firm opinion on it?
Well, Alex is gonna get more information on if they're gonna come here or not. I mean, I'm willing to listen to anything. I mean, any good idea, I think I have an open mind as far as that goes. But I understand Angel's concern that, you know what, we don't want them to make a wasted trip either. If nobody wants to listen to that, if they do come, I do want to compensate them for, obviously, their mileage.
Lisa?
You know, like Chris has pointed out a number of times, and I don't remember your exact number, if it was four or five superintendents we've had over the last, I don't know what you said, 10, 12 years, whatever. There's obviously something wrong with the way we're running things here. You know, you're probably the only consistent in that whole time. So, to say that, you know, we're not willing to listen, and a lot of times, these little districts are miles ahead of the big ones, whether you like to admit to it or not. They've had to cut way before anybody else, they've had to be more efficient, and they've had to think outside the box, where the larger districts have had the resources where they haven't had to. So, you know, like, like earlier this evening, wanting to have open mind to discuss things, to not be willing to listen to a new innovative idea of how to run a district.
Sorry, not to cut you off, but why don't you bring us some more information, see if they're willing to?
I'll bring them the information, but we need to also tell them the times. So, let's come up with some times. I'll tell them, they'll say, "Yes, this'll work," or "No, it won't."
Why don't you give them our schedule? I mean, if it's a 10-minute presentation, there's no reason to, or do you mean time of meeting?
Which days, whatever.
So, we have the 14th and the 11th?
Well, I think it's kinda rude to expect them to drive here for 10 minutes, which was my point.
I can ask and find out how much information, you know, maybe it's nothing more than they're just going to send more information that they won't be able to...
That's true.
I, I mean, I wanna, if I'm gonna be responsible, respond to them, I want to come with all the questions answered. So, give me the times.
July 14th.
14th, and can they be the first on the agenda?
Sure.
First presentation.
Sure, okay. So, roughly, what time would that be that they need to be here?
I don't know. Roughly, what time has it been?
7 o'clock.
Just a second, let me scroll back and see what time we've hit the presentation.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
You'll have at least half the cabinet not here.
Okay, yeah, in July.
July 14th.
In July, most of the cabinet is not here, at least half of them, they are on vacation.
Well, they can stream it to see what's happening.
They're not gonna do that. Two of them are in Norway.
Okay.
And he was supposed to know that, how?
Right. Well, no, the tone made me know.
Exactly.
Okay, wait, no, no, no.
Alex, she laughed at me. That's disrespectful as well.
Nope, I'm gonna stop this. Stop, stop, and stop.
What was that? I mouthed, does it...
Alex, stop.
Yeah, exactly.
Gosh.
Okay, guys, it's not gonna go forward this way at all. Sorry, you're gonna have to listen to me. If you would let them know that in August, we will have the majority of our cabinet here.
Okay, August.
Yes. Seven-ish, is that what you came up with, Amy?
Yeah, except for the lengthy comments, this time we, we're right about that. It's about 7 o'clock.
So, seven-ish, if you don't mind saying, just 'cause it's never an exact science.
On a Monday?
Monday. Our regularly scheduled board meeting, Monday.
Okay. So, which Monday is that, not including the one that, or can I just throw them all the Mondays?
Monday, August 11th is our regularly scheduled board meeting.
And they requested dates, so what's another date?
Is the 25th a potential?
I think it's the only other potential.
The 25th, 7 p.m.
We don't have a scheduled board meeting that night, but...
So, they could take a little more than 10 minutes, that's a...
If it's the only option.
And are we actually setting a time restraint on them?
Okay.
Because this is gonna weigh whether they'll come or not, I'm sure.
I understand. But while I understand the three of you want this presentation, if the majority of the board does not believe this is a viable option, it is not fair to this group of people to come all this way. If you want...
We have a school board.
Pardon me?
Not gonna take in consideration, with open minds, Chris Scott.
Absolutely.
Right. And it sounds like the answer's already 5:3. How many times we have to go over it? You say it all the time. There is no open minds here.
Over the internet, they don't have to come.
Send us some information, Alex, and we can read it.
Technology, for Christ's sake, it's a school district.
Okay, Sam?
Sam.
Please, don't. Okay. Alex, I understand your frustration, but this board has to operate as a majority. We don't have a choice. Otherwise, everybody who has an idea, it gets done. I mean, we can't do it that way. So, can they, would they like to send us more information? Would they like to...
Ask them how long...
Show us something. We are not willing to hand over a board meeting to them. People are willing to hear what they have to say. There is a difference. So, if you could give back to me, or me and Jeff with that information, I would appreciate it. Okay, I'm gonna clear...
Could we do it at a committee, I apologize?
Yes?
Could we do it at a HR committee?
That's...
Pardon me?
They won't get out of here, they won't get back.
Pardon?
It's, that's late meeting.
Yours is the latest.
Yeah. So, they will, yeah.
Well, darn that I have to work late.
Yeah.
And we can't have four meetings.
I talked to them about August 11th and see what they say.
And the 25th?
We don't have a regular scheduled meeting yet, so at this point, we would be scheduling an entire meeting around them coming on the 25th.
We'll offer August 11th at 7 p.m.
Or maybe the September regular board meeting if they aren't prepared, but that's already starting school for them, so that might be...
Sure.
Okay. Alex, what I would like to know is how long they thought their presentation would be, and again, if they want to come here, if they want some board members to go there, but we can't just take the three, because it doesn't go anywhere then.
Okay, I'm gonna clarify something, even though you asked me not to, because I think it makes a huge difference. I took 30 seconds to think about a committee head. I did it because I think you are both completely qualified. My initial thought was Chris, because she asked first and wrote an email. You're both completely capable. If I had gone with my initial instinct, it would've divided us...
We can't discuss this anymore, we're past it. You know, you can talk to us afterwards, but really, this is not on the agenda anymore, so...
Oh, so...
Moving on.
Angel, let it go. Let it go. You're not gonna win here. Let's just keep working.
July 14th, 11A.
We don't need to discuss any of that. None of the, everything else is self-explanatory. We are going into closed session pursuant 19.85 parent 1 parent C, considering the employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and 19.85 parent 1 parent E, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public property, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Specifically, administrative update regarding transportation, oh, sorry, I lost my line. Specifically, administrative update regarding transportation, employment, and employee performance, administrative update regarding food service, employment, and employee performance, the employment and compensation of the board secretary, the superintendent's evaluation, contract negotiations regarding AFSMI Teamsters, and SPAEA, and discussion of specific current employees who have the requisite certification for the superintendent position, and 19.85 parent 1 parent E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting of their specified public business whenever competitive bargaining reasons require a closed session, specifically the potential purchase of property. Need a motion?
Well, I have a future agenda item I would like to add, unless we're skipping over that.
What is your future agenda item?
I would, there's two of them. I would like to update, an update on any certificates of any of the employee groups, certifications.
Certification.
Thank you. Thank you. And also, this was, been a while, we haven't discussed this for a while, but I would like to know where we are with our negotiating for the teachers. It has been brought up a couple times, that we need to get back on track with them. I was hoping we could have something finalized with them before the ruling comes back, because the ruling's really not gonna set anything. We need to bring that and discuss that.
Anything else?
If we're going with the negotiations for the teachers and stuff, can we also discuss the status of the other groups and their certifications and negotiations and all that also? I mean, I don't want to leave it where it's just the teachers. What was your first one?
Answer Kim's question, it says, I think you just wrote, "Contract negotiations regarding AFSMI Teamsters and SPAEA."